All right. Good morning, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is our October 6, 2022 Regular City Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
First item is the adoption of our agenda. And we do have several updates. On the consent agenda, D eight, Land Development Code amendments to parking regulations and minimums, new item. On the regular agenda, M one, land use change of 21.69 acres of property located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road, south side, added backup. N one, quasi judicial rezoning of 1.63 acres of property located at 1905 South Main Street, updated text and backup. O one, quasi judicial rezoning of 23.55 acres of property located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road, added backup. O three, text change for the adoption of the Public Works Design Manual, added backup. O five, amending chapter 26, Micro Mobility Services, added backup. Z one, quasi judicial rezoning of 13.943 acres of property located northwest of southwest Williston Road and southwest 13th Street, item moved from the afternoon to the evening. Z two, land use amendment for property located north of 441 and State Road 121, added backup. Quasi judicial rezoning of property located north of 441 and State Road 121, added backup.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And just a reminder before we move to a motion here, if you'd like to speak on any of our items that are on the agenda today, you can of course wait until that item comes up for discussion and then just fill out one of the cards at the two little tables next to the entry and exit ways and let us know which item you'd like to speak on. The clerk will call you up at that time. If you'd like to speak to items that are on our agenda during our early public comment time, which we'll have in just one moment, you can fill out a card and let them know which items you'd like to speak on during our early public comment. If it's just one item, you'll get the standard three minutes. If it's more than one item, you'll have up to five minutes to speak to those multiple items. If you're here for general public comment for any items that are not on our agenda, basically anything under the sun, that is at one o'clock. And again, just fill out a card and let the clerk know and she'll call you up during that time. So with that, we'll turn to Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt the regular and consent agenda as modified.
Motion to a second, that we adopt our agendas. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak to that? Okay, I'll move to the commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is early public comment.
Anybody sign up for early public comment? Nope, okay, next item.
Our next item is business discussion, item F one, discussion regarding City of Gainesville sexual offender and sexual predator ordinance, residency restriction with the recommendation that the commission discuss the current ordinance and related issues and provide direction as appropriate.
Okay, Mr. Ne, you want to introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an unusual item that I would have normally wanted to bring before you at the GPC meeting for discussion, but there is a little time sensitivity to it. As you may be aware, city ordinances provide for a, well, chapter 17, article three, a City of Gainesville sexual offender and sexual predator ordinance, which provides that any individual who's been found guilty or pled guilt, you're no contest to a discrete set of crimes, and there are four offenses against victims that are less than 16 years of age, prevents them from establishing permanent or temporary residence within 2,500 feet of any school, daycare center, or park. That ordinance was enacted in 2005, I believe. Let me check that. 2000, okay. And in any event, it mirrors a state statute, which has the same residency restriction from the same places with offenders who have committed the same crimes, except that the state prohibition is limited to 1,000 feet from the daycare, school, or park, or as ours is 2,500 feet. And the state provision has sort of an as-applied date, meaning it only applied from the date the enactment of the state statute going forward. If a person's conviction was prior to that date, it wouldn't apply to them. And the legislative history reveals that the state legislature did that in order to avoid any concerns about it being an ex post facto or an after the fact application of a punishment against a person which would violate their constitutional due process rights. The city ordinance does not have any such restriction as to when it applies. It doesn't apply. The city ordinance was put in place a year or so after the state statute, and it's silent as to whether it applies to only people whose offense or conviction took place after that application date. There has been case law in various places throughout the state, some where local ordinances which did not have that as-applied date were upheld, and it was found that it was a non-punitive, non-punishing civil regulation and justified by expert testimony related to recidivism raids and proximity of these places and proximity of residences to these various places and so forth. But there's also been cases that found that that burden couldn't be met and that it is in fact then a punishment because it applies to only the people who had committed these set offenses and such that they might have, for example, pled to an offense, not realizing that this restriction would come into place later on, whereas maybe they would have fought it. And so that's the heart of the due process issue. The reason why I bring it before you now is that we do in fact have an individual who has a conviction from 1997, many years before the state and our restriction, residency restriction came into place, who has a story about as to why they need to move to a home with a family member, but that our ordinance currently would prohibit that. The state statute would not. It is within 1,000 feet of a daycare center, I think, is the home where they suggest to live. Before we expend the resources to defend the city's ordinance and the application of the city's ordinance in this matter as being a regulatory, non-punitive, civil restriction, thought it was best to bring it to the attention of the commission to decide if the commission wants to direct us to amend our ordinance to be more like the state statute, where it would take this ex post facto argument off the table. I think presumably it would then, it would moot out this case and it would allow that person to move where they desire because their conviction was again many years prior to the enactment of the statute or our ordinance. So I don't mean to say that we're a proponent either way, it's just simply looking for direction as to whether or not this commission feels it's appropriate for this residency restriction to apply to offenses, individuals who commit offenses prior to the enactment date back in 2005, or if they want us to amend it, or if they want to amend it in order to mirror the state statute and take that ex post facto argument off the table.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ne, appreciate that. Commissioner Tussin.
Thank you. Do you have a recommendation to us, which way to go, which route we should take?
I think the recommendation would have to be based upon, I'm not sure if there is expert testimony, and I'm certainly not an expert in the field of sexual offenders or recidivism raids, and whether or not a person who has a violation of statutes relating to a sex crime against a minor that took place, we're talking more than 17 years ago now, whether them living, residing near a place where children congregate is more likely to lead to a future crime. And that's what we should all be focused on, obviously, is protecting individuals, protecting children primarily. Because again, there's nothing that prevents people with these offenses who have served their time from going to parks, you know, going to, you know, dropping their kids off at school, for example, or any other place where children may congregate. So is the fact that that's where they lay their head at night contribute to recidivism and future crimes and future hazards? I'm not qualified to say. I can only tell you that the legislature felt that it was a concern that they shouldn't make it apply back before their effective date. And there has been case law going both ways. I think Miami Dade's ordinance was similar to ours, except it wasn't as far, I'm not sure about that, but Miami Dade's was at first upheld, then the 11th Circuit remanded it back to the trial court to do a further evaluation as to the ex post facto concerns. The trial court then upheld it. It's still in that process now. Nassau County had theirs struck down. They couldn't justify to the satisfaction of the court that it wasn't punitive against the offender. And there are other considerations that again, I wouldn't necessarily be qualified, but the considerations that are legitimate for you to consider as to, does it make sense to have a residency restriction that will then in fact isolate everyone who have had these past crimes, who have committed these past crimes, and, you know, clump them together in limited numbers of places? Maybe that's not a bad, good public policy either. That's part of the hard part of your job as public policy setters. So I think there are considerations back and forth, and I would understand that mimicking the state statute might be sort of a reasonable middle road and at least take this instant case off the table, and you could give it the more further thorough discussion, you or future commissions, that may deem warranted. I don't know if that helps you much, I apologize.
It's okay, thank you.
You conclude, Commissioner.
I conclude.
Okay, Commissioner Ariola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my initial thinking would be, well, it would make more sense to have our ordinances align with state statutes. But this all, I mean, just based on that last response, it seems so this is all fairly technical and changes. So, you know, I would recommend that we mirror the state statute, but, I mean, the differences are, what, 1,500 feet a year in date?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to a second to direct the attorney's office to craft an amendment that would mirror the state statute, and was it both in the effective date as well as the distance? Yes, okay.
So we will bring that back for the next meeting, for first reading, and we will notify the court that that is something that is under consideration by the commission, but obviously not final until after two readings, and maybe we can get the current litigation sort of held in abeyance until such time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ne, the crimes, the four crimes that are included are violent crimes. They're not even, so often we hear about folks who are labeled as sexual predators because they might have been homeless and urinated in public near a school, and that's how they get on the sex offender list. These are not those. These are actual violent battery-related charges.
This is not all sex offenses.
Yes.
Sex offenses whereby the victims are minors. Now, it might be a ludenisuvius type matter, or it might be a crime where there's an exposure, which is important, whether it's violent, that I don't know, but they are all cases where the victims are minor, are under 16 years of age.
I was looking at the statute, and at least the first one is battery.
Yes.
That goes to a certain extreme.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, you know, they're all serious.
Yes. That being my point is, I'm comfortable changing the city ordinance to not apply retroactively before, to crimes committed before 2005, because as you said, when it really comes down to the issue of, did you know that? Was that a condition? Is it after the fact punishment? As an attorney, I think that same way. That is not what that person as a defendant agreed to, or the context they were explained, and now they're getting a punishment after the fact. As far as the distance, I'm comfortable keeping it at 2,500. We are allowed to enact more strict conditions than the state, and we luckily live in a community that has enough distance between our schools that I don't think it would necessarily lead to this single pocket of folks being forced to live there, but I am not willing to vote for this if it shortens the distance. I'm just not. I'd be perfectly happy from a legal analysis to change it to the effective date, but I'm not going to agree to changing that distance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, yeah. Commissioner Ne.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, our ordinance and the statute applies to schools, parks, and daycares. So parks, now parks is the delineated parks that we have our ordinance. It's not necessarily, and I don't think it's been amended in the last 10 years, so it's not necessarily all the pocket parks and so forth that we've successfully placed throughout the city, but there are still a lot of parks and it's a lot of land covered. But in any event, the distance is something you could obviously still discuss on first and second reading.
Yeah.
If you direct us to bring it back.
Yeah, thank you. And that'd be my one request, as this comes back to us, if this motion passes, if we could get a map of where folks would be disallowed and by default where they would be allowed to live with the 2,500 foot. I do have a concern where you are so restrictive that you concentrate everybody into a one or two or three little pockets, and I don't know whether that's the case or not until I see a map. So if we can get GIS to just do a map with the city with the restrictions that are in our existing ordinance, and we can make an informed decision at that time, but it sounds like there is concurrence to at least align our ordinance with the effective date of the state statute, and then we can make a determination on the distance when we see that map next week. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. On a similar thing, we have a goal of a park within a 10-minute walk of everyone's house, and I guess I'd like to get an understanding of how long it takes to walk 2,500 feet, and would our future goals impact having any place where someone could live? Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Tussin.
The petitioner before us, the person with the crime in 1997, is currently how many feet away from a park, a school, or a daycare?
Mr. Mayor, there's not a petitioner before us so much. There's a plaintiff who is suing for declaratory action to say that our ordinance shouldn't apply to them because they say it is a punishment, an ex post facto punishment on them. There, the proposed place, my understanding of the facts, and I haven't vetted them, I don't know if they're true, my understanding of the claimed facts is that the plaintiff's wife has acquired a home, it might have been by inheritance, that's in Gainesville, and that the plaintiff himself is ill and it needs desires to live with his spouse in order to care for him, and that that location is, I think, 900 and something feet away from a daycare center. The daycare center, I believe, is on the other side of, I think, State Road 121. You know, but in any event, it wouldn't be about that person necessarily, but about our ordinance in fact, and bear in mind that all these considerations, I would hope, wouldn't be, obviously wouldn't be necessarily as they apply to a particular person, and certainly not to punish a particular person, but whether what is the proper regulation in order to keep residents and particularly children safe. But it would, that's the impetus of bringing it back before you is to explain there is something we may want to consider with our ordinance to forestall this and perhaps future litigation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is not about the plaintiff that is before us, but that is what triggered what's coming before us. And so that's why I was interested in the background there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe also, Mr. Ne, I think you said this, but that the plaintiff in the case, the crime was committed well before the effective date of the state statute.
1997, at least.
Yeah, yeah, that, which I think is the reason that they have taken this, of course, not about the distances, when it was committed. Commissioner Sacco?
If we do have GIS do that map at 2,500, I would ask that we also see one at 1,000, just to be able to compare how much space, if any.
Yep.
Well, some will be cleared up, but what that, the pockets do.
Yeah, without objection from the makers of the motions. Okay, we'll include that as backup when this comes back to us. Madam Clerk, anybody sign up to speak to this issue? Okay, this motion on the floor. You clear, Mr. Attorney, with what you need.
I'm going to bring back a proposed ordinance that puts the effective date as of the date of our ordinance, which was November 28, 2005. We will change the distance to the 1,000, but recognizing that upon further deliberation, the commission may change that.
Yeah.
May leave that at the 2,500.
Very good. Are we, everybody clear? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed?
No.
That motion, that was a no? That motion passes 5-2 with Ward and Sacco in dissent. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Our next item is G one, resolution authorizing amendments to swap transactions between GRU and Wells Fargo Bank and Bank of America, resolution number 2022-599. With the recommendation that the commission authorize the mayor, clerk, chief financial officer, general manager, or their respective designees to negotiate and execute the listed transactions within the prescribed execution parameters and approve the resolution.
All right. Commissioner Tussin, you want to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. GRU is bringing several potential financial transactions to the commission for approval due to current and expected market conditions. Mr. Chris Lover is from PFM. He's the utilities financial advisor. Also in the audience is bond counsel, Michael Weiner, and staff, if there are any other questions beyond what Mr. Lover can answer. So thank you very much for being here, Mr. Lover. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lover, good to have you back. Mr. Weiner, good to have you here as well, and look forward to your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Nice to be here in Gainesville. Beautiful weather today, and good luck at your homecoming game, for one. For those who don't know, Public Financial Management has been the financial advisor for GRU for well over a decade. We have about 300 employees and about 12 to 15 folks who focus solely on utilities such as GRU as well as water and sewer entities. The reason I'm here today is because our interest rate environment has been very much in flux. If you've been following the news, our interest rates have been rising and the Federal Reserve has been raising rates, but what this does for us as a utility is enable us to take advantage of what we're calling the swap market. And the swap market is different than probably what you're used to dealing with, but to equate it to a mortgage. If you were relocating in Gainesville and wanted to buy a house, you'd walk in and say, I would like to have a 30-year mortgage, and that rate today is about 6%. A few months ago, that was about 3%. Now, if you were thinking about moving or relocating next year, there is a market called the forward market or the swap market, where they will give you a 30-year rate a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now. So it enables companies and corporations such as GRU to hedge interest rates or to really protect their interests and manage interest rate risks. So this is the market we're operating in. It's slightly different from kind of that mortgage market, what I call the spot market. But given the fact that the curve we are looking at here is that red curve, it's downward sloping, which probably doesn't mean much to you, but what it does mean is that there are value, there's value that is accrued in some of the prior transactions that GRU has done, and we can basically use the swap market and these three scenarios, these three options that we're bringing forward to extract that value and basically give GRU a cash infusion if we can execute these at the parameters designated and use them to defees debt or to provide other sources of cash flow. That's essentially why we're here. If we, and GRU is quite familiar with the swap transactions, they have seven on the books now, and they have several counterparties, which are really big, large investment banks that essentially agree to swap these cash flows back and forth for various reasons. So our next slide talks about basically the three things we'd like to do, or ask your permission to do, and the first one refers to what we did back during the pandemic. So we have two series of bonds, the 2014 bonds and the 2019 bonds, and we entered at the height of the pandemic into a forward starting swap. So we know when we're going to refund these bonds, and we entered into these transactions to lock in that future interest rate. And because we were at the height of the pandemic, we were able to lock in these future interest rates at levels just above 1%. So a very low interest rate, and what that does is that we locked in the future savings of that 2014 refunding, which happens in 2024, and we locked in the savings on the series 2019A refunding, which happens in the year 2029. So we've effectively hedged the interest rate risk of the utility. So what we're asking to do is that since interest rates have risen, these two forward starting swaps now have value to GRU, and we want to basically take some of that value and get an upfront payment from our two swap counterparties. What also will let us do is we'll have to adjust that future rate we're paying moderately upward, but we're still locking in the savings of that future refunding that's going to happen either in 2024 or in 2029. The second option that we're looking at is that GRU has a capital plan for 2023. They're expecting to enter the bond market to address some of the capital needs of the utility, and we could enter into a transaction today that locks in the interest rate next year. And what we're going to ask for is basically give us the authorization to enter into that transaction so we can hedge future interest rate movements, and I'm sure, or I'm sure you're aware that the Federal Reserve has been raising rates the past several meetings, and we basically have about six more meetings between today and when we expect to enter the bond market, and we would expect, given kind of the fact patterns and what our Federal Reserve Board of Governors are saying, that rates are going to continue this upward climb. And this will effectively hedge the interest rate of that future borrowing. And the last option here, option three here, is we're going to amend two existing swaps that are related to the transaction of a few years ago, and what we can do there is basically we'll get an upfront payment from our swap counterparties, and we can defees some of that underlying debt, so we could take some debt off the books, and then we can also hedge the interest rate again, so we'll just adjust the interest rate a bit too. If there are no questions, the first option we're going to talk about is the 2014As and the 2019As. So again, this is an opportunity created in the pandemic. We entered into a forward starting swap, and with these swaps, we effectively locked in our future interest rate, meaning that we locked in the interest rate, we're going to refund the 2014A bonds in 2024, and we locked in the interest rate of the 2019 bonds we're going to refund in 2029. The idea here is that if we did nothing, I'll call it a do-nothing option, is that as those refunding transactions approach, GRU has decisions to make. Okay, so they could do two things. They could terminate the swap, there could be a termination payment flows between GRU and the counterparty, or from the counterparty to GRU, and then they use those funds and issue fixed rate bonds. And what that does is that it effectively locks in the interest rate of that transaction from when we entered it in 2020. Think of it as a shock absorber. So if GRU gets a termination payment, that generally means interest rates have risen, but we're basically borrowing at a higher rate, but the money we receive means we borrow less. And conversely, GRU, if rates fall, GRU makes a termination payment, but effectively that termination payment is funded in the bond transaction at lower rates, so it offsets the increase in the amount of borrowing. So effectively, you have a shock absorber that keeps your borrowing levels and your interest costs at the same amount, regardless of where interest rates goes. Go. With these swaps, we've effectively locked in the savings, and you can see this is on a cash flow basis. We've locked in basically $13 million on the 2014A refunding. Of course, we won't see any of those savings, so it starts in 2024, and on the 2019As, gross savings of about $55 million. We wouldn't see those savings start to flow until the year 2029. Now, since we entered these transactions, interest rates have moved higher, and this has created value to GRU in these swaps. This is the current, what we call mark-to-market, so close to $17 million on the 2019As and a little over $3.5 million on the 2014As. So now we have an opportunity to basically extract that value from our counterparty. So through a negotiation, we could determine an upfront payment to GRU for a portion of that positive value, and then basically we would increase the rate we're paying to that counterparty by a marginal amount, meaning what we would expect is that our current rates are about 1.1% to 1.2%, we would think they're going to go up maybe half a percent when we negotiate this with our two counterparties. So the net effect is getting value today and offsetting that against a slightly reduced savings on our refunding transaction. And as an example, on the 2019As, we looked at if we execute this transaction and take about half that mark-to-market of $16.9 million, we're actually better off based on the timing of our cash flows on a time value of money circumstance. So these transactions, if we do these, on that second one for the 2019As, it's about one and a half, $2 million better than just entering the swap and waiting a couple of years to do that. And it's a similar situation with the 2014As. So it's a creative transaction, as we like to say. So again, for, the new rate would be determined at the time of our amendment, so this would be a negotiated process with our two swap counterparties. Your delegation parameters will say 2.5%, so it's going to be above the rate we saw. The city will be able to lock in the savings on the future refunding still, so we're still hedged for that transaction, and there's still substantial savings with both of those transactions, even with this adjustment. And finally, you're still going to have that optionality of what do we do when that refunding transaction approaches? Do we terminate the swap and have that transfer payment, the termination payment go back and forth, or do we enter the swap and issue underlying variable rate debt, basically fixing out our interest rate risks? So we retain the same optionality. So we retain the same optionality. So that is the first option, the first thing we're asking for. The second thing is an interest rate lock, and we're calling this the cash-settled forward swap, but really we're just locking in the rate we're going to borrow for 2023 but doing it today. So again, a lot of capital needs, and we could hedge a portion of this transaction. So it makes sense, given all the, kind of the noise around our bond market with rising interest rates, that we kind of lock these rates in as opposed to just waiting and see what the whims of the Federal Reserve and our volatile bond markets do for us. We would expect that, you know, we're going to lock in a decent rate, close to today's level of rates, as we're saying. The parameters give the CFO and the general manager some flexibility and execution, but again, our interest rates move on a minute-by-minute basis in our market, so we just want flexibility in how we execute it. Swap would set interest rates today, and really when you look at the fact pattern around where rates are going, I think there's a much higher probability of rates going up than they are going down, and many of our clients are looking at these and entering these transactions to offset known capital programs for next year. We're going to, we would execute these on rates and terms, again, on a negotiated basis with several counterparties, and we basically pick the lowest rate that we get from several of the counterparties you already deal with. We're thinking of adding another bank into the mix, but we definitely will have a process that's competitive and then negotiated further down with the terms and conditions. As interest rates move over the next several months, the swap value will change, and again, it'll create some value for GRU. And then as the termination date approaches, there's going to be, again, that termination payment, but you're not going to enter the swap for this one, you're just going to lock in the rate, there'll be a cash payment as you approach that future, that future new money transaction next year. So the other mechanics are, you know, again, there's a termination payment that has to be made, so we just want to kind of bring up one risk here in particular, that if rates fall, GRU does make a termination payment contractually, and there's some headline risk here of the utility making a termination payment to a Wall Street bank. The reality is, is that it won't be that large for the most part unless rates move significantly, but they can only go down so far, but it is something we'd like you to be aware of just because there's some headline risk there. Most of my clients who look at this will say, "I really am more concerned about the certainty of the borrowing rate and rate certainty for our rate payers, so I don't mind if I have a small termination payment that I have to pay out of pocket for." Again, I could borrow at a lower rate, so net-net is you're kind of where you are at that lower rate you lock in. Our last, the last opportunity we have here is called a swap reversal put. This is a little more complicated. When GRU, back in 2017, they issued about $150 million of bonds associated with the Greck, Greck or Deer Haven Renewable transaction, and over a period of time, we've replaced these direct purchases with different banks. So we have TD Bank for a portion of it and Wells Fargo for the rest. Additionally, over the past couple of years, we've entered swap transactions to minimize the variable rate risk, so we fixed out those two direct purchases, and our swap counterparties are Goldman Sachs and Citibank. So instead of having this unknown savings level for our 2017 Deer Haven Renewables transaction, we locked that in with these swaps to make sure that the savings would accrue as we expected. Again, now that interest rates have changed, there's some value associated with these two swaps, and these swaps are ongoing, so something GRU and the Treasury staff manage on a month-to-month basis. So what we propose to do is, again, extract that value from these two swaps. We will not do any payments associated with the swap for a period up to four years. In return, we expect to get a lump sum payment from our swap counterparties, and we're going to use that to basically defeeze the underlying direct purchases that are associated with these two swaps. So we're going to reduce the overall debt level, basically, of the two bank loans we have here. And then at the end of that, at the end of that four-year hiatus period, we'll basically re-engage that swap, so again, we're locked in and we're not subject to a significant variable rate risk. So in terms of, I think I probably show this handout here on what we're, what this delegation parameters really ask, and if they're all three are approved, the minimum level of savings we would like to achieve as we execute these is just above $10 million.
Turn it around. See if you can fix it all. There we go. Again, these are subject to market conditions. Some of these transactions might be better than this, and some of them we're not going to be able to do, so the delegation goes on for a period of time so that the CFO and the general manager can wait for market conditions to change, then take advantage of them when they come back into the money. So rather than coming back in a couple of weeks and saying we need longer duration for this transaction to be executed, we're going out for a longer period of time, such as the commission's done with some prior initiatives.
So for the amendments to 2014As and 2019As, so this is extracting the value of those two swaps entered into during the pandemic. We don't want the new rate to be more than 2.5%, and we want the settlement payments from the banks to be 1.2 and $5.1 million respectively. We want to have a period of time, 15 months basically, to execute this transaction. I think we could do it much sooner than that based on market conditions, but again, it gives some flexibility. For our interest rate lock on our new money transaction, things are in flux, I believe, for how much is needed next year, so we're going to, we basically said we think it might be upwards of 150, but we don't want to do all of that, so let's do $75 million. That way, you know, if the numbers come down on the borrowing, you're not overhedged in a sense. There's a termination date. This means we're not going to, we want to be able to conduct this transaction up until the end of December 2023. Gives us an ability to enter the market at more or less, more opportune times over the course of the year. And then finally, we talk about the rates at which the swap will be set, so 6% on the fixed payable, fixed payer leg, and then the indices used by the counterparty, basically they have two or three different options, and we have a team that can negotiate that. And finally, on, there's the other delegation parameters are, the payments, if there's any termination payment, it's a subordinated hedging contract, and I don't know if bond counsel wants to talk about it or if there are questions about it, but that helps GRU roll the termination payment into the bond transaction. And then basically also, again, asking for a sustained period of time in which to enter that transaction. And the final one, the swap reversal puts for this delegation parameters, again, we want the termination payments to be a certain level from our two counterparties. The notional amounts, this means that we're going to be able to reduce our payments for a period of time, which is not to exceed four years. We want to enter this by the end of the fiscal year next year, and I think that's really about it for our delegation parameters and kind of the overall circumstances that, and these opportunities are, you know, availing themselves to us given our market conditions.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Ms. Raznik, anything else you wanted to add before we turn to the commission?
So the utility is often looking at the market and the market conditions in order to essentially either reduce our debt portfolio going forward or to mitigate the debt that we have to issue for capital infrastructure needs. So these transactions are furthering the commission's plan, working with the utility as far as our debt portfolio. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions from the commission? Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the recommendation for the three transactions. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Raznik, just as, to be entirely clear, as our internal subject matter expert, you recommend that we do this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the work on this. You know, this is obviously a sensitive time for utility in terms of, well, the interest rate environment's very, well, for people that follow and do such things, it's exciting, but also creates some uncertainty. And then, you know, certainly we've had some important discussions recently about our cash balance and sort of pressures, especially that the Fuelabilization Fund has placed on the utility. And so, you know, this is not a panacea, but it certainly, I think, puts the utility in a bit stronger position, you know, in all those areas. And so, you know, it only helps us and could, you know, ultimately help us quite a bit depending on what the market does. But the downside risk is very low and the upside benefit is certainly quite high. Bless you, Madam Manager. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak to this? Okay, this is a resolution, then we'll move back for a real call vote.
Commissioner Ariola.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
No.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
No.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes 5-2 with Chestnut and Duncan Walker in dissent. Madam, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you being with us today. Madam Clerk? Okay, we do have, I thought we had member comment, no, but we don't, so we will be in recess until 1:00. We're going to call this meeting back to order, and Madam Clerk, if you could please introduce our next item.
Okay, our next item is early public comment.
Anybody sign up for early public comment? Okay.
Ms. Silva is now.
For early or general?
Early.
Early? Welcome.
Thank you. This is pertaining to the transect zoning that's coming up for you this afternoon, and I sent you an email yesterday. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it or bothered to. The item really doesn't belong on the agenda at all. It was, the motion that was made on March 3rd was to deny the ordinance and to bring it back to the Plan Board with, including significant public engagement and outreach effort on our part, quote the mayor. And the commission needs to remove the item today, actually, or continue it until the conditions of the motion can be met. It was brought to the Plan Board on June 23rd with no public engagement whatsoever. People said they didn't even know it was going to be on the agenda. There were only four Plan Board members there. This is, you know, hugely consequential item that arose from David Coffey's petitions to get the Springfield property upzoned beside Depot Park. It was, it was an essential component of his being able to do that, and you saw the outpouring of public objections to that. There's been no real comprehensive look at planning for the whole South Main, Depot Park, Power District area. That's going to make a huge difference in the future of the city, what happens to those areas. UF has its downtown plan that now expands all over the place, including those areas, and yet there's still been no significant public outreach. I looked yesterday, I mean, I listened again to the comments, and the, you know, I listed a bunch of them, some of the excerpts from the comments on March 3rd, and people do know what they're talking about. People have been following zoning and planning issues in the city for a long time, for many years, and some people have special expertise and experience, and that's what you need to listen to, aside from, most importantly, getting community consensus and looking at planning as it's meant to be, not just granting, you know, upzoning here and there, deregulating it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, anybody else, okay? Under general public comment?
Our first speaker, I don't think is here, Andrew. Ms. Silva?
Could I have the overhead, please? Oh, let me see if I have. So after the, or the day of the, one of the budget hearings, the mayor said his family turns the thermostat up two degrees when they leave the house. Fine, but not really a solution for a lot of people. Harvey Ward posted the day, the morning after a budget hearing, the accomplishments of the budget, starting with lower admission to city swimming pools, which, and other issues that I don't think most people are very focused on right now. And I think that's, you know, missing the point of the desperation of people in this city at that with items that the city commission could do something about, particularly the budget and finance. And so, I think a lot of it, again, comes from just not, you know, engaging with the public in a way that, you know, comes to the best outcome. So this, this is something that showed up kind of strangely on an agenda a year ago, and this is a light bulb right here. I guess it represents commissioners' ideas, and it's this whole, you know, complex thing. Nobody kind of knew where it came from, and so it turned out, I mean, when I saw that, I thought about this, you know, the old Rube Goldberg kind of contraptions to get to, you know, start from some point and get to go through all these convoluted motions to get somewhere. And what it really turned out to be, I guess, was the policy staff, and I'm not trying to denigrate anybody who participated in this, but I just think it's indicative of, you know, the commission getting all balled up in itself and in directing staff to do this and do that, have a million meetings, but not listening to the people who know what they're talking about, not seeking to know what the people are talking about, and even silencing people who know what they're talking about, such as a person who was sent to jail last year and banned from City Commission, City Hall, and banned from any contact with city officials because his mask was falling off when he was speaking, or was it because he was talking about smart meters and knowledgeably? The mayor banged the gavel twice in a week on a person last month who was questioning finance and budget, but had let a former commissioner's spouse go on for more than five minutes two weeks earlier. You know, I mean, some of us went to the county commission a couple of years ago, and they worked with this, they listened to us when I was standing before them.
Appreciate that.
I almost cried at the difference in welcome.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Thanks for being here. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Carly Blount.
Hello, I'm here to relate an experience here in the city with city services a couple weeks ago on September 19th at about 7:50 in the evening. I was walking toward the bus stops on Third Street, right near Arlington Square Apartments. I was coming from the east, walking towards the bus stop. My intention was to go to the Rosa Parks Transfer Station. I thought, well, if a bus happens by, I might, I'll hop on for those last three blocks, why not? And a bus did happen by. Just as I approached the east side of the street, the curb on the east side, and was trying to cross, unusually, there was a lot of cars on Third Street at that time, and so I ended up kind of dodging between cars, running to get across. The Route 711, which was bus number 2107, had just turned southbound off University Avenue, so it was about two blocks away when I was at the curb trying to cross. It was still a block away when I started getting across the street, and as I ran across the street towards the stop, the driver was maybe 50, 60 feet from me. So clearly, the driver saw me struggling across the street, saw me run across, run toward the stop. Oh, by the way, all the time, I'm waving my arms, "Hey, bus, bus." And I got to the curb, got to the stop, and the bus blew on by. Didn't bother to stop and let me on. Well, since it was so close, I just walked on down to Well, since it was so close, I just walked on down to Rosa Parks Station. And to see, to ask, what, what was with that? And, but I did not approach that driver in any confrontational way. The bus was parked, she was standing beside the open door. And I walked up, she was on her cellphone, I stood at a discreet distance to see if she would pause. But she looked at me and gave kind of a what's up look. And I said, could I get your name or operator number? She put her phone back to her ear and walked away from me. So this kind of treatment, it might seem like I'm being petty, but I see this happen a lot. I've experienced this maybe 10 times in the time, in the years I've used RTS, but the last five have been just in the last year. So it would seem that this is increasing. You can talk to many riders and get similar stories. I have been on buses and watched drivers just blow right by a stop with people at it. This is one small part of why riders, citizens, consider this to be an inhospitable and unreliable bus system. So next time there's complaints about losing ridership, think about how people are treated. Oh, and by the way, getting rid of single-family zoning is going to get you $1,200 one-bedroom apartments in single-family districts.
Thank you, and Mr. Gomez was back there, so I'm sure he was paying attention to your issue there. Appreciate you bringing it forward. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Chuck Ross.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. The last time I, I spoke to the Commission, and there was a couple of issues that we, that I brought up, so I want to, I want to revisit them. One of them was the zoning issue, that you're thinking of amending the comprehensive plan from single-family residential to neighborhood residential. And after I was done speaking, the mayor said, well, I was, I couldn't understand how you're going to move forward. That's what I said. And the mayor said, well, we had three options on the cover letter. Well, what the cover letter also says is, if the city receives reviewing agency comments and they are not resolved, these comments could form the basis to challenge the amendment after adoption. And what I had said in my remarks is I felt like there was a very good chance there's going to be litigation as a result of this if you move forward with it. So, you know, a vote in favor of amending the comprehensive plan is, is a vote against the majority of the citizens in Gainesville, the state, the FDOE, the FDOT, and the Alachua County Commission, and frankly, just plain common sense. I'd like to add, there are three letters, ones from the Alachua County Commission that told you not to do this, the Florida Department of Transportation told you not to do this, and the Department of Economic Opportunities that told you not to do this. And I think these should all be posted to the website, so all the residents can see what the state, county had to say about this. On another matter, on the financial statements. I made a comment that we had no financial updates, the mayor took exception and said we had. Well, first, I'd like you to point out to me what meeting you're talking about, but I, I went back and looked at some of the meetings. But more importantly, the place where financial updates will be found is on the website. And if you go to the financial end on the website, the last financial posted is the CAFR for September 30th, 2020. There's no interim financials. Now, you could say, well, we presented information in the, in the budgets, when budget presentations took place. Well, those don't represent a total picture of the financials. They don't show the assets, liabilities, or the net financial position of the city. She did talk about fund balances, but fund balances are broken up into restricted and unrestricted. I didn't hear her mention the breakdown on that. And, you know, without that information, you're not getting a complete financial update. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you, everybody, for showing up and sharing your thoughts with us. We'll move on to our next item.
Our next item is N1, Ordinance on Adoption Reading. Land use change of 21.69 acres of property located at 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road, South Side. Ordinance 2022-384. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the land use category of approximately 21.69 acres of property generally located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road, South Side. It's more specifically described in this ordinance from mixed-use office, residential, to urban mixed-use, and public institutional facilities, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
All right, Ms. Lewis, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Commission. My name is Feneta Lewis, and I serve as a team member and planner with the Department of Sustainable Development. For your review and consideration, I am pleased to present a city initiative amendment proposing a land use change on five parcels, approximately 21.69 acres, 19.56 acres from mixed-use office to urban mixed-use, and 2.13 acres to public and institutional facilities. Located in the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road. The properties are located across southeast Eighth Avenue from, from Lincoln Estates neighborhood. Next slide, please. On April the 28th, 2022, the City Commission directed staff to prepare a land use change and zoning petitions, consistent with the existing land use and zoning on the cornerstone of GTAC campus. The city initiative petition, land use amendment, will allow redevelopment of the subject parcels consistent with the city, county, UF Health Shands, plans for an urgent care clinic, primary care medical facilities, and other potential complementary uses intended to support and improve services in East Gainesville and the community at large. The subject properties' current land use category and related zoning districts do not allow healthcare services or transit facilities. Next slide, please. To review for a land use change, there are multiple criterias. The future land use destinations of five parcels, approximately 21.69 acres, 19.56 acres from mixed-use office to urban mixed-use, and 2.13 acres to public and institutional facilities. Staff reviewed this petition in the context of the state statutes and the 11 factors stated in the future land use element for review for land use changes. Staff does not anticipate compatibility issues with the nearby residential neighborhoods. The residential areas are supported and separated by southeast Eighth Avenue and approximately 150 feet wide utility easement running the length of the southern portion of the subject properties. Next slide, please. Staff would like to offer the following recommendation. City Commission approval of the petition LD22-00056, as approved by the City Plan Board on August 25th, 2022. At this time, I will be happy to answer any questions the City Commission may have.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, I move ordinance petition 2022-384 on adoption reading title only.
Missa, a second to approve the proposed ordinance. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak to this item? No? Okay, then we'll move back to the Commission for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Areola.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker. And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, appreciate it. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is N1, quasi-judicial rezoning of 1.63 acres of property located at 1905 South Main Street. Ordinance number 211225. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 1.63 acres of property generally located at 1905 South Main Street. It's more specifically described in this ordinance from Plan Development to Urban 6, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. Before we go back to the Commission, Ms. Lewis, was that your first presentation before the Commission? It was?
No.
Second, okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that. But you're hopefully the second of many, 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 but we're glad that you were with us today. Okay, this is a second reading, are there any questions or is there a motion? I cannot make a motion? Would anybody like to make a motion? Commissioner Santos?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 211225 with a modification that it goes to U8.
Oh, this is the wrong item, we're on 222425, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess, yeah, 222425, yeah.
That was the correct ordinance, number 2112.
He, he has a, he has a certain belief. That motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Areola?
I, I have to give him credit. I'd like to move the adoption of ordinance number 211225, on second reading by title only.
Oh, I see the issue, okay, that's the transfer over, okay. So, motion and a second to adopt ordinance 211225, or under the new system, 2022-425, on second read by title only. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up for this?
Yes, Mr. Carly Blount.
Okay.
I just want to urge you all to utilize the website of the Urban Land Institute and, and check out the definition they have there for spot zoning. And I will tell you what I learned in planning school is there are three reasons for spot zoning: misfeasance, malfeasance, and corruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Areola.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
No.
And Mayor Poe.
Aye, that motion passes five-two with Hayes Santos and Duncan Walker in dissent. Next item, please.
Our next item is ordinance number 2022-385, quasi-judicial rezoning of 23.55 acres of property located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road, South Side. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 23.55 acres of property generally located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road. South Side is more specifically described in this ordinance from U3 to U4, U6, and Public Services and Operations to U8, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
All right, Ms. Lewis, welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Commission. My name is Feneta Lewis, and I am before you once again to reference the East Gainesville Urgent Care Center with a discussion, this time related to a zoning change approval for petition LD22-00057, requesting to change the zoning district on 10 parcels located at the 2100 block of southeast Hawthorne Road. Next slide, please. The subject properties' current land use category and related zoning districts do not allow healthcare services or transit facilities. The subject properties are largely vacant with the exception of several residential structures clustered near the intersection of southeast Hawthorne Road and southeast 21st Street. The petition will change the following zoning districts of 10 parcels, approximately 23.55 acres, from Urban 3, Urban 4, Urban 6, to Public Services, Operations, and Urban 8. Next slide, please. Staff reviewed this petition in the context of the criteria of rezoning as qualified in Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code. Staff also agrees that the Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code has been met. Staff does not anticipate compatibility issues within the nearby properties. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. Staff would like to offer the following recommendation. City Commission approval of petition LD22-00057, as approved by the City Plan Board on August 25th, 2022, on first reading and then approved for second reading. At this time, I will be happy to answer any questions the City Commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2022-385 and the related petition on first reading by title only.
Second.
Missa, a second to adopt the proposed ordinance on, on first reading. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Areola.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Madam Clerk?
The next item is a text change, amending the transect rezoning criteria, ordinance number 211331A. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending Section 30-3.14 of the Land Development Code regarding rezoning criteria, providing directions to the codifier, a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
All right, Ms. Castillo, welcome.
Good afternoon, City Commission, Mayor. For the record, my name is Juan Castillo, I'm a planner with the Department of Sustainable Development. The item before you this afternoon is, as the medicalec mentioned, is a re, excuse me, is a tax change for the elimination of the 10-acre requirement for the rezoning of transit zone properties that are not adjacent to other transit zone properties, as well as adding texts that will further clarify what properties are appropriate to be rezoned for transit zones. So just a little history as to this item that is before you. It went to the Plan Board on March 25th of 2021, where it was approved unanimously. Then this item came before the Commission on November 18th of 2021, where a special, it was decided that a special meeting would be scheduled to hear this item. This item came again on February 22nd of 2022, where it was approved with a 4-3 vote. Then the Commission, the item came before the Commission for the second reading, where it was denied. And the item was requested to be sent back to the City Plan Board for further consideration, as well with more public input and outreach. And that went with a 5-2 vote. The Plan Board heard the item on June 23rd, 2022, and approved it with a vote of 3-1. And at that point, there was also a public discussion where several members of the public stood up and talked on the item. And some of the, some of the concerns that the public raised with this item, one primarily was the concern, excuse me, the concern with spot zoning. So I, as you can see, this item is now before you today. But just wanted to give a little context as to what, as planners, we consider the definition of spot zoning to be. Spot zoning is the process of singling out a small parcel in order to either amend the zoning where the zoning is giving direct value to the applicant of that zoning, while, while giving adverse impact to the surrounding properties around it. And this is also take, it takes place within the context of the comprehensive plan, so the zoning needs to be, needs to be found to be in compliance with the provisions stated in a comprehensive plan. So if those things are not met, often, an item will be considered spot zoning. And so, the proposal before you today, this is kind of small, but as I mentioned earlier, there are two things that are happening here. The first thing is that we are eliminating the, the text that refers to that requirement for 10 acres where a property is not adjacent to an existing transit zone. And then we're adding text here in the blue that further clarifies what properties are suitable to be zoned transit. And that, that includes review of characteristics of the, of the property, nearby transit, not just adjacent, but nearby, elements such as city acceptable street system with sidewalks, the inclusion of those, lighting, et cetera. So, and I can go into more detail on that if you like. To give you a little bit, here's, here it is more zoomed in for, for the views. But just to give you a little bit more context on this. So for every rezoning, staff goes through a list of review criteria. Transit zones have an additional review criteria associated. So if I can get the overhead really quickly. Can we zoom in on that? On this paper right here? Thank you, that's, that's plenty, thank you so much. So, the review criteria, the review criteria here at the top is the review criteria that all zones within the City of Gainesville go through when it comes before planning. So we review this and make sure that it meets, that any rezoning request meets these criterias, as well as go, it goes through a review for spot zoning, that's part of it. So we make sure that the request is not something that we would consider spot zoning. Every single zoning within the City of Gainesville that is up for review, a review request, goes through this. Transit zones has an additional criteria. So, we not only compare transit zone requests with the initial zoning review criteria, but we also compare it to this, which is the extended review criteria for transit zone, which includes language that mentions the legal extension of existing zones and adequate transitions, the pattern of growth in an area, the pattern that has been expressed within the comprehensive plan, and of course, the limitation of the ten acres with the transit zone. So the request before you, in the context of that, is merely eliminating that ten acre requirement which is found here, and we're further emphasizing and clarifying what properties are adequate for transit, transit zone rezoning with, within the blue context letters here. And I believe, yes. So, with that, again, City Plan Board recommended approval for this petition at the last meeting with a three to one vote, and staff against recommends approval of the petition that is before you today. Thank you so much, and I'm here and available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. This change makes sense. Every other is the same category that we have, industrial, business services, all of them don't have minimum number of acres needed to, to zone those. And I think it's, it's very strange that our pedestrian and, and non-car oriented zoning has to have all these extra restrictions. I think that it's opposite of how it should be. I'll move ordinance two one one three three one A on first reading by title only.
Second.
Motion is second. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at the last hearing before the Commission, there was a request for public engagement. I didn't see the public engagement meeting on your list of meetings are, that had occurred.
So, we did not do a.
You didn't do that?
We did not do a workshop, but we did do a, a, a moment where public were allowed to discuss on the item at the City Plan Board meeting. That is part of our public engagement.
Okay, I think that we, we asked for, beyond the City Plan Board, we asked for a public engagement hearing.
A mention of a workshop was not made.
A workshop. Here, here's the issue. It goes back to spot zoning, and we wanted to make sure that the public had a, was engaged in the process, had a very good understanding of transect, and so that did not occur. I see, that, that did not occur. I think that, going forward, whenever the Commission asks for public engagement, that is a serious request, because it is our citizens that we're trying to educate on issues. And to not do that is of great concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe the public hearings are, are a good place for community engagement, because they actually, they actually have weight. People can vote at that time. They can hear it while they're being voted. I believe this, if we pass it here today and then the second reading, if we, we move forward on that, I think this will be for the Commission and Plan Board to have different times of public engagement. I think over seven to eight times this has been discussed at a, at a meeting. That's a, that's a lot of different times for public engagement on this, on this item and, and having people heard, and thank you, Mayor.
As an educator, redundancy is the key.
Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Castillo, thank you for the work you've done on this and the whole department. To, to echo Commissioner Hayes Santos, you, you did do public engagement. In future, I think it'd be best if commissioners want a, a specific workshop, that that should be part of the motion, so that staff has that clarity. And I apologize that that was not given to you, but I do think having it at a public hearing was the best time so that folks could have voted. So, I'm ready to move forward with this. I thank you very much for your work, and I think maybe a little more detail in the future, if someone wants something else, will, will be given to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I think one of the issues that, that we see here that, that comes up regularly is when we, when the Commission talks about engagement, we are often talking about something different than what is specifically communicated. And part of the issue is that you all are, are, are planning professionals, and you are very good at that. You are not tasked with being educators and, and you're not the Communications Department. There's a teachable moment in each of these things where we can learn from the community and the community can learn from what we're doing. And it is absolutely true, what Commissioner Santos said, that there have been lots of opportunities for direct engagement for folks who know the, the terminology and understand the language. But we're missing that piece where we help people understand the terminology and the language. And it's hard, because what you all do is extremely complex. And that's why, you know, you all are highly educated in what you do. It, it requires a lot of training. But I, I feel like a lot of our issues are that we're missing the, the teachable moments in the communities, in both directions. And I don't, again, I don't think that's the fault of anyone at Sustainable Development. You all do what you do very well, but we're missing that, that education component, which I think would help us be a better city. And that's nobody's fault, but, but it's, it's important to call that out and say, here's the piece that's missing. Because we have a lot of folks who want to be engaged but don't really understand. Many of them do, I know. I'm inviting people to come say that I, you know, that, that I don't understand, and that's true as well, maybe. But I think it's important that we, that we hear that there are good people who don't get it and don't understand why we want to make changes like this. Not because they're necessarily being obstructive, but because they don't understand. And that being the case, it's incumbent on us to make that extra effort outside what you all do as a department. Because again, what you do is not that. What you do, you do very well, but, but that isn't what you're charged with doing, if, if, if that makes sense. So, that leaves us in a position where we're moving forward on, on a fairly complex technical item, but for a variety of reasons, a big chunk of the community is going to feel like they were not included. So, that's where we are on this. I, I think that's the missing piece, and I, I, there's a way to do this. It's hard, but, but I think building in and baking into our system an educational component for people who don't do this for a living is probably going to save us a lot of effort down the road. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
You know, I mean, I, I miss this, because I mean, the planners do what they do. If we needed to have connected, you know, with communications and community relations to add a component of community engagement above and beyond the public hearings that have been associated with this, it's something that we can do. We've done it before. And so between this and second reading, we clearly can have that, but we missed it. I mean, I don't know what, how else to, to put it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. I just want to say, when this item came up, I thought we were very clear, because I think I'm the person who asked for the public engagement meeting, so that people would understand it. So, I, I want to put that out. I think I was clear on my request. If I have to be clearer in the future, I will, but on all technical issues like this, we have to find a way to bring the public along. We represent the public. That's who elects us. They are our bosses. And we need to be sure that our bosses have a good understanding of the changes that we're making on their behalf.
I would love to talk more about planning in a, in an educational session. I think we, we've talked about it, sorry, Andrew Person's, uh, Special Advisor. We've talked about it a little bit over the years, and we've even made, you know, a few forays into setting up a more sort of formalized curriculum that could be integrated into some of what the city does in terms of, you know, what we used to have for Citizens Academy. But yeah, don't, don't offer planners to talk about planning, because we will, we will happily jump on that. So. I think to, to everybody's point, I think what we do is very complicated, and oftentimes is very technical and can feel very much in the weeds. But I think doing that type of sort of educational program can improve everybody's literacy when it comes to this, and also create a venue for, for dialogue between like laypeople who live here and then the planners who, who help plan the city, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut, did you conclude? Thank you. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all for educating folks. Land use is fun. So is zoning. My one concern is if it is something beyond a standardized program like Mr. Person's is talking about, I worry about the fiscal impact, the staff's time impact. We do a lot of complex technical work and decisions. I do not think it is humanly possible for y'all to set up a meeting about every issue. So if that is something we could go forward and look at, there has to be a selection process of what qualifies and what doesn't. You can host, and I think we've shown this when we did some of the housing meetings, you can host and wait. The same ten people will show up to each one, and you might get one or two new people, and that is a great benefit. But I'm not going to bankrupt the city trying to have classrooms for people to not show up to them. So, I am happy that we got here, and I'm happy to continue the conversation of how to do more engagement or workshops, because different things, words have meanings. And I'm happy to have that conversation in the future, but for now, I think I'm ready to move forward on this one today. Thank you, Mr. Castillo, and Mayor.
Commissioner Ariola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just briefly, not on the, on the recommendation which I intend to vote for, because to go back to the Plan Board when we got a, a recommendation. So, we're a lot closer on community engagement, I think, than, than we think. A lot of great work has been done at the city to sort of build up a staff understanding of, you know, what it means to engage with the community, because there's so many different levels of engagement. You know, at what point in the decision process we have to set proper expectations for people for why they're engaging, you know? Like, what is the effect of engaging at a workshop versus engaging at a meeting, all of that? Because I think a lot of times, folks just, just want to understand the process. And we have a wonderful community engagement toolkit that was worked on and created by, I believe it was Dr. Ann Wolfe, a number of years ago. And that toolkit really shows the depth of, of what it takes to understand the intricacies of how to set expectations for engaging the public on a number of issues. So, you know, all this is to say, you know, obviously, the work is never done, and I'm very proud that we get to continue to do that. So, let's vote.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the work by Dr. Wolfe and, and, and many other folks have their fingerprints all over that. I think that that would be a valuable workshop for the new City Commission to participate in once you, as we're onboarding folks. Because a lot of work and a lot of thoughtfulness went into developing that module. And so engagement, and this is where it started, engagement is not a box you check, right? It's a lot of different things. And so for some folks, engagement is following our social media tree, feed, right? That's how they engage with the city. They, they follow our Insta or Twitter, and they see what the city's putting out, and that, they're engaged. Other people, engagement's coming to general public comment at a City Commission meeting and sharing their thoughts. For other people, the engagement is speaking to us in the public's aisle, right, in the, in the dairy aisle. That's engagement. So, we, as a commission, need to be very, A, we, we have to understand what it is we are hoping to accomplish through the appropriate level of engagement, and then we need to very clearly communicate that to senior staff, so they know what they need to go do to execute that level of engagement. And, and it's not all the same, you know, like the level of engagement for the homecoming parade route tomorrow is very one directional. We're not asking everybody, what route would you like the parade to go? We're saying, here's the route the parade's going. If you choose to come, sit and watch it, you may. If not, that's fine, but don't show up to the wrong spot, because the parade's not going to be there. It's one directional. There's other things like the downtown strategic plan, like the exclusionary and inclusionary zoning policies that are, that require a very broad and deep and long engagement process, which is exactly what we have done with, with those things. And so, you know, as we're, when we, when we say something to, to, to our staff that we would like there to be some public engagement on this issue, that is not helpful, right? Because we're not really indicating what level of engagement we think is appropriate, or what is necessary for that issue. And so, you know, with, with three or four new people on the commission that frankly are going to be really struggling to kind of settle into their roles after being on the campaign trail, with the mountain of policy that's going to be coming their way, and this expectation of being able to very effectively transition from a, from a candidate to a, to an elected official. I'm just, you know, kind of with one of my eyes on the clerk and the other eye on the other five charters, saying I think it would be really helpful to schedule, you know, a half-day workshop and have Dr. Wolfe come in and really talk about how they arrived at that engagement model, and then how staff can help the commission figure out what is the appropriate type of engagement for the particular issue that, that they're addressing at the time. And, and that's all very, it's, it, that's actually not necessarily related at all to this item, but it has been a while since we've talked about it, and it's been even longer, I think, since we've applied it. Like, since we've really taken that, that excellent framework and used it on a consistent basis when we're asking staff or our neighbors to participate with us in, in a public process. With this item, I am absolutely comfortable with the amount of engagement and discussion we've had. It's something that's been discussed for the better part of a year now. You know, and, and it's fine, I, if, you know, if, if folks disagree with the motion or the, the, the effort to, to make this, you know, what I would consider a pretty minor change, that's, that's fine. That's absolutely part of the process, that, that some people are going to support it and some people aren't. But I don't believe that anybody we've heard from hasn't been engaged in this process and doesn't understand the issue and doesn't, hasn't had access to the information they need on which to, to form an opinion and, and, and give us a sort of recommendation on what they think that we should do. So I, I absolutely am ready to move on. And with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola. Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayes Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes four three with Chestnut, Ward, and Duncan Walker and dissent. Next item, please. Thank you, Ms. Castillo.
I'm sorry.
I was just, thank you, Mr. Castillo. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Next item is oh three text change, adoption of the Public Works Design Manual, twenty twenty-two dash five seven four, ordinance number two one zero five seven two, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida adopting the City of Gainesville Engineering Design and Construction Manual, twenty twenty-two edition in accordance with section thirty dash one point six of the Land Development Code, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Singleton, welcome.
Good afternoon. Brian Singleton, City Engineer, Acting Public Works Director. Here to present the twenty twenty-two edition of the Engineering Design and Construction Manual. I just wanted to pause and say some thank yous. There were a lot of staff involved in this effort over the past two years. Your planners in the Department of Sustainable Development, your planners in the Department of Transportation, as well as some of the engineers in GRU. Also want to give a special thank you to Gail Maury, our stormwater engineer, and the Public Works Department. She led the effort of, on this. There's a lot of coordination with a lot of different internal and external stakeholders. Some of the things we take into account, the ones we look through when we're developing a manual like this, is public health care, fire, and safety. We also look at the national laws and regulations, state laws, regulations, our local resident, regulations, our local preferences, our best management practices, and then our fiscal and staffing resources. Can the community afford the upfront costs? Can we maintain what we have in our manual? And then can we, can as a community, we afford the replacement cost? So, when we look at all those things mixed. So when we look at all those things mixed together, that's our recommendation of what we have in front of you in the manual. Purpose and acability of the manual provides the detailed design guidelines and specifications of the physical improvements in the city. The manual does complement the comprehensive plan in the Land Development Code, as well as some of the other chapters in the code. We, in the manual, we're not trying to repeat anything that's already in our regulations. And it's primarily intended on the hows and not necessarily when and where we construct certain things. There are some gaps in the Land Development Code and in the comprehensive plan, so we do address some of those when and wheres, but it's primarily the hows, like, how do you build a sidewalk? Like, what goes into the concrete? How do you inspect it, et cetera, et cetera? So a little bit of history on the EDCM. It was first published in 1998 for subdivisions and site plans. It was then revised in 2013. It was a more comprehensive document, similar to the current 2015 version. And then this iteration is an update from the 2015 version. We are, we completely rewrote the document. We're trying to be more clear and more concise with and direct with how we want things designed in the community. So the process started back in January of 2020. I started with the city in March of 2020, when COVID started. So that slowed us down a little bit, but through that, about first year, it was all your internal staff coming through the document line by line and developing the recommendations. February of '21, we sent the manual to the external stakeholders. That's all your local design engineers that you normally see standing up here, our geotechnical consultants local to the community, the Billings Association, and some of the local developers for review and comment. From March to May, we held meetings with those same external stakeholders. We went through the manual, chapter by chapter, line by line, received all their comments. In June, we sent back out the modified version based on the comments we received. And we met again to let the community know what we had made change based on their comments. And then we finalized the set of revisions in August of '21. Gail did an external presentation to the ASCE, and then we took the EDCM to the Plan Board in October of '21. At that time, the manual was tabled for more discussion. They wanted more information of how the manual ties into the comprehensive plan and code. So we had to expand our presentation and explain what was in the comprehensive plan, what was in the code, and what's in the manual. We took the EDCM back to the Plan Board and, well, based on the feedback we got from them, we made some revisions. We took that back to the development community, and then we took that back to the Plan Board in May, which was approved with comment. One of the comments was made was primarily around crosswalks, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So Chapter 1 of EDCM is administration of the manual. It just really covers why we have our manual. We have a lot of different regulations. Sometimes regulations conflict with each other, so it clarifies what to do in those situations. It defines a lot of the determines we utilize throughout it and processes for proving exceptions to what's contained in the manual. Chapter 2 has all the technical references. This is just an example of some of the external references that we incorporate by reference, whether it be, you know, state laws, federal laws, some of the guidance that we use from different organizations like IT and NatCo for how to design streets and subdivisions. Chapter 3 covers our stormwater requirements. This is what's in your comprehensive plan in front of you. When it comes to stormwater, there's two things we look at, water quantity and water quality. Water quality is the volume of water and how fast the water gets to a certain location. And then water quality is pollutants. So most, most of Gainesville was built pre-water management district regulations, which came along in the mid-'80s. So a lot of our system directly discharges into creeks, to our creek system, and then goes down either to Newlands Lake, Paines Prairie, or Canapal Prairie. So the reason why our stormwater regulations are important is as things redeveloped or as things do develop, if we send more water downstream at a faster rate or higher volume, we'll continue to erode our creeks and they'll expand. And we want to make sure we're not, we're not doing that. So ours, in our comprehensive plan, our stormwater regulations are above what the state requires, but they are appropriate for our community. In the EDCM, it does cover the permitting thresholds. This is equivalent to what's contained in the Land Development Code. I will do my best to explain it, because it is a little, it's not the easiest read, but what's exempt is resurfacing of parking lots, less than 1,000 square foot of new impervious area. When I say impervious area, primarily referring to pavement and buildings. I won't go into the details of stormwater design, but we do look at every surface a little bit different, whether it's forest, grass, limestone, we do look at it all a little bit different. But, and then redevelopment, if it's less than 4,000 square feet and less than 80% of the existing building area or parking area, that's all exempt. So if you're adding 1,000 to 2,000 square foot of new impervious or with redevelopment, if you're over 4,000 square feet, but you're touching less than 80% of the parking and building area, then it's water quality only. So you're only treating that one, that one inch, the first one inch of runoff, so we're not contributing to downstream pollution. And then for water quantity and water quality, if you're adding more than 2,000 square foot of impervious surface or if you're touching more than 80% of the impervious area, then the new construction thresholds kick in. Now, pre- and post still applies, so if you have a completely impervious lot and you're redeveloping it, then you get the credit for that. So it's the rate and volume of water running off of the site as it is today cumulative back to 2013. Also exempt, which is not covered in this slide, is a single-family infill as long as it's, as long as there's not a large parking area associated with it. So on this slide, I'm not going to read all of it, but this covers all the other specifications in your, in the stormwater chapter. It just really discusses about how we go about doing a stormwater design, what all goes into the calculations, what safety factors we put into the calculations, what kind of geotech information has to be pulled to do the designs, and things of that nature. Going into roadway design, this is what's required in your comprehensive plan. So we do require the accommodation of pet, bike, transit, and auto users. It does require a gridded roadway network, requires interconnectivity and four stubs to adjacent properties, sidewalks and everywhere except industrial land use. We do require the use of complete streets and context-sensitive designs, and we do promote the use of pet, bike, and transit through the design of our facilities. Also, in the comp plan and the transportation mobility area, same interconnectivity requirement, same sidewalk connection requirement, same cross-excess items between different developments, structures on sidewalks, and then your transit facilities where they're warranted. So in the Land Development Code, it covers a lot of the when and wheres. There are five-foot sidewalks required everywhere, with the exception of the industrial areas, seven-foot for multi-use family, and then eight-foot for mixed use. I will say there's a caveat to that in your transit zones. Depending on the, how the streets classified does vary a little bit from here. Some type of bike facility is required for all streets, whether it's a mixed-use bike boulevard-type street or dedicated industry bike lanes. Again, the gridded interconnectivity and stubs. And then it contains all your block size requirements as well. So in EDCM, we have the travel lane with requirements. Proposal is nine-to-10-foot lanes on residential streets, 11-foot lanes on streets with high traffic volumes or large vehicles, and then 12-foot max everywhere. Our preferred method of intersection control is roundabouts, so it's pretty clear on how we look at a roundabout versus a signal. But the preferred method of control is a roundabout. For bike facilities, we're proposing that dedicated lanes are required when the posted speed is greater than 25 miles an hour and when the ADT is greater than 3,000 trips per day. And then buffered or separated bike lanes will be required when there's a speed limit greater than 35 miles an hour. They also require traffic calming on streets where the alignment might encourage high speeds or cut through traffic on local roadways at a 60-foot, 600-foot interval roughly. We tend to place it every 600 to 1,000 feet. That tends to be effective for controlling speeds. The rest of the requirements in the roadway design chapter are listed here. Again, it talks about how we go about designing these things, whether it be our signpost requirements or how you go about photometric design, requiring thermoplastic instead of just paint on the roads, and things of that nature. Plan Board did, we, for crosswalks, we had, originally had a different recommendation for crosswalks. This is what the Plan Board recommended, basically. It says if a road has pavement markings on it, then every crosswalk must be striped. My concerns with that is crosswalks are very broadly defined. When it comes to state law, it basically says anywhere that a sidewalk may intersect a roadway, it's a crosswalk. My concern with that is we could be in situations where we would be placing a crosswalk very close to another crosswalk, or we might be required to place a crosswalk around a blind curve, just over a hill. And I don't want to be in a situation where we're requiring to mark those locations. So this is our current recommendation from our original Plan Board recommendation. It basically says we can require our crosswalks as we see fit, as long as it doesn't violate a law or a rule. And marked crosswalks must be provided if justified by engineering study. When I say justified, I don't mean a volume threshold on the road or a ped count. I mean, is there an origin and destination for that pedestrian? And is it safe for them to cross there? So we'd be looking at the surrounding development, where people are trying to go, where all the existing crosswalks are, and placing them accordingly. Another concern that I tend to have with any traffic control device is only placing them where they're warranted. Driving behavior can be kind of a subconscious behavior. You're seeing your different warning devices as you drive down the roadway. If you regularly see a warning device and you never have to react to that warning device, there is potential that you start ignoring those warning devices. So if you think of, you know, trucks entering highway sign, road underwater sign, you could be in this situation where you never see the road underwater, you never see a truck entering a highway, maybe you won't pay attention to the signs. So same thing goes for crosswalks or any other traffic control device. We want to make sure we place them where they're warranted. So going into Chapter 5 is site design. It gives some specifications about where driveways go, your types of materials, your dumpster pads can go on. And then it talks about if a private property owner wants to put private amenities in the right-of-way, their maintenance responsibilities. One item that was brought to my attention that's contrary from what's in your backup is on the screen now. It's different than our current practices. What's in your backup does not allow roll-off storage pods or temporary dumpsters in the public right-of-way. That is prohibited in your residential districts, but it is allowed in your other zoning districts. We do want to continue to allow those in your other zoning districts with these conditions only if they cannot accommodate those things on-site. So in your more urban areas where you have a completely built-out site, they can't get these things on the private property side, so we want to allow them under these conditions. It's basically can't, can't block the roadway, safety requirements, protecting the infrastructure, ensuring we have our insurance and indemnification, making sure those things are right adjacent to the person or the property that is requesting it to be placed in the right-of-way, and no more than 30 days. Chapter 6 covers traffic studies. It basically requires a study if there's 100 new trips. And then basically what the applicants do is they submit a methodology letter. We look at that with transportation and any of our external stakeholders, such as the county or the state. We agree on the extent of the study, and the applicant does produce those studies. And we're looking at traffic, we're looking at peds, we're looking at safety in those studies. Chapter 7 covers our supplemental requirements for each of the phased plans. So what we look for in our stormwater plan set, what we look for in the roadway plan set, all those specific specifications of what we need to see to make sure everything complies with the comp plan, the code, and the manual. And then chapter eight covers construction. Um it covers what our permitting requirements is and then. Um a lot of the housekeeping stuff around. Construction, how you phase your construction, how you control your stormwater and erosion on your site. And then all those material specifications like what goes in your concrete, what goes in your asphalt. Uh what kind of dirt they can use, if you use this kind of dirt, how it has to be compacted, et cetera, et cetera. Um and then moving forward, we do plan to. Bring an update of the E D C M every two years. Um and then or as needed with special initiatives. Um current things we are working on, we're working on an engineering engineered tree well standard. Uh goal there is A providing a healthier environment for the trees and the root system so we can get. A more broad canopy, but at the same time uh where we're not kicking up sidewalks and creating trip hazards everywhere. And then, as you know, um. Andrew's team is working on bringing forward some street lighting standards to go into the code. And we're also working on uh with the consultant on. Developing specific street lighting standards, not the D O T standards for our community. So that's what I have and I'll yield to questions.
Mister Singleton, thank you um to you specifically, but um the tremendous amount of time and effort. So many different parts of our uh city team put into this. I I know it's been a long and laborious process. I I hadn't put together until you introduced this item that you came on right when covid hit. And uh and then kind of got thrown into this maelstrom. Um and so uh it's important, incredibly important work. It's uh not the kind of shiny sexy policy that a lot of people sort of associate with uh. Um our city efforts, but it is the underpinning and foundation of everything we do. And if we don't get this right, then it sort of has a cascading effect on everything else. And so um just know that I um really, really appreciate just anybody watching, listening that that has their fingerprints on this. Thank you, thank you. It's uh, you know, it was a huge, huge lift and glad to get it to this point. Um with that said, I know we have at least one commissioner that has a lot of interest in the final language in this, uh so we'll start with Commissioner Santos.
Uh thank you, Mayor, and yeah, thank you um and all the staff and really all the community members who too had a part in this. Um this is one of the more important documents that we have in our city for. Uh especially for redevelopment and infill and especially for how we get around the city and and really um safety. I want to make some changes for a while and I'm glad this is coming forward with these uh uh this document now mainly around vision zero. Um we talk a lot about vision zero, there's education, there's enforcement, and then one of the biggest ones is building that structure that actually. Um makes our roads safe um and that's key, but there is a there's a cost infrastructure, there's a cost to to maintenance of that. But if we want to actually reduce the deaths on our roads, we have to build the roads um to uh to make them safe. Those are the changes that I have uh before this, um that the first one is is saying that. Um it's it changes that all our roads are are ten feet, um unless there's a different uh mandation by uh state law. Um they can also move move down to nine feet, they can also be moved up to eleven feet. Um but there is a a a cap of a eleven feet wide. Um currently, that's that's twelve feet wide, uh twelve feet wide is is really for highways and over forty five mile an hour um kind of roads. I I don't think we need that in our city. Uh we have to make our lanes fit uh to make that work. Um on the roundabouts, it's uh. Adding a if we have bike infrastructure on that roundabout, um it has a separated lane for those bike infrastructure. Um right now, uh if you're on a bike, you either have to go in with the. The cars and then deal with that. I know quite a few people who have been hit um in in that um in our roundabouts. Um luckily, it's roundabout, so it's not as dangerous of an incident. Or you have to go onto a sidewalk, make all these sharp turns that are there for pedestrians. Um other cities have started moving what's kind of called Dutch roundabouts. Um but they have a separated lane that is just for bikes so that they can uh be able to move through roundabouts more efficiently and uh safer. And we reduce all the conflict areas of um cars, bicyclists and um and pedestrians. Uh the the third section is uh. On um changing our bicycle facilities, uh I don't think what we currently have in there gets us to our goals. This uh change here, uh we would have to look at bicycle facilities on all new road reconstruction, but also when we do resurfacing. Um if we only wait to do bike facilities when we're doing new roads or massive new reconstruction, we'll never. Actually built up bike facilities in my lifetime, I feel like. We should look at it every time we we do uh resurfacing. Um in that section already, it references the NACTO uh standards, um and I think we should. Uh put those into uh effect. Um it has a variety of different, um that's in the backup on on page four of that document. Uh a variety of different kind of the speed of the road, if there's center line, if there's um. Uh how much how much traffic is on there. Um and it has difference from bicycle boulevard to when it should be a normal bike lane versus buffer buffer bike lane versus protected bike lane. And the goal is to make it for all ages and abilities. So if you're five years old or ninety five years old, you feel comfortable in our on our bike facilities. I don't feel comfortable on most of our bike facilities because they're not designed. Um they have they're just a bike lane next to a um uh high speed road. Um and I I don't and and we need to make this, this is how we make our bike facilities safe. Uh number four, uh it's just a small change of saying that. We should look for traffic calming, not just on our local residential roads, but also on all of our roads that we have, even some of our collector roads, uh looking how we can reduce uh high speed. Uh number five, um is a development, really development redevelopment change. Uh right now, you have to. In essence, if you're gonna have a dumpster on your property, that 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 collection truck, um dump dump truck or trash truck. Has to turn around completely on that parcel. That is pretty much impossible on redevelopment in our downtown or core of our city. Um so this change would uh say that you can back out into public right of way on transit zones. But there is a a a resolution that I would like for us to pass as well that also says that um. That if it is a if a collection vehicle is backing on on public right of way, there has to be two people on that truck. And one of them has to be used for a spotter uh so that it's uh still safe. Um the next section is to have a a new vision zero resolution, um discuss all these with staff and one of the. They think that these would be better in a resolution than um in the actual the construction manual and direction to the city manager. That would be that whenever a new road is uh resurfaced, uh that we would look at the speed limit of that road. And um see if it actually fits our vision zero goals and really the context of the road. Um we have, I didn't realize this until just meeting with staff, that we have, most of our residential roads are actually thirty miles an hour. Um when they really should be twenty five. And it is expensive for us to go out there and do it every single one, but when we do resurfacing, this allows us to. Uh check for um should it be down to twenty five mile an hour and then also look, should there be bicycle facilities and all that? So it it puts in these vision zero checks into our uh process. And then the second portion uh is that if there is a going back to the trash truck one, if there is a. A truck backing to public right of way, that they would have to have a second member for traffic control and safety. Um I support the staff's recommendation on um the temp dumpsters and on uh. Uh staff amended uh crosswalk recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and uh thank you, Mister Singleton, and everyone who worked on this. It's an enormous amount of of effort and I I really appreciate it. Uh again, it's it I the the volume of what you're bringing to us is uh is substantial and I'm I'm so pleased with with the effort. Um and the uh the outcome. I agree with uh Commissioner Santos uh recommendations here. Um I I feel good about those things and the fact is, if we're serious about vision zero, we have to actually implement things that. Implement requirements that move it forward. Uh we get really serious about vision zero when there's a headline and then a month or so later, it kind of fades away. Uh I don't want to have to talk to um if at all possible, any more parents who lost their children on our streets. But it doesn't happen as often in Gainesville as it does in other communities, but that's because we actually take it seriously on this diet. We we know there are things we can do that that will improve it and I appreciate Commissioner Santos doing the work to move that forward. What I wanted to talk about was uh chapter three, stormwater. It I I I've been thinking for a while and talking with Mister Persons about and the city manager about some of our our parking areas. We've obviously had a a fair bit of of discussion and. Um moving back and forth on on where people can park on. Areas that theoretically they're not supposed to be parking on. Um some of that intersects with with our stormwater um. Requirements. This is not the place, I think, to 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 make, I I'm not prepared to make uh recommendations here. But we do need to to give some thought to up uh to to. I wouldn't say upgrading, but but changing our requirements for uh for parking lots. Um if there is a great reason for us to not let people park on uh on grass and and on dirt, then we need to have that conversation. And and maintain that, but I think that there are there are newer options available here. That that allow us to change some of our requirements and make it far less expensive to build a parking area. And still be um environmentally responsible. Uh there there are lots of things that have changed and 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 new items, new ways to build these parking areas. And to handle the runoff that were not available to us twenty, thirty, forty years ago when uh these requirements were were created. So again, thank you for this. I don't have any. I'm not prepared with specifics today, but I do want to kind of get this into our consciousness. And I I will be asking staff to uh to work on. On some resort, excuse me, some research to have to move this forward. So thank you.
To that point, a lot of that parking is covered in the code. I'm not gonna try and citeate what's in there today, but we can look at it and we can bring something back.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Saka.
Thank you, Mister Singleton, and everyone, um us covid babies know how hard it is to work through stuff and learning as the world's burning around us. Um but I'm really impressed with all the changes um and and the the longer, almost seventy page version of it. Um there are some things that um. I I don't quite understand the way they're written, and if you could uh uh give me some clarification, I'd appreciate it. And one of those is, where did I leave it? Um in chapter four, when we talk about high volume or larger vehicles accessing those roads. How is uh I understand how we prove volume, that's trips um per day, cool. Um. How do we like? How would someone prove that they have larger vehicles? Like we have many semi trucks that go through here. How how does that go about? What is the, I guess, the standard to show?
So we don't necessarily have a number threshold, but um we have ways of collecting traffic data that tells us. The size of the vehicles on the roadway. Um when it comes to eleven foot lanes for me, it's is there a transit route? Have you used transit route and is it a industrial area? Or is it a collector type roadways, say sixty second boulevard? Outside of that, I I typically I'm not gonna recommend anything larger than a ten foot lane.
Okay, um so so even then, there's like a threshold of general areas where this would go.
Correct.
I can't, like somebody's building a housing development, they can't just say, I would like these. My my customers have SUVs and we need bigger roads.
Yeah, SUVs is not a heavy vehicle. Um you know, in in our in our neighborhoods, you know, primarily when we're talking about heavy vehicles. Commenting into trash trucks and delivery vehicles, they can handle ten foot lanes. The the only concern in neighborhoods tends to be is the on-street parking thing. When you have ten foot lanes and you have people trying to park on both sides, it really does choke down the roadway. There's a lot of disputes between neighbors at that point and uh there's can be some issues with emergency response.
And then the, yeah, then they can't fit through. Um I've seen that one happen. Um that said, I, thank you. Um I am, let's see, I don't want to add one more. No, I did not. Okay, um otherwise, I am comfortable moving forward. I do agree with Commissioner Hay Santos' um proposals. Um especially when it comes to lane widths. Uh I I agree that, you know, where we can limit to eleven and if almost all vehicles can handle it at eleven, if that is as far as they need to go. I don't see why we need to offer twelve. Um every little bit helps as far as getting uh folks to reduce speed um and. And really offering more space for things like sidewalk and right of way I or bike lanes. I think that is something we should take every inch we can where possible. Um I do have one question for Commissioner uh Commissioner Hay Santos. Um and otherwise, I think you're gonna have to help him in as well, Mister Singleton. Um on for the section four fifteen on calming devices, um. Uh the calming, traffic calming shall be used on all roads, not just local roadways. Are we, I guess it starts with Mister Singleton, are we even allowed to do that?
So it depends on the context and the type of traffic comment we're we're referring to. Traffic calming is a broad term, so it could be ball bouts, it could be on-street parking. It could be um chicanes. Um there are a lot of horizontal treatments that you can do on your uh. More collector type, heavier traveled roadways than just speed tables um and such. So yes, we are allowed to do them.
As far as like sidewalk and other space outside the road, if it's not our road.
Well, we, if it's not our road, we we won't be able to regulate what goes on 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 them. But as far as our own roads, there's a lot of options to provide traffic calming.
Okay, um then I guess I'm I'm just curious about Commissioner Santos's use of all. I don't like when we say all or none or never or always.
Um so I think there is a a difference, local roads does not mean it's owned by the municipality, local roads is a designation um under our uh code. Um I don't know if you know, I mean, there's local collector and arterial and highway roads.
Correct, correct.
And uh we as a city could own all all of them if we wanted to, I guess, in a sense, maybe not highways, but.
We don't, I don't think we have any arterials.
But we could, we could own it.
We could own, yes.
Um this is just currently in the in the manual, it says that um traffic calming shall only be used on uh local roads. Or res- local residential roads, I think.
Local roadways.
Yeah, um this would just give uh staff the ability to use uh traffic calming that is for the context of that road on any road that the city owns. So in essence, gives us ability to use traffic calming on any city road. Um and that's a traffic calming is a very broad term outlined by staff.
Um.
It's not mandated that it has to be used, it just allows us to do.
Yeah, yeah, I I get the shall part, it was the all roads where. It's a common question we get around here, why won't you fix this road? It's not my road. Um so I, would you mind adding to that all city-owned roads? I if only for clarity, I like our code to be as easily understood as possible to the average bear who looks at it.
I I would add that this manual is for city roadways.
And I would add that the average bear will skip the cover. If you don't want to, it's fine.
I mean, I just I this would be the only place that we would do it. I've read there's lots of alls and shals and on all of these.
For all roads and all.
Cause then this is just for our, I mean, I it's, we can put it in there, but it's just that.
Then you have to go.
The whole entire document has.
Okay, uh it it was more for the um, it's more for the the experience of our neighbors who then try to look up, you know, try to solve things on their own prior and. Say like, oh, this should fix it and then they don't. It's not immediately comprehensive that. Oh, it doesn't mean all roads, it means all city roads and not all roads in the city, but never mind then. Uh otherwise, I'm, thank you, Mister Singleton, and otherwise, I am comfortable supporting uh the amendments and the resolution. Um and I think it's a a good firm step in the right direction for us. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um thank you, Commissioner Santos, um for putting in the work to bring these uh suggestions back to us. I um uh support them and think that they add value to the design manual. Um I just want to um real briefly for context, cause it's, you know, it's one thing on a page to. Say nine foot, ten foot, twelve foot road, what does that mean? The the helpful uh reference to me is that Northwest Sixth Street are ten foot lanes. Um and so that, you know, that's a state road that uh traffic flow functions really well. Um you know, every type of vehicle can get through there without any problem, you can turn on, you can turn off. So uh ten foot lanes are more than adequate for um pretty much any kind of. Uh vehicle that's going to use our city streets. Um you know, and really, I would hope we would, we would um. You know, and really, I would hope we would, we would, just strong preference for 9-foot, because that's where you really start getting those visual cues for people to slow down and to pay closer attention. But 10-foot is more than adequate for, you know, making sure that that all types of vehicles can get around our city effectively. So, yeah, I I'm excited to be able to to support this, including the proposed changes, and will be a nice gift to the next commission to to have this already in their hip pocket. Commissioner Hay Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I move forward with our move ordinance 210572 with the following modifications that are in the backup, with changes to the ordinance on second reading by title only. Also, we give direction to.
First reading.
Oh, first reading, by title only. Also include the temp dumpsters and new crosswalk recommendation from staff. And then we also give direction for staff to bring back a resolution that directs the city manager as outlined in the, about speed limits on roads that are resurfaced and also on refuse collection trucks.
Okay, motion of the second. So Madam Clerk, for your purposes, the document referenced in backup, I I think that you might have a physical copy of it. If not, it's titled Proposed Changes to City Gainesville Engineering and Design Construction Manual 22 Edition by Adrian Hay Santos, 10-422, at the title. So the motion is to adopt those with those additional changes. Can you read those again?
Yeah, the temp dumpster recommendation from staff and also the new crosswalk recommendation from staff, and then the give direction from staff to bring back a new resolution on Vision Zero.
Yeah, which is also on the document towards the bottom and on the second page. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak to this item? No? Okay. Then we'll move back to the commission for roll call vote.
Commissioner Ariola.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. Right. Okay, next item, please.
Our next item is 04, Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area Boundary, Ordinance Number 2022-557, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending Section 2-406, Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area, City Department powers definitions of the Code of Ordinances to expand the real property included in the Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area to include certain real property located to the northwest of the intersection of Northeast 8th Avenue and Northeast Waldorf Road, as further described by this ordinance, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Okay, thank you. This is the first reading of the ordinance that extends the boundaries as agreed to by the county commission in the area of Citizens Field and the MLK Center. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Motion, number 202022-557.
Okay, motion of the second that we adopt the proposed ordinance on first reading? Yep, thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Madam Clerk, anybody sign up to speak to this?
Abanika.
Abanika.
Hello and welcome.
Hi, thank you. And I want to thank everyone for being here, especially post-COVID. I know that you hold a lot of space for the traumatization of a city and a country, and I want to thank you for your patience preemptively. I was recommended to come here and speak to you recently out of concern for the the clearcutting of forests by overdevelopment in Gainesville. I know that's something collectively, as the previous previously known tree city that a lot of Gainesville residents have questions about, because I'm coming into this meeting and and wanting to to speak on that, I realize I missed the general period where I could speak on that specifically. I will go home and do my research. For this specific ordinance, if I could just get some clarification on what real property indicates to help me understand, especially for city ordinances that are allowing Collier Company, Boss Heart, these these mega development companies to sell away forested plots of land in order for resale, how best to go about clarifying what that would be when speaking with the city commissioners?
Sure, and if you want, if you conclude your comments, we'll answer that question, but I don't want to go into your time while we're answering, so.
Sure, okay, so that's something that wouldn't be appropriate to ask you now, prior to you talking about 04. It would be something that I would clarify online or something, just with the definition of real property, correct?
Sure, no, yeah, we can answer that now.
Okay, thank you.
I I would take a stab, but I'm going to go ahead and turn to our city attorney to make sure that I don't embarrass us or anybody else. The definition of real property, Mr. Attorney.
I don't understand the context, frankly, but I would assume the definition of real property is land.
Yes.
If there's some other context, that's possible, but I think that's what we're talking about is land.
Okay, so would there be a differentiation, just with the linguistics and the the legal viability between like property being cited in an ordinance code or real property being differentiated?
Well, I think it's real versus tangible.
Okay.
And we're just, we're clarifying that it's real property, not say, yeah, boat, jewelry, stocks, things like, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for your time, and I really appreciate you.
Sure, thanks for being here. And and just to clarify, this is a relatively simple matter where no property is changing hands, we're extending the boundary of the redevelopment area to allow for a specific funding source to go to improvements in that area, and it's just sort of, it's a small area that if if you can picture Citizens Field and the MLK complex, part of that complex is in the area and part of that complex is outside of it, and so we're just going to include that whole complex in this area now.
Okay.
And it will allow for dedicated tax dollars that are set aside for improvements to be used in that area.
Okay, is this, if you don't mind me asking, is this private funding or is this public tax money?
It's tax dollars, and no land is changing hands or anything like that.
Okay, so it's allocation of finances?
Yeah, it's all public land, it's all, nothing's changing hands, it's just saying that you can use these new dollars in that area as well.
Yeah, definitely helpful for, you know, bureaucratic progress.
Yeah.
One last question, for redevelopment, it, does that constitute simply whatever the landholder wants to improve, or is it specifically like environmental, or is that just too broad of a question?
Too broad, but this is a city property, so we're going through a very long and in-depth feasibility study and public engagement process to see what will work there, and so we'd encourage you and I, Commissioner Chestnut is the champion of this project, so I would encourage you to to reach out to her and schedule a meeting, and she'd love to talk to you.
I would love that, thank you so much. And once again, I really, really appreciate you. There's so many hurdles you have to go through and definitely supportive of this team, and thank you.
Right on, thank you, thanks for being here. Madam Clerk, anybody else? Okay, Commissioner Santos?
Yeah, I think, just one thing I wanted to clarify, this this doesn't have anything to do with Colliers or Boss Heart or any selling of any real estate that the city is just allowing city funds to be used on city land.
Yep, to make it all better. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that this is a very positive step, but I want to thank the county commission for working with us on this. And we've had two very good projects today for East Gainesville, the Urgent Care Center as well as this one. And I just want to add that as people, yesterday I received my my vote by mail ballot, and people started calling to ask questions about the ballot, and they wanted to know about the wild spaces. And when I said Citizens Field will be included, they got very excited. So I think it's just a matter of public engagement.
Yeah, good to hear, and and I wouldn't miss the opportunity, saying that Hawthorne Road item, not just a healthcare facility, but a mobility transfer station, and then much more to come in the future, so, yeah, but you're you're correct, very exciting. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move to roll call vote.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Next, please.
Our next ordinance is 2022-577, amending Chapter 26, Micro Mobility Services, an ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending Section 26-196 of the City Code of Ordinances, related hours of operation of micro mobility services, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot more moving forward on this. One of the changes that I'd like for us to do is to change the times on this to ensure that people who are leaving work at night, mainly are are people who work in the nightlife industry, can be able to use this to get home. That's one of the things I've heard from a lot of people in the community wanting to use it later at night when, really, our downtown is dead. So I would move ordinance 2022-577 with one change that we allow it up till 3:00 a.m. and, yeah.
Okay, a motion of the second that we adopt the ordinance, changing the cutoff time to 3:00 a.m. on first reading by title only. Second was with our, by Ariola. Mr. Gomez?
Commissioner, Commissioner Hay, you comment with transportation. Staff have some concerns about the 3:00 a.m., though. We discussed that with the university, since it's a partnership program, you know, whatever we do in the city, they enforce it also on campus. And safety, we talk about maybe extending to midnight is a good way to start and see how that works, and then possibly extend it later on. But, you know, talking about Vision Zero goals, and that's a concern, you know, especially when bars are open and, you know, have a scooters working, we we think it's a safety concern. So the language in there to extend it, you know, by the director, we can extend it to midnight will be a good way to start, see how that works, and maybe extend it later on if we, you know, if we see it's being safe to to operate like that. So just for for you to consider.
All right, thank you for sharing that, we appreciate that, Mr. Gomez. Mr. Chestnut?
I want to ask Commissioner Hay Santos if he would consider passing this today and refer to staff and let them come back with the recommended time. I'm concerned about whether or not we will have the staff to accommodate the hours until 3:00 a.m.
Well, the the private companies are the one, our staff does not.
Or even.
Like, the private companies are the ones that collect them and stage them, not our staff. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gomez, would our staff be impacted one way or the other, whether it's 10:00, midnight, or 3:00?
No.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Of course.
Mr. Gomez did express, you know, my sentiment as well, and I had a brief conversation with Commissioner Hay Santos regarding the safety issue associated with it being at 3:00 a.m. I understood his point in terms of people using it as a mode of transportation to get back and forth for work, but it's the safety issue that, you know, we we stressed as well. And 12 o'clock was, 12 a.m. was the time that we thought might be best to just at least pilot it, see how it works out.
Isn't all of Gainesville closed at midnight?
Sorry. Bless your heart, isn't it? Me and you need to do a ride-along, we'll do that overnight Friday shift. You would be amazed what goes on in this town after midnight. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm part of it, but, oh, man. Commissioner Hay Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I I think this actually makes it safer, it gives ability to to take it the short distances. Also, late at night between that 2:30, when people are leaving work, leaving the bars or like that, people who work in there, downtown's dead, and we do not have a well-lit downtown too, and having to walk from their jobs, and we've also asked people who work downtown to park away from downtown as well, so that they're not taking away customer parking. So being able to, those people to be able to take this and being able to quickly go through an area instead, I mean, people do get attacked during that time, I mean, it's dark, there's no one else in the road, there's no one else out there, and this would allow them to quickly go through areas to their destination, and I think it'd be safer for the workers to have this this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm empathetic to to the the after-work use of of vehicles. My concern from a safety viewpoint is the the exodus of folks leaving the bars who have been there for for quite a while and might think, hey, this is a great idea, I'm going to hop on the the scooter. I I can see lots of injuries happening there. I I'm good with with midnight, frankly, I'm concerned about the 3:00 a.m., less because of the the 2:30 to 3:00 time period than because of that midnight to 2:00 time period. I I think there's more danger there. So I'm I'm good with moving this to to midnight, but that's what I can support now. Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Hay Santos, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. What am I, am I hearing that you're not wanting to at this time to kind of modify your your timing here? Is that what I'm I'm understanding?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like for us to to see where the support is for 3:00 a.m. How many people can get back.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance but change the cutoff hour to 3:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To that end, I am mindful of staff's recommendation and concerned as well about the the safety aspect. I can totally understand, Commissioner, where you're coming from, and would also support people who are working being able to get to and from using that mode of transportation. However, I think in the interest of just seeing how this works out, I'd be more comfortable with entertaining this phased approach and starting with the 12, seeing how that works, and then possibly expanding that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, quick question. Is it poss, I know we can do this, but I'm going to ask anyway, is it possible to limit the geography after 10:00? So you can't, to Mr., to Commissioner Ward's concern of someone thinking, yeah, I can go five miles on a scooter after drinking for several hours, and I think our intent is, you know, folks in downtown, midtown, areas of of late entertainment being able to get, you know, to their car that's maybe half a mile away. Would it be possible to limit the geographic area of those?
Yeah, I believe so, they can change the geofence to to that time.
Like a half-mile, kind of like perimeter space? Um, I would not mind, to Commissioner Duncan Walker's point, that that phased approach to, we limited to some distance, so people aren't, you know, getting on a scooter and then trying to go down Archer, because we know people will try that, one way or another. I wouldn't mind doing it until midnight with that limited geofence, just to see how it's working on roads that are generally smaller, and even though they have traffic, it's not speeding through traffic, especially in our downtown space, it's not, you know, going 45 miles an hour, so to speak. So I would be comfortable with seeing how that works for a certain amount of time with a limited geography and only to midnight, and when you guys have enough data to bring back to us to show this is so far how it's going, because I saw the last report, those scooters give you all the data ever, it's amazing. We can, we can go from there to see how much further to to change, or, oh, it looks like no one's getting hurt, we can expand it, or, okay, a lot of people got hurt, let's let's not do that, if that's possible. That's what my preference, my my middle ground would be, and if any of my colleagues like that, I'd I'd go with it. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one of the concerns also we have, put on a 3:00 a.m., you know, if we have any issues, we have to, if we want to make changes, we have to go back and change the ordinance, so that the language they have, 10:00 and later hours, that's a, you know, you have that flexibility, extend it, you know, as you see fit. You start with 12:00, midnight, and then you can extend it to 3:00 a.m.
It gives the authority to the director to make the change.
So this is, this is all I'm talking about, y'all. If we if we allow it up to 3:00 and leave it up to staff discretion or or direction from the commission, you know, if it's in the ordinance that the cutoff time is at 10:00 or 12:00, then you got to, you got to amend the ordinance, which is, takes so much time and it's, trying to be, use my diplomatic words here, it's not highest best use of staff, public, and commission time to modify an ordinance to change two numbers, right? Or one, I guess it's one number with two digits. I I would prefer to, well, I'm going to support the motion on the floor, I'm not saying that, I think that we need to do what we have done with micro mobility all along and and do some pilot, you know, and and look at, okay, if we, because I think really what we're talking about here is probably two areas of our because I think really what we're talking about here is probably two areas of our city where there's high concentrations of late-night employees, midtown and downtown, right? That's mostly what we're talking about. And so if we can stage a certain number of these vehicles in a spot at two thirty and see what their usage is, but everywhere else, geofence them and, and, you know, just say, like, you know, we just don't want them zooming around bar letting out time, honestly. I mean, you know, like, that's, it's dangerous enough to be in a car in those areas. So I, I, I feel like if we approve this ordinance a, a, as it sits with the body right now, what we're, what I'm not envisioning is that all of a sudden, all of the devices are available till three AM throughout the city. It allows staff to look at some flexibility and experiment a little bit to see what works and what doesn't. And certainly to geofence in a certain area around those high conflict times that, that bar letting out time especially. So, I, I mean, I think, because I, I very much understand the concerns of my colleagues up here who have worried about what that might look like if it's sort of a free-for-all. I don't think that's what any of us want. But I think we can achieve all of these goals if we're just a little bit more selective about what is available, when and where. And the way to get there is to allow for this change to take place and then allow our staff to figure out an implementation plan that accomplishes those mutual goals. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a concern with the geofencing and allowing the usage in some parts of the city and not others. I can hear my constituents right now expressing deep concerns about why that's allowed in downtown.
I'm saying don't allow it in downtown.
Okay, you're saying do not.
The opposite. Right, so we don't want people zooming around downtown when there's a bunch of people out, right? So we, so we fence it off and say scooters aren't gonna work here. But once you get outside that perimeter where people are trying to get home, then they will work. That's what I'm talking about.
So downtown is off limits and everywhere.
At a certain time, yeah, when it's dangerous. Well, I, look, that's why I'm saying, give them the flexibility. What I'm saying is we stage them, say, an eighth of a mile outside the downtown core. So there's scooters, so if you're getting off work, you can waft, they, they might be in, you know, a parking lot or somewhere like that. So you can get to these places and then get home to Lincoln Estates, you know, and, and, you know, not have to buy an Uber or, or, you know, or, or own a car. But they wouldn't be allowed, you know, right there where there's a lot of cars, pedestrians, bicyclists, all in one spot that can cause collisions.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, the way that it's written, it actually gives, the manager has given the director of the department the flexibility to see how this works and to adjust it accordingly without having to come back to the board unless this commission wants to be more specific about how that, that works out. I mean, it's very flexible here. And it gives staff, the operators, the opportunity to do what needs to be done based on what they see out there. Versus coming back and having to make a change specifically in the ordinance. And so, I mean, the attorney wrote it, he may be able to clarify what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, after the, I think it was the GPC this came up with, there was the intent of the commission, I think, to allow extended hours of micro mobility devices. Upon working with the, the staff, the attorney has signed, they, they together came to the conclusion that the original ordinance, which allows for operation of these devices, these businesses, between six AM and ten PM was the basis of permits given to these companies. And also, the, the companies would want to know they have a sufficient amount of time to have an ongoing business. And that to then give the discretion, the commission to give the discretion to the operational experts, our Department of Mobility, through the manager, through to the director, the ability to extend the hours as it seemed appropriate, considering really all the concerns you're talking about right now. Geography, speed, everything that could factor into it. So that's why the, the proposed ordinance was drafted to leave the time period on which these companies could rely on coming into the business and then now giving the director the authority to extend earlier than six or later than ten such that, you know, based upon all these criteria, the safety issues that you're considering, the mobility issues.
I, I agree and I understand, I get that, that interpretation. I, 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 I think that is clear in the ordinance. On, on second reading, not, not, on my second reading, not this second reading. I mean, I, I think the confusion, and, and it's not, I don't think it justifies, Mr. Ne, a redraft, but in section C, I mean, the first sentence says, "Micro mobility services may allow operation of their devices between the hours of six AM, ten PM, period." All right, so that sort of sets up this hard cutoff. And then you follow up with the additional, "The director may extend later than ten." So, I mean, I guess that allows us to accomplish what I've been talking about, which is looking at some pilots and some smaller test cases to see without modifying the ordinance further. What I would say is that after, say, a, a six months or a year of studying that, if there is value to it, we should go back and change that. You know, because right now, ten PM is sort of the default without, without outside intervention from the director. And I, I think at some point that needs to be changed, right? It should, it should be broader, so it's, it's, it's a default that it can go later, not by special permission. Because that, that gets a little sticky, right? But I, I understand that, that, that it could happen now with, with the manager's approval. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I missed the may versus shall. So I, except that the motion is until three or until ten?
Well, you, what you're saying, Commissioner Hey Santos, is striking ten and putting three AM in there, right?
Yes, Mayor, that's the only change.
Yeah.
And making that the, the default operating time everywhere. May, well, until, unless they say otherwise.
It's, it's, it may go till three, doesn't have to go till three.
Okay. Um, and then they can extend it anyway, we're delegating that authority regardless. To that, just forget I said geofence at any point. I'd be comfortable with this, my one request from staff would be, as we test out, you know, let's see if it goes well at midnight, let's see if it goes well at one, one AM or three AM. That when we do make those adjustments, that we are informed. Whenever we've, there have been times we've made like some adjustments, even though they might seem minor on paper and we don't know, and then folks start emailing us, and then we look really bad because we didn't know we changed it as of Monday at seven AM. So as those adjustments are being made, my one ask is, can you let us know? Like, not very detailed, just, hey, we've changed the hour to one. We are piloting like until three in this one area. Just so that we do know. And then when people say like, why is it in my area? This is a test, this is a test area. That was my one ask, otherwise I, I will support the motion then with that one ask, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna continue to support the motion. I mean, it doesn't mean they'll go till three, it means that they could, it'll still be up to the department and director to choose when that cutoff is. And I do think it's important that we do look at some, some pilots out there to see what the usage is, especially for those late-night employees. And I'm not, I'm thinking not just bar workers, but like people that work in the hospitals, you know, that, that get off at late-night hours. It, it could be a real benefit to them as well. So I, I would like to see how those get utilized. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with all that having been set up, I'll support the motion. But, but I do really want us to, to be consistently informed of, of what the pilots are and, and how we're doing it for exactly the reasons Commissioner Sacco pointed out. People are going to ask us, and if we don't have the information, it, it's hard for them to have faith that we know what we're talking about. So, thank you.
So perhaps like one of those quarterly updates at GPC, this could be included in that, how it's, how it's coming along. Okay, can we include that in the motion, that, that a quarterly update will happen at GPC on, on micro mobility?
We want every quarter, I mean, that's a lot of updates. I mean, I, I won't be on the commission.
You won't be on the commission, if they're getting too many updates, they can say no. Just for the first, we need to get an update.
An update, I, I'll say an update.
Maybe we'll go to the, to the committee.
Yeah, it might, there might be a new committee.
I will, yes, I'm okay with adding an update to the commission.
Okay, okay.
Just not quarterly.
Thank you. That'll just be a little pen to remind the staff to come back with that updated information. Commissioner Ariola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the, the commission's and staff's caution, putting concerns for safety first. I do appreciate that. I think it helps us make good policy. I just, I just want us to keep in mind that almost all of our statistics have shown that two-thirds of these trips are all necessary trips to and from work, to and from home, to and from appointments. So, you know, let's, let's keep an eye, let's make sure we do it right. But let's keep in mind, this is, this is helping people get around our city more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez.
Mayor, if, I know the proposal is to three AM, but also you, on the language, if you can put earlier or later than three AM, because if we have, on that language, it only said later.
Well, yeah, so here.
So we adjust it, if we have issues, we come back and adjust to earlier hours.
So, Mr. Gomez, here's how it reads, this is line sixteen of the proposed ordinance. "Micro mobility services may allow operation of their micro mobility devices between the hours of six AM and ten PM." In the, in the motion, that ten PM is being stricken and replaced with three AM. "The micro mobility service is responsible for disabling its fleet each night. Micro mobility service may redistribute, redistribute, blah, blah, blah." Then it says, "The director may extend the hours of operations to be later than it would be three AM," again, right? And or earlier than six AM. And so I, so I get your concern that, that we should really put up to three AM. Not, because otherwise they're gonna say it says three AM, we're allowed to do it until three AM. But, so as long as the director has the, the opportunity to say, this is the hour. Yeah, so, then I'm just gonna ask for a little, sorry, Mr. Ne, ask for a little guidance there. Like, if the intention of this commission is to give the, to set the base parameter to end at three AM, but to give the city manager the discretion to be able to have the, the final say on when they, they must terminate their service, what, what do we need to put in there that, if we're not saying it right?
I may be hearing it wrong, what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is that the motion is that the, the hours in which the companies are, are allowed to operate the micro, micro mobility businesses on the right-of-way is from, would be six AM to three AM. And then management through the director would have the discretion to allow between the three AM and six AM?
No.
He's saying, taking yes, and you're saying no.
I mean, that's.
I don't know what the motion is.
That's, that's what the, that's what the language is, is what he said.
It's called a may.
See, my, my first, my first thought was that the motion was just to say the hours are gonna be six AM to three, six AM to three AM ended. Then it sounds like it was six AM to three AM plus flexibility on the part of management to say twenty-four hours a day. Or, or, or six AM to four AM, or five AM to, you know, but, but, so I'm not exactly sure what the motion is.
Mayor. Well, let's go ahead and ask the person who made it.
Yeah, I mean, that it'll be available till three AM, and if staff wants to change it from three AM to later, they have the ability to do that.
Okay, that's not what I think several of the folks up here heard.
I mean, I, I guess.
No, I, I, I think what, Commissioner Hey Santos, to be fair to everyone, I think what folks up here heard is that we, we would like to see them be allowed to operate up to three AM, but the city manager have the discretion about, you know, that would be the latest they could operate. She could make a determination that they stop at midnight or some other time, pursue it to these pilots and, and data that we collect based on those test cases. But I think that, I think the attorney's interpretation is right, is that if we pass this, as you proposed it, every company that operates here would have a right to operate it up until three AM without us being able to tell them otherwise.
That's the intent of the motion.
Okay, 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 that's helpful. Okay, I, I no longer support the motion. Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so my reading was with the word "may," it's that the city, either the director, may approve an individual company's operation overall or in one area up to three AM. So in my mind, that works as, you know, a scooter company says, we have a lot of business, we see people, like, we have to ship them off, and there's like always a thousand scooters running at this hour, like, we need to be able to run, operate longer. And management says, okay, we can extend your contract a little longer, by whatever criteria or whatever they're thinking about. We don't get to decide that detail. Not every operator has a legal right, point blank, to be running scooters until three AM, regardless of how we change our minds, or management says. Because that's, that's what I'm hearing Commissioner Hey say, just say, like, you have this carte blanche right to operate until three AM, and I don't think that's what most of us were talking about. I think we were talking up to three AM at the discretion of staff. That could just be a drafting, like, change, adding that to the end of that first sentence, up to three AM at.
Pursue it to staff approval.
Yeah. Which I, is what I was reading that "may" as. It doesn't guarantee anyone anything. But it seems like the maker of the motion has something else in mind. We'll just wait to see how that goes.
Mr. Ne, I think you wanna jump in.
And just, what I think staff intended in the proposed ordinance that was in the backup was that to not mess with what the companies have been told, six AM to ten PM, but that the management through the, the director could extend those hours, could extend it from ten till midnight, ten till three AM. Or the management could decide, hey, this is working out great, it's twenty-four hours. And, and that would be based upon the criteria that they determine, it's safety and, and area and speeds and so forth. But still not messing with the notion that, hey, these companies got the permits, they came in with the equipment, and, and they're expecting to be able to operate from six AM to ten PM. And anything beyond that is just based upon management's determination that that's appropriate. And, and, and that's, that's what we tried to present to you.
I, I hear you. And, and this, this conversation's been incredibly helpful to me to clarify what it says and doesn't say and wherein. Thank you, Mr. Ne. Commissioner Chestnut.
So Commissioner Hey Santos, will you consider up to three AM?
I, I mean, I, I don't think up to, I mean, I, to my, to Commissioner Ariola, I think it should be twenty-four seven. We are stopping people from having a safe way to, to get home. If we wanna make places more pedestrian-friendly, more easier, and don't have to have reliance on cars, this is how you do it. We have to make changes to allow people to use, to be able to, to use vehicles. I think we should allow our operators, by allowing operators to know they have more hours to use, I mean, when, look into the charts when they came back to us at GPC, the time period at nine and up to ten o'clock was packed. Everything was one of the highest times, it was, it was still heavily used. There is a demand for this. Not everyone in our community is, is drunk and hammered. And even at like, one thirty to AM, not every, or two thirty, not everyone is drunk and hammered. I think that is a, a lot of people are. And a lot of people go in their cars and they, they drive that way. I'd rather somebody on a, I'd have none of them, but. rather somebody on a, none of them, but we should give the ability for people to safely get to where they want to go and not have a reliance on cars. This is how we do it. I see there's not support for 3:00 AM. I would say that we could do, change that 10:00 to midnight, so that at least we can get, like, that's the name, the new permit hours. And then if the staff wants to change the hours to above that and pilot stuff, they can. I'll be minimal to that change if the secondary is okay with that.
Yeah, from what I've heard the commission, it sounds like, you know, we're okay with the staff recommendation to raise it to midnight, but it's that couple extra twilight hours that, you know, maybe there's some concern. So I'm okay with allowing, you know, to alleviate the commission's concerns, to allow for staff to come up with that. What I don't want to see is, you know, I just don't want to see, you know, this not be an issue come, you know, January. So.
So changing the.
Yeah, I mean, listen, we, you know.
Okay. So striking 10:00 PM in both those sections under C and replacing it with midnight, but that will still give staff discretion to extend it later and do some pilots and things like that. And then still coming back to the commission for an update on usage.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That was your, Commissioner Sacco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we then, actually, I guess it's covered. Okay, at the second, just not a fan of the drafting. Okay, so I think it's fine. I'm more comfortable with how it is now. I would ask, as far as drafting, because I don't like splitting topics, that after, you know, up to midnight, the second new portion the director makes in the hours, I would recommend putting that immediately after that first sentence, so that the two things, the "this is the time, we may also extend the time," is together as far as not trying to find where it would be. That's my preference when it comes to drafting, to put the time together. And then, this is when you have to clean up, this is how you may redistribute, because you've now changed topics. That's my one ask, to keep it neater, I think, and easier to read. But otherwise, I am good with midnight, and I'd be willing to support that as the quote-unquote "default by right" hours. Fine. I would just, if we can slip that to be together, I think that's my preference on drafting. Otherwise, I'm good with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion passed, I think, Mayor. But I, that second sentence is being added, also deals with the 4:00 AM portion as well, because it says that staff can also change the redistribution time as well. I think that's why it's after that, because it connects to both, those of both sentences. But it does, we need to make the change, but that added section deals with both those sentences. I think that's why they wrote it that way.
By the way, I'm good for it.
You all have done a phenomenal job of reminding me why I hate wordsmithing at the dais. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity, and it is always a pleasure. It's never, it's never, ever gone well. It's not a single time that it's gone well. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak to this item? We do not. Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor. We're changing in the ordinance in the backup, both instances of 10:00 PM to midnight. We're also asking for a report, a quarterly report to come back to the commission for an update on how this is going, for their further consideration. This is a roll call vote.
May I have a point of clarification there? Because the maker of the motion did say "an update," not a quarterly one, so I want to make sure.
Well, I, an update in three months.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Absolutely. Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay Santos?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. All right. Last item on our after the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay, our next item is ordinance 211332, quasi judicial rezoning of 1.08 acres of property located at 4232 Northwest Sixth Street. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, admitting the zoning on Atlas by rezoning approximately 1.08 acres of property, generally located at 4232 Northwest Sixth Street, is more specifically described in this ordinance from plan development to general office, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, my name is Juan Castillo, planner with the Department of Sustainable Development. This is, should be a pretty straightforward request. The item before you is a zoning change request from PD to office. The property in question is about 1.08 acres in size. Currently, it houses the kids' learning center and preschool. It's located north of the intersection, Northwest 39th Avenue and Northwest Sixth Street, on Northwest Sixth Street. So you can see it right here. And again, currently, the property is zoned PD. The request is to rezone it office. As you can see, the area is primarily zoned office. This would just complete that office delineation right here. And we've, you can kind of see pretty much what the uses are around there. You've got RSF1 over to the west, you have I-1 to the east, office on Sixth Street, and so forth. So, staff has reviewed the item before you, and it has found that it meets the rezoning criteria stated in the Land Development Code. This petition was heard by the City Plan Board on 6/23/22, and they recommended approval, and it is before you today as the first reading. Staff is also recommending approval for the petition before you. Thank you, and I am available and ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Commissioner Ariola?
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 211332 on first reading by title of.
Okay, it's a second that we adopted proposed ordinance on first reading. Madam Clerk, anybody signed up to speak? Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hay Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward? Absent. Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously with Ward absent. All right, next we have Commission Comment. Any Commission Comment at this time? Mr. Duncan Walker?
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking I might hold this until the very end, and I probably could have, but just, I wanted to, in preparation for our upcoming special meeting on the 12th, make a request or make it known to my colleagues at the dais, that I would like for us to be able to make that meeting as accessible to as many as possible. And it was brought to my attention that I would need to bring that before the entire commission if we were going to entertain allowing for a call-in option.
What, is that the police dog?
That's the K-9.
Madam Clerk?
So we are going to have to move rather expeditiously to try to get a contract situated because the prior contract we had ran out, it was not renewed. That will require us going through the purchasing process. We will do our best to expedite. I hope, I'm hoping it's possible, but that was one of the things I did follow up on after speaking with Commissioner Duncan Walker earlier this week. And I don't know that we'll be able to have it done by next week, but we will try to move forward in that direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chestnut?
On another issue.
Sure.
I came in late. Did you all thank staff for all of their hard work during the storm?
We did not at this meeting. I sure stunk in a lot of other ways.
Yes, well, I want to just really commend Public Works for a very, very organized, sandlocked. It was, I was just amazed at just how smoothly that ran. And everything, my neighbors' lights went out, and GRU was there within 45 minutes. So I just wanted to compliment staff, GRU, and the general manager for an excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I know we also learned a lot. It's every one of these events, you build on past experience, but you also learn where some chinks in the armor might be, and you work that into your plan for the next time. So, you know, it was a really, really well-run operation. And we're just very fortunate that we got a lot of practice without a lot of damage and impact. Okay, anybody else have anything? All right, then we will be in recess until 5:30. All right, good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order. Let me just cover around there, and we'll get on with our many awesome proclamations. All right, we're glad that you're all here with us tonight. I know that many of you are here for our many, many celebrations of our community. So, Madam Clerk, if you'll please introduce the first proclamation.
Our first item is actually the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and all night. Please be.
Now, Madam Clerk, thank you for keeping me on task here.
You're quite welcome. Our first proclamation is the Beuholtz High School Math Team Year 2022. Congratulations, Bobcats.
All right, our mathletes, come on up. Where are you? All right. Okay, now, you know, I'm a hurricane. That's okay. I'm still proud, I'm still proud of you all.
Some of us are Bobcats up here, so it's all right.
We never won any math stuff. Our band was good though. All right. Whereas, the Beuholtz High School math team has become a powerhouse in both state and national competitions over the last 15 years. And whereas, under the direction of coaches Will Frazier, Olin Reyaju, Faiga, you say it. Did I keep close? Okay, okay. I tried to practice, but it didn't, it didn't work. And Ziwi Lu, the team recently won its 14th national championship at the annual Mu Alpha Theta competition, which draws the top high school mathletes from throughout the United States. And whereas, the BHS team earned the right to compete at the national level by winning its 15th Florida championship earlier this year. And whereas, team members spent many hours each week preparing individually and as a team for the competitions. And whereas, as a result of its continued success, the team has been featured by national media outlets, including the Wall Street Journal. And whereas, in addition to more than 300 individual and team trophies, the BHS team also earned the National Rubin Award at the national competition this year for its outstanding mathematics service to the community. And whereas, an example of that service is the Alachua County Public Schools Math Olympiad, in which BHS math team members visit elementary and middle schools to host lessons and activities with the younger students to help them build their skills and confidence. And whereas, the team also founded, organizes, and hosts the Annual Superintendent's Math Challenge, a local competition for schools throughout the district designed to promote equal access to and boost students' enthusiasm for math. And whereas, the BHS team also organizes and hosts the Pre-Algebra Math Competitive Summer Camp, open to any student in grades four through seven, to help them prepare for advanced middle and high school math classes. And whereas, through its dedication to excellence and to installing, I'm sorry, instilling a love of math among students of all ages and backgrounds, the Beuholtz High School math team has brought honor and recognition to the City of Gainesville and to Alachua County Public Schools. Now therefore, I, Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim 2022 as Beuholtz High School Math Team Year in the City of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in recognizing the Beuholtz High School math team for its outstanding contributions to math education and the future of math in local schools and the community. In witness where I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed, the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida, this 21st day of September 2022. So we congratulate you and invite you to say a few words.
Okay. The name is Olin Reyaju Faiga, and I just want to say thank you to the council for recognizing us. And I'm sorry that I don't have the students with me today because they are competing already. They are preparing for competition. That's why I'm the only one that could come, because I'm the dumbest of their sponsors. The smarter ones are the ones training them presently. So they are busy for competitions, because we have competitions throughout the year. So that's why we are, they are not here. So sorry for that, and thank you so much.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation is Fire Prevention Week.
All right. We have somebody from GFR for this? How are you? I'm good, thanks. Whereas, the City of Gainesville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA. And fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to fire danger when you may have a little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas, Gainesville residents should be sure everyone in the home recognizes the sound or alert created by smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, Gainesville residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Gainesville residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, Gainesville first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Gainesville residents that are responsible to public education measures, I'm sorry, responsive to public education measures, are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind Gainesville residents it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim October 15, 2022, is Fire Prevention Week in the City of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in participating in the city's fire prevention activities and efforts sponsored by Gainesville Fire Rescue. In witness where I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed, the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida, this 10th day of August 2022. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Christian Harding. I've spent the last four years as a firefighter, but I now stand in as the interim fire and life safety educator. I want to thank you all for your continued support as we educate the community and make sure all of our neighbors are safe and their emergency is responding as quickly and safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christian has done a fantastic job in her role the last few months. So on behalf of Gainesville Fire Rescue, thank you for your support during Fire Prevention Week.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Our next proclamation is Central Florida Community Action Day.
All right, do we have anybody from CFCAA here? I guess not. So we'll go and read the proclamation and make sure they get it. Whereas, Central Florida Community Action Agency, or CFCAA, CFCAA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, community-based organization in Alachua, Levy, and Marion Counties that has been helping people and changing lives since 1981. And whereas, CFCAA's mission is to promote economic mobility by helping families living in poverty achieve self-sufficiency. And whereas, CFCAA offers life-changing services included but not limited to: Community Services Block Grant, Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, Raising and Improving Self-Sufficiency Expectations Program, Weatherization Assistance Program, and Aging in Place Home Rehabilitation Program. And whereas, CFCAA will continue to implement innovative programs that create a greater chance at success for everyone, will continue to focus on a broader range of community challenges to ignite economic growth and ensure all families can benefit, and will continue to be a voice for the disenfranchised. And whereas, CFCAA is celebrating 41 years of service at the 2022 Annual Meeting and Partner of the Year Awards Luncheon on Thursday, October 27. Now therefore, I, Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim October 27, 2022, as Central Florida Community Action Day in the City of Gainesville. Community Action Day in the city of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in recognizing the many contributions this organization has made to the community and join them in celebrating 41 years of service. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 6th day of September 2022. And again, we'll make sure that they get the proclamation. All right, Madam Clerk, next proclamation, please.
Our next proclamation is Cybersecurity Awareness Month.
Okay, we have any folks from the city for cybersecurity awareness? Ah, right on, right behind me. Hey, fellas, how are you? I've been clicking lots of random links that look a little strange, just to make sure. I actually just finished my training a couple days ago. I got it in on time. All right, we've got the whole team here. Thanks, y'all, for being here. Really appreciate it. Whereas, held every October since 2004, National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, or NCSAM, is a collaborative effort between government and industry to ensure every American has the resources they need to stay safe and secure online while increasing the resilience of the nation against cyber threats. And whereas, during National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, we acknowledge the danger that cyber threats pose to our economy and public infrastructure and raise awareness about steps we can take to mitigate and prevent future attacks. And whereas, cybersecurity threats have increased globally as well as in government agencies throughout the United States. And whereas, the city of Gainesville has aligned with the national theme of "See Yourself in Cyber" with our slogan, "See Something Wrong, Do Something Right, Think Before You Click." And whereas, the city of Gainesville has prepared a month-long agenda to encourage staff participation in keeping the city's systems and information safe through education and reinforcement of good security practices. And whereas, the city of Gainesville has adopted mandatory cybersecurity awareness training in advance of the State of Florida requirements introduced in HB 7055. Now therefore, I Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in celebrating National Cybersecurity Awareness Month across this great city and country. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 26th day of September 2022. Thank you very much. Well, if you want to say a few words, we'd love to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We're very proud of Cybersecurity Week. It's a, it's a big time for us. It's, it's actually a year-long endeavor. We're constantly providing training. It is a nationally recognized program here at Gainesville. It is one of the programs we're very proud has stretched citywide. We provide services in the realm of being able to access your equipment, your database, your data applications, as well as being able to protect your home and your, and your, and your security in your home through your computer networking. I'm going to say less in this, in this instance. I'm going to turn it over to TC, who is actually in charge of governance and compliance and runs the cyber, cybersecurity program along with these fine people. TC?
So thanks, Walt. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. TC Kelly, I'm the Enterprise IT Strategy and Governance Director. So I oversee the IT cybersecurity team. So first and foremost, just thank you for having us. So as Walt mentioned, National Cybersecurity Awareness Month is a nationally recognized month to promote security awareness and just, just training across the nation for just things that you need to be aware of and look out for as it relates to, to cybersecurity. Some of the things that we're doing to promote this month is we were having sessions throughout the month, every Tuesday and Thursday, to talk about security best practices and to promote the month. So all staff watching, including staff who are, who are present here, I encourage everyone to, excuse me, participate. There's a lot of good information, a lot of good knowledge and sharing that we're doing. We're having guest speakers join us throughout the month. We're also sending out communications, frequent communications on just security best practices and things that you need to look out for. So obviously, with emails and just threats with attachments and, and phishing attempts, it's all information surrounding what to look out for and how do we increase knowledge and just employ awareness for things to be aware of, when, you know, on, on the internet, working through some of our corporate enterprise systems. And then, as Walt mentioned too, through House Bill 7055, the new state, State of Florida Cybersecurity Act, will require that cybersecurity awareness training be mandatory. So this year, it's, it's not mandatory. We are promoting and encouraging everyone to, to take the training. It will be mandatory next year. So there's going to be policy and a lot of communications surrounding mandatory cybersecurity awareness training. So there's a lot of changes happening at the state level with security. So I talk a lot about the program, but you know, what really makes the program a success is the people. So there's a few folks I want to mention and just recognize, starting with Chad Campbell. He is our cybersecurity architect. He oversees the cybersecurity program and the IT cybersecurity team. I want to mention Z Enrique. She has done a tremendous job with planning and coordinating activities for the month, and you probably see her emails come across quite frequently. She's always sending out those security best practice emails of what not to do. We also have Kirk Self. He's behind the scenes. He's the one that's configured and deployed the training through our training platform called Noble4. So a lot of good information there. We have Paul Dineault. He works closely with the security team. He's our technical services manager. We have Anessa Coffey, who has worked hand in hand with the security team to implement process improvements with our risk assessments. We have Ms. Jean Clark, which most of you probably already know her. She's our service desk manager. And we have Rick Chu. He's our technical services director. So he worked with Paul and the security team to, to address vulnerabilities and to just, just help the security team do some of the things they need to do to, to stay on top of the, the security initiatives and projects that we have in place. And I think I got everybody, but again, these are the people that make it happen, that make it a success. So thank you, guys.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, our next proclamation is American Pharmacist Month.
I'm guessing I know where the pharmacists are. Make it easy on me. How are you? Why don't you all come on both sides here? Yeah. Welcome, y'all. Thank you so much for being here. All right, whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest health professions concerned with the health and well-being of all people. And whereas, pharmacists are specifically educated with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy and are ideally suited to work collaboratively with other healthcare providers and patients to improve medication use and outcomes by providing services through medication therapy management. And whereas, it is important to promote the profession of pharmacy as an essential healthcare provider. And whereas, pharmacists provide both knowledge and accessibility, which are crucial to patients fully optimizing access to medications that are not self-administered, such as, but not limited to immunizations. And whereas, the American Pharmacists Association and the Florida Pharmacists Association have proclaimed October as American Pharmacist Month with the theme, "Your Pharmacist: Improving Health and Increasing Access." Now therefore, I Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as American Pharmacist Month in the city of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me and celebrate our pharmacist and to give thanks and appreciation for the important role they play every day in our health, our communities, and our lives. In this witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 26th day of September 2022. So I'll present that to I-don't-know-who? And thank you. And if any of you would like to say a few words, we'd love to.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Mulca. I'm one of the pharmacy students who attends the UF College of Pharmacy. Firstly, I just want to thank everyone for being here today and hosting us for American Pharmacist Month. It's not only a big deal for us as pharmacy students and future pharmacists, but events like these are a big deal for the pharmacy profession as a whole. When pharmacy first started out, its role in healthcare wasn't nearly as expansive as it is today. And it's through events like these and through the advocacy of the community and our pharmacy peers and our legislation where we're really able to show what we're capable of as pharmacists, because pharmacy school, it's, it's a long four years, take it from, from me. I'm only in year two. But we, we learned so much throughout the schooling, and we undergo the appropriate training through our community internships and our hospital internships, where we are able to know how to, to provide the appropriate care for, for the general public. When pharmacy first started out, we were probably more just sought of as healthcare professionals who just dispense medications to the public. And we do that, but we also could do so many other things, and that's been exemplified throughout the years as pharmacy has changed, where we've been able to have the jurisdiction to provide counseling to our patients, and that's improved. That's led to positive health outcomes, and most recently from the COVID-19 pandemic, where we were recognized as healthcare providers to administer vaccinations to millions of people, which played a big role in, in mitigating the, the pandemic. There's still a lot we need to improve on in the field, but it's encouraging to have events like, and be recognized in American Pharmacist Month, and is a step in the right direction where we're going to be able to propagate that change and, and lead to a positive impact in our profession. So I just want to say thank you again for having us, and if anyone else would like to speak, then take it away.
All right, well, thank you all. We really appreciate you being here and sharing your, a little bit of your, your profession with us, and good luck on years three and four. And two and all those others. And enjoy home time. Like, they give you a little time off? Yeah. All right, thanks, y'all. Get back to studying. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation is Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay. Yen, are you here? Yeah. Thank you all for being here. Fabulous. All right. Whereas, the Latino and Hispanic population, itself incredibly diverse with members being of indigenous, African, and European descent, speaking many different languages, make up nearly 10% of Gainesville and is only increasing. And whereas, our Latino and Hispanic neighbors provide the labor that makes our economic growth possible, representing the second highest ethnicity proportionally in the labor force, earning over $650 million, of which went to state and local taxes. Whereas, organizations such as the Latin American Business Alliance illustrate to our community the integral part Latinos play in the creation of new businesses in our community. And whereas, groups such as Latino Women's League highlight the rich culture our Hispanic neighbors contribute to Gainesville and provide resources such as English learning classes, so our Latino neighbors may have better access to our community. And whereas, programs such as migrant education work to provide children of migrant workers receive an equitable education, and grassroots organizations like Modesto Fronteras work to protect the rights of immigrants, helping to ensure new arrivals are treated with dignity and respect, and their children receive the foundation necessary to continue, help build our economy of tomorrow. Now therefore, I Lauren Poe, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Gainesville, and invite all of our neighbors to join me in recognition of the achievements of the Hispanic and Latina community. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 4th day of October 2022. And I've got lots of coffees here. So Yen, I know you best. I'm going to give those to you. And then whoever would like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Hello, buenas tardes. Yo soy Erica Gerzi from Latino Women's League. I am proud of being here, standing in front of you to, and listen to this declaration, this proclamation, that I think that we had a due date really late, right? Because we have been here as Latinos for more than a century, and we have helped so much with our community. And here in Gainesville, the Latino community has grown so much lately. In the last 30 years of my life here, I have seen so many new Latinos, and I'm proud to be one of them. Our Latino Women's League organization has been helping and helping all the community here in Gainesville since 1995. We started with children's stories in the library, and then we moved next year for the English classes. So since 1996, we have been giving English classes here in Gainesville. For, we started with Latinos only, but after 1996, in 1997, we got so many people from different countries over the world. So increased amazingly just in one year. And our assistance is over 40 people every semester. So we can see that from the very first time, the very beginning, we started the English classes, our community internationally grew in our little space for the Latino Women's League, providing English classes and also citizenship classes, preparation classes. So we keep doing that since 1996 until now. It's been a struggle for us for the time that we had the pandemic, because we had to move from one location to a different location, and we have been kind of gypsies now, moving from here to there. So far, right now, we are in the La Casita, what now is known as the Hispanic Latinx Institute on University Avenue. But we are looking forward for finding some kind of help from anyone in the community who is interested in helping the Latino Women's League to keep working with the Latino, with the English classes and the citizenship classes, and also to keep doing the film festival. We have every year, last, last, last month was our 18th anniversary for the Gainesville Latino Film Festival. So we are looking for funding for the next year. So if you know anyone who is interested in helping with that, and also with the English classes and the citizenship classes, please contact us. And Ethan was grateful to invite me here, and I, I really am grateful with you, Ethan, because I can talk about this and maybe get some help from the community. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Jennifer, and I am so thankful for this proclamation. In behalf of Modesto Fronteras, I, we truly thank you, thank the commissioners, thank you, Mayor, all organizations, and everybody who believes in a diverse and safe community. We are working towards that safe community and diverse with equity, and we're, we're headed to the right directions, and we are so happy to belong here. Thank you.
My name is Jorge Villalobos, and I represent LAVA, that is the Latin America Business Alliance. We are supporting a lot of the new businesses in Gainesville. You can see almost every month in this city, they have two or three businesses from Latinos that they are open. We have a, a lot of people ready to help, the ones who are coming. I want to say thanks, because this is a city really friendly for business people, at the same time for the people who come looking for work. We always, they always find great opportunities. And, and it's really good that we have this kind of recognition from the city, major commissioners. I, I really appreciate this, because it makes me feel more Colombian today in Gainesville. And not only we bring great people and great business, we also, we bring great soccer players like the commissioner, David Arreola, that we have the chance to play together. Then I'm so happy that, that we can recognize this. Thank you again.
Well, we thank you all so much for being here and celebrating this with us tonight. Of course, it's a month full of celebrations. Uh, of course, it's a, a month full of celebrations and recognitions. So go out, have fun, uh, meet your neighbors, eat some good food, dance, uh, and, and we really just appreciate you taking the time tonight. And Commissioner Sacco would also like to greet you.
Hola. Gracias a todos por venir. De verdad estoy orgullosa que la ciudad reconoce todo lo que hemos hecho, lo que ustedes han hecho, lo que van a seguir haciendo, lo que sus hijos van a hacer y los nietos. Um, de verdad estoy orgullosa de todos los cambios que la ciudad está ofreciendo y la ayuda que ustedes han dado para esos cambios venir a pasar. Um, para todo lo que estamos escuchando y para sus comunidades cuando regresen la semana que viene, el jueves, el 13, a las 6 de la, de la, de la tarde, vamos a tener una reunión aquí totalmente en español con representantes de todos nuestros departamentos que hablan español para la comunidad hispanohablante. A veces por no saber que hay personas que, que parecen y suenan como nosotros que están aquí, le da pena o miedo alguien entrar a este edificio y queremos demostrar que aquí su comunidad está. Aquí estamos igual que ustedes y estamos disponibles a cualquier cosa que podemos ayudar. Y estoy tan orgullosa que podemos terminar el, concluir el mes, uh, de, de herida, uh, hispana, de cultura hispana con, con este evento y espero poder verlos a ustedes y sus familias y su comunidad. Gracias. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
All right. Thank you. All right. Y'all have a good night. Thanks for being here. Lot of joy, a lot of good going on in this community, my colleagues. We're lucky to live here. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Our next item is early public comment.
Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Our next item is the first reading of ordinance 211147A, quasi-judicial rezoning of 13.943 acres of property located northwest of, of the intersection of Southwest Williston Road and Southwest 13th Street and west of Southwest 13th Street and south of Southwest 36th Place. An ordinance of the city of Gainesville, Florida amending the zoning map atlas by rezoning approximately 13.943 acres generally located northwest of the intersection of Southwest Williston Road and Southwest 13th Street and west of Southwest 13th Street and south of Southwest 36th Place is more specifically described in this ordinance from Alachua County Business Retail Sales and Services, Highway Oriented Business and Hospital Medical to City of Gainesville Urban 7, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause or repealing clause and an effective date.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jason Simmons, Department of Sustainable Development. You saw this, uh, these properties two weeks ago when the, when the, the urban mixed use, land use designation was placed on these properties. Uh, this is a, this is three separate petitions that were recently annexed into the city that have been combined for one presentation for the land use and now the one presentation for the proposed, uh, zoning. So we have, the first one was, uh, almost four acre parcel on the west side of Southwest 13th Street. It's currently two vacant parcels and the Gator Town Inn Hotel. The current zoning is Alachua County, uh, BR Business Retail Sales and Service and the city is proposing the Urban 7 transect zone for that property, which is shown here. The second property is across the street on the east side of 13th Street, a 0.65 acre parcel. Currently has Alachua County Business Highway or Highway Oriented, oriented business as its zoning. That's proposed to change to the Urban 7. And then finally, you have the, the UF Shands, uh, treatment facility on these three parcels on the northeast corner of Southwest 13th Street and Southwest Williston Road. They currently have Alachua County Business Highway and Alachua County Hospital Medical zoning, zoning districts that would change also to the Urban 7 as part of this petition shown here. This is just showing, uh, the highlighted area of the, of the area to, to be, uh, rezoned. Again, the, this was annexed into the city in February of this year and this area was just recently annexed into the city, uh, in September. This is just showing some of the adjacent uses to the, to the properties. You've got single-family residential essentially to the west of, of this property here. Here's the hotel and you've got commercial, including restaurants on the north and south sides of, of the property for the UF Health Florida Recovery Center, which is located here. You've got the office use associated with that business and the other, uh, parcel is currently vacant as well as the parcel right on the corner of Williston Road and, uh, Southwest 13th Street. Uh, the, these petitions were all reviewed in accordance with the rezoning criteria. Uh, this is from the Land Development Code and because we're proposing this to go to the Urban 7 transect zone, uh, there's an additional criteria that we look at for those. Uh, in particular, in, under number one, it indicates that the proposed transect zone should provide a logical extension of an existing zone or an adequate transition between zones. Uh, we decided upon the Urban 7. We looked at Urban 6 earlier in the process as a possibility for zoning, but the existing hotel would have, is not a permitted use in the Urban 6, so determined that the Urban 7 would be more appropriate in that all the existing uses are permitted by right in that district. And additionally, if you look at this map, north is to the right-hand side. The commercial zoning or the non-residential zoning that's in the city limits, north of these recently annexed properties, all have the Urban 7 transect zone at this time. So the subject property is here tonight. We're simply continuing that pattern down to Southwest Williston Road. So, and these are annexed properties and we are required by statute to provide a City of Gainesville, uh, land use and zoning designation. The urban mixed use was put on the properties two weeks ago and the Urban 7 is a, is a zone that implements that urban mixed use land use. So as a result, staff recommends approval of ordinance 211147 and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Ms. Simmons. Appreciate the presentation of Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 21147A on first reading by title only.
Second.
Okay. Motion second to adopt to propose ordinance. Uh, anybody sign to speak to this item, Madam Clerk? Okay. We'll be back to the commission for a real call vote.
Commissioner Hey Santos.
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco.
Aye.
Commissioner Areola.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Aye.
And Mayor Poe.
All right. That motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Our next.
Actually, real quick, um, I'm assuming the rest of you are here to speak to, um, one or both of the last two items. And so if you would, would like to do so, there are, um, little forms to fill in on the two little tables by each door. So just fill that in, hand it to our clerk. Can you give away, Madam Clerk? And, uh, and she'll call you up when it's time for public comment. Um, and with that, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah. On that note, Mr. Dave Hill, if you could come and see me on your card before I read this in. Um, our next item is, uh, Z2, land use amendment for a property located, uh, north of US 441 and east of, uh, east and west, excuse me, of State Road 121. Ordinance number 211459, an ordinance of the city of Gainesville, Florida amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Gainesville by amending the future land use map and policy 4.3. Point four of the comprehensive, uh, plan, future use element pertaining to certain property generally located north of US 441 and east and west of State Road 121 is more specifically described in this ordinance, providing directions to the city manager, providing a severability clause or repealing clause and an effective date.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. McDermott.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Um, I'm Sean McDermott, a senior assistant city attorney. Uh, before we turn this over to Mr. Edleton to, to kind of dive into the details of this, uh, application before the commission, we did want to just provide a quick overview for these items before you because there is a kind of a long history and, um, and in fact, both of these items before you are here as a result of settlement negotiations with, um, two active litigation cases. And so, um, with that said, you do have two applications before you tonight. One is, um, a land use change and a, uh, uh, an amendment to an existing plan or an existing policy that's within the city of Gainesville's comprehensive plan already that dictates the development of this property. And then an associated rezoning. Just to clarify, um, right off the top, this, this property is roughly, the totality of the property is roughly 1,800 acres in the northern portion of the city of Gainesville. And the land use policy, so the first application before the commission, that policy governs the entirety of those 1,800 acres. Um, the second, uh, application before the commission, the associated rezoning, that only pertains to a, a certain area that's roughly 744 acres, kind of on the southern portion of this property. There's two phase, there's a phase line that divides the north and the south. The rezoning just deals with the southern portion, so 744 acres, um, within that southern portion. So the history, going, just going through it fairly quickly, is this property, beginning back in 1992, was annexed into the city of Gainesville. It was done on, um, on, uh, with two annexations. One was in 1992, one was in 2007. One of those annexations was City of Gainesville initiated. So the city commission back, um, in 92 is, is the one initiated the annexation to take in this property within the city of Gainesville. Back then, annexations under, um, that were done by the city of Gainesville were done under the Boundary Adjustment Act, which has since been repealed and now the city of Gainesville follows the general state law for annexations. Though, but, um, the Boundary Adjustment Act just completely mirrored general state law. And the important thing to note is that the, um, criteria for annexations back then as well as today is that municipalities annex property when, um, the municipality, when the, the property is already developed for or it's slated to be developed for, um, purposes that are urban in character. So that's kind of the, you know, the general rule and reason of why a city would annex property into a municipality rather than leaving the property in unincorporated county. Okay? So it's, it's important to note, as Jason just mentioned on the, um, previous item, that when property is annexed into the city of Gainesville, um, the state law and more specifically the city of Gainesville's comprehensive plan and our land development code requires that the city then assign land use categories to the property as well as assign zoning to the property to dictate the use and development of that property. Um, the general rule that's stated within our comprehensive plan is that's supposed to be done within one year of annexation. Um, this property, for a variety of reasons, um, it still has not been rezoned. It was in 2009, so fast forward into, fast forward to 2009, that's when the city of Gainesville, um, did assign land use categories and adopted a specific policy that governs the use and development of this property, um, that is codified in the city's comprehensive plan. So, um, so the land use portion, you know, the top tier of development regulations, that was assigned to this property. And that specific policy that the city commission adopted back in 2009 dictated that this, this property had to be rezoned by the city to a planned development, um, zoning district with a bunch of parameters that are already, that are provided for in that comprehensive plan policy. Um, again, that was in 2009 and for a variety of reasons, including the market turn in 2008, that that was never done. Um, fast forward to, that being a rezoning of the property. So it has land use, it still doesn't have zoning. It's, it's currently just Alachua County, uh, silver cultural zoning. Silver culture, for anybody who doesn't understand that word, which, um, is just, it's just timber farming. So they grow trees and they harvest them for pulp and different products. So, so fast forward to December 2019 and shortly before that, the property owner did submit an application to rezone the property to plan development. That is, again, dictated by the comprehensive plan and requires it to be, um, zoned to plan development. So they submitted an application to rezone it to plan development. Um, that application went through the standard process. As it was going through that process, staff identified, um, several concerning factors with their application and were forthright with their, uh, staff's concerns and they, um, staff communicated those to the city, to the city commission in 2019. And as a result of staff's concerns, in December of 2019, the city commission voted to deny that PD zoning application. Okay? That denial, um, and as you are all well versed when, with, when a city commission denies a quasi-judicial application such as that, uh, PD zoning application, you know, it, it, you can't just do it with the stroke of a pen with, without any specific reasons of why the city commission wants to enter into a denial, but rather you have to articulate specific reasons of why that didn't, you know, that application didn't meet the criteria in the comprehensive plan and state law. The three big factors that were articulated by the commission, mainly as a result of staff's, uh, recommendation to the commission, it was, it was, the denial was based on three broad reasons. The first was environmental reasons, predominantly being that the application at that time, um, it allowed for continuing silver culture operations within the wetlands of this property. So, you know, within the wetland buffers, um, there would be continual, continual logging happening within those buffers rather than a one-time harvest of the existing pine plantations there and then, um, you know, undergoing restoration efforts. So that was one reason that the, you know, that the staff kind of brought that concern to the city commission. The second one was that the application, um, was, in staff's view, would have resulted in a sprawling, low-density, kind of inefficient use of land. And the way it did that is it cemented, um, the application kind of, uh, set in stone, this, this ceiling of development that was, was just that. It was kind of a low-density, kind of sprawling, um, uh, development and it wouldn't have allowed for, you know, a more efficient use of land. Then the third one is kind of related, the third concern that was raised by staff, and those were transportation issues. And what that was, is just because there was, um, you know, it, it, it would have likely resulted in a low-density, very kind of sprawling, um, development that, that wouldn't allow for an efficient transportation system for this property. Meaning, you know, the RTS, for instance, or other, um, avenues of mobility would just maybe not, it would not meet the thresholds that would, uh, allow for a robust multi-mobility type system on this land. So that, again, that was in December of 2019. Shortly after that, the property owner, um, filed two separate and distinct, uh, litigation cases against the city for, because, as a result of that city commission's denial. One of the cases is, uh, roughly, it's a right of appeal that the, that the landowner has and it's arguing that, um, the city commission's denial was both substantively and procedurally flawed in accordance with Florida law. The second, um, case is arguing that the city commission's denial is not consistent with the comprehensive plan that requires the PD zoning. So those, both of those cases were filed. I will report to date, the city has had success in those cases. In fact, the, uh, the first case I described, um, the city prevailed, um, at the, at the circuit court level and it's since been appealed to, uh, the district court and sometime in early spring will be slated for oral arguments. Um, the second case is the, the full-blown evidentiary trial is being scheduled for early spring. Um, and so those are both on the horizon. And I will just say, the, the, you know, those, those two ongoing litigation cases, and it's important to note that unlike a lot of litigation that the city undergoes, um, when there is, I would say most of this, of the litigation that, that the city undergoes, it's when there's either been a final event that's happened, so, you know, typical negligence cases, a slip and fall, bus accidents or whatever, but a, a certain finality to something that's happened and that needs to be litigated. In the policy side, there's been often a certain final policy decision that's been made. Um, and that when the city commission makes a final policy decision, often there's avenues for people to challenge that. And then our office comes into gear to defend the city's decisions. It, it, and that's fine and good, you know, that's what our office is here for. This is different because, um, these cases, there's no real This is different because these cases, there's no real final decision here. And what I mean by that is even if the city, if we continue and spend an incredible amount of time and resources and money, you know, public resources, which generally we're, you know, happy to do, but in this case, even if we do that and prevail, completely outright prevail, we'll still be back to this square one of exactly where we are right now, where the property still has not received zoning. Because of that, while, at the same time, while we are undergoing this litigation, staff has been proactive and we have been in active negotiations with the property owner to come to a mutual resolution and to settle the cases and to, you know, to bring an application back to the city commission. So, I am happy to report that in the course of doing that, the property owner has been, they have acted in good faith, and we have had, you know, very just productive conversations, a lot of time and work has gone into revising their application to the one that is before you today. And I will say, you know, as opposed to last time in December of two thousand and nineteen, this go-around, staff is recommending approval and is supportive of this development, predominantly because of those three concerns that I had mentioned that staff identified last time. The property owner has been very willing to work in those regards and has corrected those to staff's full satisfaction, including, you know, for instance, the ones I mentioned, like the ongoing silver culture in the wetland buffers, they've agreed to no longer do that. Also environmentally, it's key to note, and again, Mr. Edelton will get into some more of the details, but, you know, again, this property is roughly eighteen hundred acres. The landowner has agreed to set aside, meaning won't be developed, roughly sixty-eight percent of that total property. And that's significant. I know, you know, when I was coming of age in Gainesville and going to school, the common wisdom back then was that the Latchua County's environmental regulations were always more stringent and protective of environmental resources than the City of Gainesville's. And I just mention that because their regulations require generally a fifty percent set aside. Well, this goes well above and beyond that to a sixty-eight percent set aside. That will be, the vast majority of that will be protected by conservation easements permanently and managed by a conservation management plan that is very detailed in how the property will be restored and, you know, to a more natural use rather than just logging. So, environmentally, they really have improved their application. From the second standpoint, and kind of related to the third, which was a sprawling, sprawl-like development and the transportation issues, this application does allow for a more dense and clustered, efficient use of land to develop this property. So, rather than a typical sprawling subdivision-type neighborhood, it does allow for some higher-density, clustered development that then allows for, you know, the vast pockets of property that would be protected throughout the entirety of those eighteen hundred acres. And so, so that's what's before you today as a result of all that work with staff, against staff recommends approval and with to both the land use and, the last thing I'll say is, the only reason the land use item is before you tonight is because some of the recommendations that staff wanted to see done in the zoning portion, in order to do those, the land use policy had to be tweaked a little bit. The existing land use policy that governs this property that was adopted back in two thousand and nine, that had to be amended in certain respects to allow for what staff wanted to see there. And so, the property owners bringing the land use item essentially out of the city's staff's request to do so. Initially, if you remember, they were only bringing the rezoning application. So, that's why these two items, both the land use and the rezoning application are before you, and the specific details, like I said, Mr. Edelton will be happy to get into now, and then we're here for questions or anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Mr. Edelton, welcome.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate it, teed it up really well for me, did most of the work, really. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Forrest Edelton, Acting Director for the Department of Sustainable Development. And I really am one in a long line of planners that have worked on this project, of course, as Mr. McDermott went over, it's been going on well-nigh on thirty years, so I am one. Of course, our current Brittany, our current planning manager, Brittany McMullen, has worked on this as well, and our former director, Andrew Persons, just to name a few, as well as four of the city's environmental coordinators over the past several years. So, I won't go into a whole ton of detail here because Sean did a great job of going over it, but I do want to, you know, as planners do, add some pretty pictures to it and go over some of those main three pictures that we were, or the main three areas that Sean discussed here. So, of course, here is a map of the location, just to the north of four forty-one here. It's the northern extent of the city and is heading out of town here. And what you see on this screen is the zoning, the land use, sorry, on this side. The land use designations, as Sean described, as they are today. And here is that phase line that Sean also discussed that is where the, demarcates where the zoning will be applied. So, you can see currently, we have the conservation, the single-family, the residential low, and this PUD area. Again, the zoning is currently Latchua County agriculture. So, this slide, just really quick, because Sean went into it, of course, started in ninety-two, annexed. The remaining portion of it came in in two thousand and seven, and these four land uses that I just went over came into play in two thousand and nine. And in two thousand and seventeen was the application that Sean went over, and of course, in two thousand and nineteen leaves us to where we are here today. These are the existing acres and acreage for these designations. These are the ones that will be amended if it goes through, if you all approve this. Yes, yes. And so, here are the zoning details for the application. We've got the PUD district here, and this is the proposed, this is what is proposed to be changed. There'll be a PUD district that is the mixed-use central, and there is conservation management areas that are in that PUD. The mixed-office residential, which has this five hundred and seventy-seven acres, that's really what the single-family and residential low has changed to. So, here's the proposed map. You'll see that it's changed those single-family and the residential low areas into the MOR land use here. And that is to allow for some of these changes that address the urban sprawl considerations that the commission articulated in two thousand and nineteen. You can see that in the mixed-use central, it has a minimum development requirement of residential units and the non-residential, and the residential density is increased to the dwelling, twenty dwelling units per acre. And in that mixed residential area is also the twenty dwelling units per acre. So, of course, we have the criteria that we go through for the future land use changes, consistency with the comp plan, compatibility with surrounding land uses. Of course, the environmental impacts and constraints, as Sean articulated, is a major issue and concern for this project, and of course, has impacted the commission's discussion and votes in the past. Also, impacts on transportation is one of those items. So, the environmental constraints, the site, the entirety of the site is in strategic ecosystems. It's the two ecosystems, it's the Hague Flatwoods and Buck Bay Flatwoods to the eastern side of one twenty-one, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then there is also a portion of the Millhopper Flatwoods actually on the southern side of four forty-one here. So, those strategic ecosystems are a big, are a broad way to say that there could be, that there are likely valuable environmental resources in these areas. And there are. This shows roughly where the wetland areas are on-site today. These are areas that would be protected as wetlands and surface waters by our development, by our land development code and would require buffering for these areas. So, for the next couple of slides, I'm showing some historic aerials of how the site has been used. As Sean said, it is a silver culture operation. It is industrial agriculture. This image is from nineteen thirty-nine, and you can see that there's a rough crayon here marked out on the image that shows the wetlands, and that these areas have really been harvested directly up to the wetland areas. You'll recognize this teardrop shape as we continue to go through here. Later on, you can see in the fifties, this aerial is from fifty-seven, it's filled out a little bit more around these wetland areas, but a large portion of this property continues to be in agriculture and silver culture. As we move forward here, we have in the sixties, you can see this has become much more of a modern operation, a modern agricultural timber operation. It gets very close to these wetland areas. It's well-defined what is wet or what really is valuable or productive as an agricultural operation. This image is in the nineties, and you can see, again, it is filled in, the crop has grown in here, but you can really see where these wetland areas are. They're very well-articulated, and of course, there are state laws and requirements that have come into play that govern best practices for agricultural operations that limit how many impacts or how close you can get to these wetlands. And these images are from the two thousands. This is early two thousands. You can see, again, there's a harvest. It comes very close to the wetland areas, and again, in two thousand and seven, another harvest. And in recent months, there have been further harvesting of this area that some of you and some of our citizens may have seen when you drive north out of town on one twenty-one. So, that really is to set the table for the way that this property has been used and the way that the environmental review of this has tried to frame it. Today, it's industrial silver culture. What can we do to improve the environment, the environmental quality in this area? Is there something that the city can do to secure this? So, one of those things, of course, that was done is the establishment of the conservation land use. And that was done based on the backbone of an environmental resource assessment that identified the wetlands that you saw, you know, clearly from the aerial imagery, but also included some of the additional valuable habitat or other sort of environmental resources. This was the original proposal in the original PD layout plan. This shows the conservation land use areas and also areas outside of conservation land use that are intended to be in conservation management areas with their own conservation management plans. So, we also, of course, have criteria for the land use change within our land development code. It's very similar to what is required in the comp plan, and it goes on to include, again, those three main areas that we're discussing, the environment, the transportation, and the urban sprawl. So, this is a listing of the requirements in our code. And so, this is really that larger goal that I was discussing for the environmental side. This is what is being proposed for that overall total conservation management area, that's the sixty-five to sixty-eight percent of the property today, that will be in some form of conservation and management. That is a significant portion of the property, as Sean articulated, and gives the city a lot of ability to manage these valuable resources for the future. So, as Sean also briefly spoke about, there's been a change in how the conservation land use and silver culture will be related to each other on the site going forward. So, there now will be transition areas that are based off of either distance from proposed development or their existence in current wetland areas or in planted pine. And so, this image shows a little bit better what I'm talking about here. The light green is roughly those wetland areas that you saw in those aerial images in the past. These are areas that are wetlands, and in some cases would contain buffer areas, in some cases is not buffers. What is being proposed is that upon the adoption of this, all silver culture operations in these light-green areas will cease with the establishment of the conservation management plan. In the brown areas, there is a proposal for one more harvest as development comes in and as this transitions into these conservation management areas. And you can also see here, it's a little bit helpful that this orange line is that conservation land use as it relates to both the brown areas and these light-green wet areas. So, you can see within some of this orange designated area that there's brown where there is the ongoing silver culture operations. But that is being proposed to transition out. And staff believes that actually, in many cases, that this transition of pine, that this one more harvest can actually help facilitate the restoration of these natural areas. The, of course, planted pine in of itself is very limited for the environmental value that it can provide an area. In the absence of that planted pine, more can be done to manage those areas to increase that environmental value. And with that, actually, I do want to go over a little bit more with the transportation. Sean spoke about it to some extent, but our land development code, of course, requires that the transportation impacts of any proposed development are analyzed and assessed by staff, and those impacts that are assessed have to be managed or mitigated for with that development plan at the time. In addition, the applicant has been amenable to, including in the proposal, that at such time as RTS decides that transit services are needed in the area, that the applicant will then provide those services. And with that, staff recommends approval of LD twenty-two, one oh five, one oh six, and one oh seven, subject to findings within the staff report and the proposed PD.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edelton.
Thank you.
I will invite the applicant up now to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Clay Swager. I'm a certified land planner. I work with EDA consultants. Good evening. I'd like to give you a brief presentation to go over a few more elements of the application and just to highlight some of the things that staff has already presented to you, and then, of course, we're here to answer all your questions that you may have tonight. I'm here tonight with Mr. David Coffey, Tim Jackson, Greg Galpin, and O'Neilia Lozari. I appreciate the chance to present this. This property's been discussed many times over the years, and we're here again tonight to discuss it with you. There are three petitions that are before the commission tonight. Two of them are related to the amendments to the comprehensive plan. One is related to the zoning on a portion of this property. This map is in our application, and it's what I define as a regional context map. And I think it's important to look at to make sure everyone knows where the property is and how it's related to many of the elements of the city. This is an opportunity for urban development where urban services are available in a part of the city that actually has more opportunities for better connectivity to some of the core employment elements of Gainesville. Most of our development is by nature is happening to the west. That is a matter of fact in land use, but those east-west arteries are becoming very congested. This is an opportunity with several roads, north-south routes, to where we can get to some of the key elements. I think we could probably be from here up there in about fifteen minutes. Main Street, Sixth Street, Thirteenth Street, Thirty-Fourth Street, those are all arterial roads that can serve this project along with, of course, US four forty-one. We're also very close to an activity center at the corner of State Road one twenty-one and US four forty-one with a number of employment and retail opportunities there, city amenities, city parks, senior rec center, all within close proximity of this project. So, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about that in the regional context with our city. I'll go very briefly through these points because both staff members have already talked about them, but these properties have been annexed in to the city over time, and back in two thousand and nine, thirteen years ago, the land use was amended for this property in the comprehensive plan, and that exists today, it's still in effect. There is a comprehensive plan policy that governs environmental protection and design standards, permitted uses and so forth, and a land use map that is a combination of PUD, single-family, residential low, and single-family, residential low, and conservation. And so some amendments to those are going to be discussed tonight. As staff indicated, between two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen, there was a proposed PUD rezoning application for a portion of this property, some of the land on the more southern end of the property. That was denied, as staff indicated, and we were given direction by this body, the city commission, and they did, as a courtesy, hold a workshop as well after that denial to give us input about what was needed to be done to bring an application back that could be successful. More information and a strengthened environmental program needed to be brought forward and more consideration on-site design criteria to avoid an urban sprawl type of development, more single-use, lower-density type of development. And so the settlement agreement and the work that's been done with staff and the landowner has been significant. And the applications that are before you tonight are significantly improved and have worked very diligently to address these issues. Again, these are the three applications that are before you tonight. There are text amendments to the comprehensive plan language for this property that's in effect today, land use map changes. These were suggested by city staff and negotiated with the property owner to improve this project. Number two, the land use map change is going, for example, is going from single-family and residential low on sort of the outer areas that are developable on this property to what is defined in this comp plan as mixed-use office and residential. And so that is taking away sort of the more single-use type of residential districts where you typically see single-family detached units predominantly at a lower density. There's comprehensive plan language right now that limits the density to no more than two-point-seven-five units per acre. And so MOR, as I call it, is higher density and promotes and allows a mix of uses and it'll be a better product as a result, we believe. And the zoning change is just related to seven-hundred-and-forty-four acres of the one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight. This is in your staff report and their words are better than mine, but I would like to just read this to you. They're recommending approval and their words from that report indicate, "This remedies the deficiencies identified by the city commission in two thousand nineteen. Specifically, this promotes denser and clustered development to establish an efficient and non-sprawling land use pattern that protects wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas. Set asides from development over sixty-eight percent of the total one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight-acre property are managed through a stringent conservation management plan with conservation easements. It will also require development of affordable housing, installation of community gardens, low-impact design, clustering, maximization of pervious surfaces, narrow streets, and reuse of stormwater." And because of these improvements that have resulted in a detailed collaboration between staff and the property owner, staff recommends approval of this ordinance. And that is better said than I could and we couldn't agree more. And that's been the effort of what we're trying to do to bring this back to you tonight. The existing future land use map in the comp plan is on the left and the proposed is to the right. Again, those changes are to the single-family and residential low areas that are shown in tan and yellow and now the MOR, mixed-office residential, is in blue. And the PUD, which is the crosshatched area just to the west of State Road one twenty-one that runs through the property, is, remains unchanged. So I'd like to make a few comments about the conservation management area and the conservation management plan. Lot of change and a lot of work's been done to that as well. I'd like to just talk through that for a couple moments. What does it include? This includes one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty acres, sixty-five percent of this planning parcel that is shown. Everything in green will be put into a CMA with a conservation management plan. That includes all of the area that is under conservation, future land use designation. It includes all the wetlands, seven-hundred-seventy-three acres, and forty percent of the uplands on the property. And so that is a significant majority. It's almost two-thirds of the property. And what does it mean? And how will we govern? That was a critical component that may have been missing last time is the conservation management plan is attached to the PD ordinance. It will become effective and adopted upon the city commission approval of the zoning. So there's clarity about when it becomes effective. It establishes management requirements and requires conveyance of conservation easements to ensure perpetual protection. And the conservation easements is that, that's the time that the timber harvesting stops and some of the land management restoration practices proceed. This would be the largest CMA in conservation management plan, I believe, ever approved in the city of Gainesville. And it's a solid plan to transition the most sensitive areas of this property into conservation status and out of the agricultural production industry. Another slide. Forrest talked about this just a bit. Everything in light green and dark green would be in the conservation management area, about eleven-hundred acres. Everything in light green, with approval of the PD, would be placed into a conservation easement and timber harvesting stops immediately. Those are the areas that are predominantly wetlands, consisting of cypress, not-planted pines, plantations. These are the areas that are the most sensitive and the timber harvesting stops with the approval of the zoning. That was not made clear in previous applications. In dark green, those are areas also that are going to be put into conservation easements. Those are what typically consist of planted pine, plantations, the long rows of pine trees that have been harvested for decades and decades, as you saw in those aerial photos. Those will transition into conservation easements when development occurs in the developable areas at an equal percentage. If twenty percent of the site comes in for development, at least twenty percent of those areas have to go into a conservation easement immediately, if not more. This is the existing zoning map today on the left. It represents a still county zoning and the proposed zoning map is on the right. And the only areas proposed for zoning tonight are in the crosshatched area, which represents the PD. A lot of those other areas are either conservation land use, which need to have conservation zoning placed on them, or they're north of that phase line, which was established in the comprehensive plan in two thousand nine to make sure development started on the south end where the utilities are and are working north in a progressive fashion. There has to be a certain amount of development occurring south of the phase line before anything could happen to the north. This is a cutout of the PD layout plan. There are four main areas, really three main areas because the utility district is about three and a half acres. There's a transmission line that runs through the property, but the density starts in the core. It's the area that's defined as red, the mixed-use central district. And within that, there's a core with higher densities. The mixed-use residential district is now yellow. That used to be all the single-family and residential low. Now it's mixed residential. All of those areas allow up to twenty units per acre in the proposal. Also, in the mixed residential district, and this is a result of discussions with plan board members at their deliberation, but the permitted uses in mixed residential are what's allowed in U four, in the city code, the transect for U four, and also the design standards for anything in that area above eight units per acre. And certainly, all the transect standards that are in the PD report apply to everything in red, the mixed-use central district. So as your staff has proposed to you and provided to you, this is a improved product from what you've seen before, project. This is a list of many of the improvements that are coming forward. These are requirements, not recommendations. These are things that we tried to summarize to you to list the significant improvements to the application and try to address the concerns that came to you before. They include things such as mixed use being allowed in all the development districts and getting rid of that low-density, single-family component, mixed-use requirements in the core, right along one twenty-one, urban densities in all those districts, ten units per acre required in the mixed-use core, a certain amount of residential minimum required in the mixed-use central, minimum amount of non-residential square footage to make sure there is a vibrant mix of uses and not just one type of project. Again, as I mentioned, the U four transect design standards apply now in the mixed residential area. That was something that we actually have added in since the plan board hearing to try to address the primary concern that was brought up at that meeting. Low-impact development standards are required for at least a quarter of all the stormwater generated on site. There's a whole host of things to do to meet LID standards. Those can be usage of permeable pavement, rain gardens, bioswells, cisterns, limitation of turf grass and fertilization. And I'd like to point out, too, one of the structural components here is that over forty percent of the uplands are proposed to be set aside from development and that goes towards the LID goal, along with over at least ninety percent of the floodplain area on the site being undisturbed from its functions. There's a perpetual affordable housing requirement in this project. There's a requirement now for installation of electric vehicle charging stations in community gardens and that the conservation management plan becomes effective with the commission approval of PD zoning. So there's an understanding of when it comes into effect and no uncertainty there. These petitions, in my professional opinion and your staff, indicate that we're consistent with your comprehensive plan, that there's significant improvements to the policy language that's in effect right now for this property in the comprehensive plan, significant improvements to the zoning proposal that does allow significant development on the property today, and that we're worked very hard with staff to address the concerns that we've heard from the plan board and commission in the past and we're trying to bring something forward that you'd be happy to approve. Again, your professional staff recommends approval and we would very respectfully ask for approval of these applications tonight. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and we'll all be here to answer questions for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Swager. Appreciate the presentation. And we will now move to the Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. Firstly, I want to state that this isn't really a decision between no development and some development. That decision was made back when it was first annexed into the city and then more so in two thousand nine when the land use was put onto it at PUD. The owner of the property have rights to develop because of that decision made back in two thousand nine. And they could sue us and win and get something on there. What was previously put on there, I don't think was a good development and I think what we can move forward to is a better development. That's really where we are, but we can't say no. That's not a possibility because of the decisions that were made back in two thousand nine and because of the state law, which mandates the rights that they have. I mean, our state has pretty strong development laws and they have that. Going to this development, it does protect or undevelop sixty-eight percent of the property. I don't know of another development in our community that has that high of protections. Going to, we also have, people are moving here, thousands of people are moving here every year. This is not going to develop overnight. This will be something that will develop over decades, but thousands of people are moving here every day and they need a place to live. Hurricanes are going to continue to destroy our coasts and those people are getting displaced. I mean, just right now, tens of thousands of people are displaced in southwest Florida. That will continue to happen. If that was going through Tampa, we probably would have had close to a hundred thousand people displaced if that hit in that intensity in that area. People will continue to move to the central portion of our state between Orlando and Lake City and we have to have places for them to live. These homes will get built. They either get built here, like it's built up in Alachua and High Springs, or out west in West Gainesville. All of them will produce way, way more car traffic because they all have to drive much further, really worse for the environment, more pollution from cars. There is no transit out there. This will have transit where transit will be mandated. When it meets to a certain point, it will be paid for by the developer for between three and five years. That's significant. It also has up to twenty units an acre where actually will, where transit can be sustainable and will actually work. Also, I think it has trails and bike infrastructure. It's close to the senior center, it's close to different parks in our community. Also, I believe that the, I mean, the rail line is currently owned by CSX. I don't see that as a continuing industrial rail line in the decades ahead. I believe that will most likely become a light rail line that will connect within the city and move out there. So I think that will be a future connection point. I mean, we have to be thinking about what do these, what do these places look like decades and forty years from now because that's probably, we have to be thinking that. Let's see. Let's see here. I have some changes I would like to propose to the commission that I think will make it a better, more sustainable, more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, and a safer place and overall a better development. Looking at kind of the first one would be on the land use side, is I think the mixed-use central district, I think at twenty units an acre, it's the same across the board right now. I don't think that makes sense. I think the more kind of core area of the development should have a higher density. That would make more sense. It would allow a transition. I think that should be sixty dwelling units per acre. That's the same as a kind of U six zoning. Secondly, I think we, there's already max heights in the property. I think we should just set max building heights and not have like stories in there. We just do the max height by feet. That's, I think, an easier way to do development and to kind of show what the actual building will look like. There's already max heights already in there, so we don't have to set new max heights. Going into the ordinance portion, sixteen units per acre.
Let's wait till we.
It's kind of connected. How can I?
Well, because they haven't done the presentation. So let's just stick with the land use first and then we'll do, we'll come back to the zoning.
Hey, everybody. Pardon me.
No. We've only done land use.
Okay. So I also believe there should be other multi-use trails and other things and bike infrastructure added as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am very interested in hearing from the public before we do too much, but y'all know where I'm headed with this. This is not going to surprise anybody on my part. This is far better than what we've seen before, absolutely. But better and acceptable are not the same thing to me. It is really well put together. I love the ideas here. It's all good, except for where it is. And you can't change the where it is part. A thing we haven't discussed is that part of where it is is adjacent to the drinking water source for two-hundred thousand people. And probably that would be fine. You know, there's a real good chance that nothing serious would happen and it would be okay. But that's quite a gamble. Nobody addressed that. We talked about transportation issues. It is great to think that at some point, when enough people live there, we'll stretch out RTS to serve it. But in the meantime, that's a two-lane state road that dumps onto an already pretty busy state highway and continues south if you stay on one twenty-one, on one of our busiest roads. I don't know if y'all have been on Thirty-Fourth Street north of University recently, but it's kind of busy. I mean, it's full. And there are not a lot of options there to make that different because that is already built out. Most of the people who live in this area are going to work where people work right now, at the University of Florida downtown in the urban core, right? So they're going to go on one twenty-one. They might get off on four forty-one and Sixth Street and come on down to this part of Gainesville, or they might go a little farther west to U four. It's a good chance they're going to try to drive down Thirty-Fourth Street down that two-lane. It's a good chance they're going to try to drive down Thirty-fourth Street down that two-lane the whole way. I will tell you, the folks in Northwood are not going to be real excited about sharing the road. They're already pretty upset about it. So I don't understand the transportation angle here. We talked a year or two ago, FDOT, the indication was that FDOT had no plans to do more with one twenty-one. You know, maybe add a turn lane here and there. That's not the answer. I missed the total number of units planned to be built here. Can somebody tell me the total possible number of units?
Eighteen thousand units.
Yeah, we can't have outbursts, please, but we can ask a member of our staff or the applicant to answer that question.
It's good stuff.
No, wait, we are, but we ask questions of our staff. So if we, if we could please not have outbursts, sir, I can't have, we've got to be civil in here, so no outbursts, but if we can't have a member of staff or the applicant answer that question, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Swiger.
Sure.
I don't think I have in my, I don't have that table in my presentation, but the two land use areas in the PUD they're developed will have a maximum density of twenty units per acre. The acreages associated with those two areas equate to
Six something?
Just under three hundred, just under four hundred acres.
Okay. So if it were entirely built out, about eight thousand units.
That's a hypothetical.
Yeah, and that's.
Yes, sir.
That certainly wouldn't be any time in the next, you know, five, ten years. Because there's not even, let's be clear, there's no, thank you, Mr. Swiger. There's no development plan for this, nobody's asking about that right now. This changes the, what we're talking about now is land use very specifically. Later we'll talk about zoning, which raises the value of the land, which is fine, but nobody's talking about actually building anything. This is all hypothetical. But if we're going to be hypothetical, let's say it's only five thousand units that get built, that's fifteen to twenty thousand people living where right now there are essentially no people. That's a big change. That instantly becomes one of the biggest mini cities in Alachua County where there's almost no infrastructure right now. These things concern me and they're things that I'm not sure are fixable because of where it is. It's really cool, I love that you want to put most of, or you're willing to put most of it in conservation, that's fantastic. But it doesn't change the things that continue to be a concern and continue to be wrong with having it work where it is. If this were further in town, yeah, that'd be awesome. If it were where infrastructure already exists, it'd be awesome. If it were not next to the well field, it would be awesome. But none of those things were the case. And it is, again, I want to say it's a big improvement. I appreciate all the effort that staff and the applicant and the applicant staff have gone into. You've made tremendous improvements. But it still doesn't get the job done. We know what's going to happen if and when this is built out. We know it's going to be an exceptionally difficult infrastructure lift. We know what's going to happen with traffic. We know, we don't know, we can guess that some bad things might happen with wastewater. They might not, all those things might work out, but some of them are not going to work out. And I can't, I can't pretend that those things are not real. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the public, looking forward to hearing more from my colleagues. But those are my concerns right off the bat and they're not a surprise to anybody, so thank you.
Mr. Santos.
And thank you to staff and the applicant for all the work that's been going towards us. I think when we sat down, I realized this has been going on almost the entirety of my lifespan at this rate, so I'm glad that we've gotten to a point that we have viable options that staff is, thinks is acceptable and good and is supporting that we move forward with it. I do want to ask, and I know Ms. Raznick was not expecting this today, but she's on deck. Or maybe Mr. Edelton can answer it, or Mr. Persons. But did GRU give any weigh-in given, given the easements that they have in the conservation areas that they have, were they ever involved in staff reporting or the assessment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my knowledge, no, but I'm not saying that's entirely true. So is Mr. Persons available?
Mr. Edelton, can you answer that question? I wouldn't expect our CFO to have that at the tip of her.
She's on deck.
Yes, at various stages throughout the review and writing any of the staff reports that have come along the way, GRU is included in those reviews.
Do they have any objections or concerns about water quality or safety?
None to my knowledge for the Murphy well field. That's largely hazardous materials that that governs and manages and there are none proposed to this point.
No, no loud, bright red objections and penoo all over the report?
None in any of the comments that I've seen.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
And thank you, Ms. Raznick, sorry. I'm going to start, I think, with the first proposal that staff gave and then I'll comment on Commissioner Santos' proposed amendments. When staff brought this forward and really first advised us of it, I thought it was good. I think it is, want a lot of conservation land that we get to just keep like that forever and it'll be pristine. But two, the sheer number of units and I've gotten a handful of emails and one said, there's no reason, there's no proof that we need all this housing. And then I just think of every single meeting and every email I get that says there is no housing for people below a certain financial threshold because you can outbid people, but if you don't have the money to outbid people, you're going to be homeless. Or eventually outbid down the ladder where a certain socioeconomic branch of people is just never going to be able to afford housing if we don't have more housing. So I like the idea. It is a lot of housing and the proposal of the affordable units at bare minimum. If we develop this out, we develop this out to the max, actually, we develop it out to the max, we get almost three hundred units that are perpetually forever affordable units between eighty and a hundred and twenty AMI. Almost ten times what we've been able to push forward in any one of the developments that come forward to us and give us ten percent. It's going to be in what we truly try to work for, a mixed income neighborhood if it is so many different types of opportunity. And I know folks say that there isn't much development out there, it's kind of a chicken/egg scenario. Why would FDOT amplify the road, make enhancements if there is nothing but a bunch of trees there? They're not going to do it because they have no rational reason to expand a road so people can drive by trees. If there are people there, if there are businesses in this mixed use space and commercial space, there will be people who go there. I live on the north side of town. If, I hate going down to Butler Plaza, I hate it. If there is something just north of me, I'm okay with that. That actually helps maybe clear up the traffic on Archer because that doesn't have to be the only main shopping space in the whole town. I think that it is one of the best and most good faith efforts that we've seen here in a while. So I appreciate that the applicant was really willing to work with staff and listen to our comments a year ago because we were, we were a little passionate when we gave those comments. So as to Commissioner Santos' proposal on the density, I would be okay with it purely because it leaves discretion still to any developer that comes forward. It does not mandate a minimum of sixty per acre. It says you may go up to that much. And if you look at, I was looking for so many charts of this or visual examples. If you look at what does one home per acre, one unit per acre versus ten versus twenty versus fifty, two hundred per acre, it really shows you the type of structures and housing developments that can go into that acre at that rate. The way that it is put now up to twenty units per acre, it wouldn't be anything more built out than the townhomes across the street. That's not a great use of space. Not saying you have to have larger buildings everywhere, but giving the opportunity to build out where it makes sense closer to commercial areas in this giant development at the end of the day gives more opportunity for people at different points in their lives and socioeconomic status at the moment. I know someone who's a young professional graduate does not need a single family home. They might want an apartment, but they want to live in this nicer, newer area. Somebody with two point five kids and a dog might want to go into a different space that isn't a nice apartment or a condo or a townhouse. So I think giving that opportunity to have a diversity of housing options up there will really, one, it will raise the number of affordable units that can go in. I think at that point you can have anywhere from five hundred to a thousand affordable units in the development and that is world-changing for our community to have five hundred to a thousand more affordable units that will be affordable as long as the, if you move to sixty, it can be. It is an option, so it could give you anywhere from five hundred to a thousand if that, the ceiling is raised to sixty as an option. That would be amazing. I mean, at this rate, we're getting almost three hundred, that's still really good. But I see that that potential for five hundred to a thousand and I think that would be incredible. That would change, that would change the town. And I think even with that added density then, it gives a better reason for FDOT to come in and enhance the road as far as safety, as far as lighting, and maybe fix the rest of Thirty-fourth because that one is, it is difficult, I admit that. So those are my comments for now until we get to zoning. But for now, I will agree to the up to as an option, not a minimum, sixty units per dwelling amendment that Commissioner Santos wants to put forward. Oh, and I guess I'm fine with the feet versus stories, but I could, I could do the or, lift feet or stories. I can't tell you how tall a story is anyway, depending on the building. But I can tell you feet, but it might be easier for folks to comprehend four stories versus, hey, there's a hundred feet allowed. I can't tell you what a hundred feet looks like either. But folks are more, more comfortable, you know, imagining a story than any number of feet. I'm okay with like an either/or situation, but otherwise I am in agreement with the changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has the potential to be a mini-city, but I'd like to hear more about the affordable housing. Would you share that with Mr. Swiger?
Glad to. Bear with me one moment and I'll open that section of the report. Lot of paper. Yeah. In the PD report, there's a section four point four point two for affordable housing. This is also in the comprehensive plan and this affordable housing requirement has been in the comprehensive plan since the two thousand nine adoption. It requires five, at least five percent of the total amount of units developed to be affordable. The section of the code indicates that five percent of the residential units in the PD shall be perpetually affordable for households earning eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of the median income of the Latcher County. And the construction of affordable units must be concurrent with market rate housing unit construction at a minimum. After three hundred units are constructed, one affordable unit at a minimum must be constructed for every twenty units that are constructed on site. There also is language in here regarding binding agreements, which is sort of becoming the standard practice for some PD projects that you've had come before you to make sure that everything is put into place for screening and selection of appropriate candidates for the affordable housing units, so that is all part of the requirement as well. My observation about this discussion of density, it's an interesting one. If you look at the project, it's a sliding scale. The more units we build, the more affordable housing units we're going to be able to provide as well. And so when you lower the density, there's less. So it is related in that regard. And so I did want to make that point, just listening to the discussion. Does that provide enough information to you at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Back to Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And to the, talking about five thousand units, eight thousand units, that is a lot of units. But it's also a ton of land, it's seventeen hundred acres. And when we talk about if we took that seventeen hundred acres and put it inside and it was all developed to this, these five thousand units, it's only two point eight two units per acre. That's not a very dense area when you're talking about it. If it was eight thousand, it'd be four point five units per acre. A low-density, single-family neighborhood is, if you're thinking about that land, if it was all developed into that. So, and that's how we have to kind of think about it because it is one big chunk of land, but only a very small portion of it is developed and that portion of land is being done at a higher density. But when, if that was all city, like the rest of our city, it would only be two point eight two units per acre or eight thousand, four point eight units an acre. I'd like to put a motion on the floor if you want to speak first or go around.
I'd like to hear from the public first and then I'll go back to you for a motion. But let's go back to Commissioner Ward again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I was going to talk about briefly the affordable housing component. So that, Mr. Edelton, the five percent at eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI, that's through our comp plan, right? That's our policy. Yeah? Okay, thank you. We're good there. So a thing that would have been a real movement in favor of the applicant, I would think, would have been to go above and beyond the absolute minimum requirement that we put out there. So, and I want you all to know, I really do appreciate the work. I have not, I wish that this were somewhere where it made more sense. Five percent. We've argued up here about ten percent being not nearly enough with other applicants. And with those folks that we argued about ten percent, we were talking about more like fifty percent AMI as opposed to eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So to call this affordable is maybe a bit of a stretch at eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Certainly it's not lower income at all. And it's only five percent. While y'all are, I mean, I say y'all because I, many of the things about this make it difficult for me. But if you're going to bargain on something, bargain for a higher percentage. I mean, get something out of it. I love the conservation, that's great, but we talk a lot about affordable housing, about attainable housing. Let's ask about that instead of, you know, instead of just exactly what's in our comp plan. Thank you.
Commissioner Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't think we have a mandated like five percent. Is that in our comp plan? I think that's.
I think that's...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. There is no requirement in the city code or comp plan for affordable housing of any sort right now. There is a policy for this property, um, that has been approved for five percent in, in perpetuity. And I did want to also mention that this is a first, this is five percent of a giant project, and you've approved projects at ten percent of one apartment building. So just, that was my observation as well about the scale. Thank you.
Just maybe a little bit of clarity for, this is why I paused, for it is in our comp plan that refers specifically to this property, but does not apply over properties across the city.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we'll, uh, now open it up for members of the public that wish to share their thoughts with us. Um, if you have not been here before, our procedure is that the clerk will call your name. Um, you will, uh, have three minutes, up to three minutes, to share your thoughts with us. Uh, when your time starts, you'll see a little green light come on, that little black box right there on the lectern. Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, always there at the ready. Um, when you have one minute left, a little yellow light will come on, uh, and then when your time has expired, the red light will come on, and I'll ask, then I'll ask the clerk to call the next, uh, neighbor up here to, um, share their thoughts with us, okay? Um, and I believe the clerk will just be calling people in the order in which she received the request to speak. So, uh, with that, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, our first speaker is Robert Knight, followed by Tim Martin.
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, uh, thank you for letting me be here tonight to speak. Um, my name's Bob Knight. I'm the, um, director of the Howard T. Odom Florida Springs Institute in High Springs. I'm an environmental scientist, uh, has been working in Florida for forty years. Uh, I've, uh, reviewed development plans like this before many times and, uh, spent most of my time trying to protect the environment through good projects like the Sweetwater Branch Wetlands that I helped design. Um, I, I think there's one aspect of this project that received no consideration, uh, that is a macroscopic aspect that you probably don't normally think about when you provide, um, permission to developers to add additional people to the city of Gainesville. And that is the groundwater aspect, and that's what I want to just briefly talk about. And I'm not talking about the water quality aspect of the groundwater. This is a relatively protected area where the groundwater quality is protected because of the Hawthorne Formation. That's what makes this a wetland area instead of a karst area like you have west of town. Um, but I am here to request that you deny this, uh, these changes and keep development at the lowest density you possibly can on this land. Um, the, the project is, and the city of Gainesville is completely within the spring shed of the Santa Fe River Springs. There are about fifty springs on the Santa Fe River that derive recharge from the land that includes Gainesville. There's already a, uh, six hundred square mile captures on around the GRU well field that prohibits water from ever making it to those springs that used to get there. And it's somewhere in a range of ten to twenty million gallons a day of spring flow that's been taken away already just by the known wells in Gainesville, and that doesn't even count all the private wells that have been put in. So this is in the spring shed, and, and so if you have responsibility to the people of Gainesville, that means you have responsibility to their enjoyment and, and pleasure and value of living in Latchua County, or within the Santa Fe River, you know, is the border of the county. And, uh, these springs, many of the springs are actually in Latchua County. Um, as a, a direct effect of the, of the pumping of GRU and other utilities and, um, and private organizations, that's the flow in the Santa Fe River from the springs is already down over twenty percent. In other words, twenty percent of the spring flow that used to be in the Santa Fe River is gone, and that has resulted in Brown Springs. That's why Poe Springs is no longer a blue spring. That's why Hornsby Spring is no longer a crystal-clear spring, as we say in our Visit Gainesville advertisements every day on NPR. They're not because we're pumping too much groundwater.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Thanks for, uh, for sharing your comments and being here. Madam Clerk?
Uh, can I make one more comment?
I'm afraid I got to treat everybody the same, uh, just to be fair. Okay, well, this is, this is one more nail in the coffin of the Springs. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Tim Martin, followed by Erin Adams.
Before I begin as a procedural question, uh, there's two amendments here. Should we not be allowed five minutes?
No, you get three, everyone will get three minutes. There's a separate item that's a zoning issue that we'll take comment on again if you so choose.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. My name is Tim Martin. I'm here representing the, uh, Swanee St. John's group of the Sierra Club, and we respectfully submit our strong opposition to this plan. Uh, the Sierra Club has a longstanding commitment to smart growth principles and promoting infill development. The club also supports the creation of more housing with an emphasis on affordable housing. From our national policy guidelines, I quote, "The choice between sprawl and smart growth is one of the most powerful levers Americans can use to reduce greenhouse gases, air and water pollution, conserve habitat, and improve the health of our neighborhoods," end quote. This proposed development incorporates several features that in other contexts, as Commissioner Ward suggested, would be okay, but in no way are these appropriate in the current context, and here's why. One, as we have said, the site directly abuts to high-value conservation easement that, uh, houses, uh, category one wetlands serving as headwaters for three creeks. Uh, per the applicant-owned wildlife surveys, the proposed development location actually serves as habitat for numerous threatened and iconic species of flora and fauna. Adding high-density development is anathema to keeping this area unpolluted, wildlife population stable, and water quality high. Number two, the site is on the ex-urban fringe of the city, distant from its urban core, bordering both preservation and agriculture-designated lands on most of its borders. This is green fill development, not infill, and modifying our comp plans accommodated to simply bad growth management. I think the city planner said it best, when you drive here, you drive north out of town to get here. It's not part of town, it's not in the urban core. Three, current transportation infrastructure, some of you addressed this already, it's not equipped to handle this influx. I live in this area. There's only one intersection, as you noted, and at rush hour, it gets backed up already without this additional development. Um, and also the CSX line, okay, maybe there's a chance they might at some point FDOT come in and, and do the right thing there, but we can't guarantee that. Um, it runs just a few feet away, and that could limit us from expanding that intersection. Number four, the parcels in question are located in FEMA Flood Zone A and are susceptible to flooding. So, uh, we heard from a few people speaking at the plan board meeting, anecdotally talking about, uh, flood, flooding that's happened in the past. With the recent example of Hurricane Ian, we should see that as a wake-up call. Inland communities across the state were inundated with, with floodwaters. Um, and if this is a development surrounded by, uh, swamps, uh, it's, it's highly possible this can happen here, too. Five, the site is not connected to any existing water utility infrastructure. Uh, Dr. Knight has talked a little bit about that. Six, the site is not serviced by existing public transit links. We're city staff only recommending, as far as my, my reading of the, the ordinance is that, or the, the, the staff report, is that it may require the applicant to take action to implement bus service and a multi-use recreation sa, uh, trail if conditions make that possible. I urge you to read that and, and make sure that, that is where we want it. Seven, I think the, the affordable housing, uh, comments that, uh, Commissioner stated are way overstated. Again, five percent is the bare minimum, it's not enough. Um, this would be our number one talking point normally, but this is just a bad, inappropriate, um, uh, location. Now, I have more comments to make, but I'm running out of time. The one thing I want to close with is that, you know, again, very little time, very little community outreach here. Uh, you know, we live in this neighborhood, there was a few signs put up on the side of road three days before this meeting. It's very hard to organize, we all work.
Thank you, thank you.
Couldn't even get our letter out to you via email today, so it'd be nice if we had some more time for that.
Thank you, very much.
Erin Adams? Hi, I thought it was just a comment card.
Okay. Ben Adams, saying Gainesville?
Hello, y'all. Uh, sorry about the outburst, I didn't mean to, I was raised better than that. Um, I count seventeen emergency vehicles coming from other counties on two thirty-one, and that's the span of five days. So there's that aspect. Um, the last meeting, they mentioned something about Cy Vance, um, in an industrial area that would be zoned. Um, I don't know if any of you remember the chlorine cloud that escaped from Cy Vance in late, um, eighties? What else I got here? Um, oh, there's little green dots on the map, that's when it's not raining. The whole thing's green when it rains. It's, it's, it's a swamp out there. Um, in that area, there's noises from the power plant that no one's discussed. You hear them at night when a cold front goes through. Believe me, I know. The owls are still louder, though. What the one developer said, which my hat goes off to you, I, I know there's, you can't fight development, I mean, we all got to live somewhere. It does take fourteen minutes to get from out there into town, but that's between seven thirty and five. Seven thirty at night, five in the morning. Uh, I think Exec Tech is leasing some property to, um, Amazon, so that's going to clog that up more. The only way out of there is to go around either two twenty-five, when the rubber road was, they closed it to redo the intersection there. Um, you could either go through Hague, which is almost Latchua, or all the way around two twenty-five. Again, you got emergency vehicles coming through there. Um, what else we got? I don't like the chemical thing that, next to our drinking water. That doesn't make sense. Yep, that's about it. Um, I was passed the other day, and the bumper sticker that got stuck in front of me was, uh, if, if you're going to ride my butt, at least pull my hair. So at that intersection, there's going to be a lot of hair pulling one day because there's going to be thousands of people. It, it's already clogged there, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to be sure Jane did not want to speak. I do have written comment.
But, um...
Yep.
Um, it just seems to me that this is a, a really good example of not sustainable development, not good leadership if you're trying to develop infill and compact development, sustainable. Um, this is a bad example of sprawl, it would seem to me, and most importantly, you're building on wetlands. Wetlands are our lungs and wetlands are everything. They, they keep us from flooding. I know a lot about flooding. I've been flooded out, and I've been here for four decades, and I'm seeing the difference as we build in flood zones. This is preposterous. I'm sorry, you need to do better. These people who prospectively will live in this area, they will be fighting floods forever if you do this. There's no way around it. Uh, Hurricane Harvey in Texas, we're not protected because we're inland. Donna, Hurricane Donna showed Gainesville how badly Gainesville can flood. You're, we've got to do better. This is not sustainable.
Michael Stevens, followed by Darla Walker.
Thank you, Harvey Ward, for speaking some truth. Um, my name's Michael Stevens. I formerly worked with the FWC as a, a restoration ecologist, botanist, for a number of years, and I have a degree in environmental engineering and a, a master's in ecological engineering from University of Florida here. So I'm well-versed working as a scientist and an engineer on these things. First of all, I want to say you build up, not out, when you're thinking, uh, for the people. There's plenty of places in the city that we should be building up and not out. So when you build, you're talking sustainability, you talk, and you're saying, oh, you're going to conserve so much of this land, so much is already in wetlands that they can't build over in the first place, and they're on the extreme, so that's the only areas they can get to. And they talk about a, uh, being more sustainable on their conservation management plan. Are they familiar with, uh, fire ecology and the importance of conservation and, and fire in the management plan? Are you going to be burning like you should be every one to three years? We're on a fire capital of, of pretty much the world. Should be having burns. If we're going to conserve nature, we need to be thinking about that. I also want to mention that there's examples out there. City of Asheville owns twenty-two thousand acre watershed protection for their wellfield, for the city of Asheville. What are we doing? We're going to build high-intensity houses right over the, uh, over that, um, the, uh, groundwater travel time, it's on the map and everything like that, so we're right next to the wellfield. On top of the water quality issues and the flooding issues and the congestion issues, if, and you're so spot-on with, if you drive on Thirty-Fourth Street now, it's deadlock, and you're going to add twenty thousand people, you can't expand on that. It's just going to be a deadlock, and you got emergency vehicles that you're talking about? These, these are just not adding up to me at all, and this is straight-up sprawl. What you need to do is minimize, this just should not be going on, on wetlands. These are music flatwoods, and there are many endangered species such as gopher tortoise, and they've noted bear and such out there. The, those upland habitats are going away, and this is just completely unreasonable. And I'm, I'm sorry if you're not from here and you don't know about fire ecology, you don't know about people living up in Brooker that need to get to the Gainesville Hospital, and they're frigging stuck out there on the road in traffic. So think about the well-being of the people that are out in the country, that moved out to country. I've been out there for over twenty years being a small-scale, uh, homesteader, and, uh, you know, we moved out there and trying to be a good steward of the land, and this is the responsibility of you guys to, to keep. It's a game with phosphate mining, too. Oh, we're going to develop twenty thousand acres of mining, and you put it and you submit, but they, what they really want is to develop seven thousand acres. So they say, okay, well, we'll, we'll, it's this game, just like haggling, and that's what is happening to, uh, right now here, is what I feel. Oh, we're, we're doing such a great deal on giving you, uh, forty percent, uh, or s, uh, whatever upland habitat. The wetland parts are already protected.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Darla Walker, followed by T. Spurling Wood.
Um, hello, everybody. My name is Darla Walker. I'm Michael's neighbor. Actually, I live up in Brooker, just south of the Santa Fe River, so I am still in Latchua County, and my property taxes prove that. Um, I live up near the Acorn Clinic, if y'all are familiar with that. Um, my concern with this development plan, and I have the utmost empathy for people who need affordable housing, I think that is an extremely important issue, but unfortunately, that is a separate issue from what is ecologically most important for our county. Um, with the development, I, I found the appeal to authority humorous when they talked about, um, community gardens. Bro, where's the, where's the schools? The churches, the community centers? Oh, yeah, we already have a senior center, but with that many residents living up there, we need a true community center, an after-school center, someplace for people to gather, to meet, and to vote. And how is this going to affect the voting districts of our area? Okay, um, that's really all I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
T. Spurling Wood, followed by Deborah Stuckey.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Can I do something on the overhead?
Sure, yeah, just, uh, place it down there, then they'll get it going. Right, right there.
Well, I have like eight different pages I want to show. So this is where we're talking about, and, um, here's GRU Deer Haven biomass. Here's the wellfields right here. Here's Murfree. Okay? Here's Rocky Creek. Here's information about the flood zones. We have the red flood zone A, which they're talking about, which is one percent annual chance of flood hazard. Here's Latchua County. The whole county, so the gray is where it's not flooding a lot. Here is the area we're talking about. We talk about the wetlands. This is all the time, all in here. I, I want everybody to see how much, when, when they're talking about, they're saving sixty-eight percent. It's already wetland underwater, so they're not giving away anything extra. They're probably taking away as they dry some of it, just for information. This is in the morning now, since they put in. This is, the red light here is Amazon red light, we call it now. It used to be the UPS red light, but they used to roll out at ten. Now we got the Amazon red light. Now we're backed up past Hidden Lake right now, in the mornings, just to even get down this road at this time. If anything happens, we can't get anywhere, just so everybody knows. And it's sixty-five miles an hour, down one twenty-one. For anybody that tries to pull out on there, it's almost a catastrophe every morning for school buses coming around, everything. The other thing we have here is this is the city of Gainesville facilities. We have no fire hydrants, we have no fire station, we have no police anywhere out here, so the... So the, the cost of homeowners insurance is through the roof because we don't have any fire infrastructure out there right now. We all pay it to cover, but it is a lot of money. The other thing is, they were talking with the map, when this road is closed, this is how we have to go around. We have to, when this is closed here, we have to go up here, around here, or over to Hague. They already mentioned that. But the other thing, right now, everybody doesn't know. My kids, we live on one twenty-one here in Gainesville, ten minutes out. My kids go to, went to school in Erby, in Alachua. They went Erby, Mabane, Alachua, and Santa Fe High School. They did not do a lot of curricular activities because it was an hour ride home, back and forth. So we'll have to do something. If we have eight to ten thousand people, where are their children gonna go to school? We're already packed in the schools there. So that's gonna have to be rezoning, new school, new infrastructure there. So I just wanted to put those things out, not one way or another. But we really need to address a lot of things if we're gonna pack, like they said.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurling Wood.
To see the eighteen thousand in there.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Deborah Stuckey. Stuckey apologies, followed by Gary Gordon.
I'm just gonna whiz through my comments. Uh, my name is Deborah Stuckey. I live in the area. Um, I reside between, um, State Road one twenty-one and County Road two thirty-one. Um, it was on that little map there. Um, I have an issue that the meeting was not announced. A lot of my neighbors are homebound and would not have known about this unless they received a notification by mail. Um, the rezoning of that proposed development is totally out of character with the historical and rural nature of northern Alachua County. Writing the SR one twenty-one corridor gives a unique example of the remaining old Florida. At least, that's what I've always thought. Location proposed for this development district is in complete opposition to sustainable and typical use developments commonly built in urban centers and where there are connections to the community. The proposal fits the definition of sprawl by being an automobile-dependent development requirement requiring the extension of public facilities and services and failing to provide an environment that blends in with the rural area. There is no demonstration of need. There have been no studies done to justify the benefits to the city with the addition of thousands of commuters on a one, on a two-lane road in Alachua County. How will road widening be addressed to, to, um, address the safety of, um, bike paths and this bus transit? Um, Florida already is the number one in bicycle and pedestrian fatalities. Location is between thirty to forty-five minutes to I seventy-five in any direction, as well as downtown Gainesville. It took me thirty-five minutes to get here in five o'clock traffic. Traffic in this area is severely impacted in both directions during peak hours due to the railroad track and Thirty-Fourth Street toward the university. Amazon and UPS have distribution warehouses, as you've heard. Development does not promote walkable and connected communities. A multimodal transportation system that includes pedestrians, bicycles, and transit will require extensive modification to existing infrastructure on the property that is not owned by the developer. No existing regional transit system, um, exist. It's very difficult to get a taxi or an Uber. And I kinda think it's insane to increase, uh, units just so you can meet a transportation criteria. Um, lack of connective connectivity to the community, community and reliance on motor vehicles with longer commutes is not affordable. Apartments and townhomes are generally starter homes for younger families, and high turnover leads to transient neighborhoods. There are a few stores and restaurants in the vicinity, and most people travel to I seventy-five and beyond to go to the major store chains. Oops, implementing amenities like community gardens, et cetera...
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, is usually not incorporated into construction plans.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Gordon, followed by Stacy Waldrop, or Waldorf.
Good evening, Commissioners, Gary Gordon. Uh, first I wanna thank Commissioner Ward for his remarks on this. Uh, I also wanna thank everybody in the public who has spoken. They made most of the points I was gonna make. Um, not all of them, however. Uh, I guess I missed the headline in news story that said that everybody who was flooded out on the east and west coast because of Ian was gonna move to Gainesville. I guess I missed the story that said that everybody in South Florida who's worried about climate change is gonna move to Gainesville. I guess I missed the decision by the city commission that everybody who wants to move to Gainesville should move to Gainesville because there's always room. That's the message you're sending, the majority of you. And I don't think there's general agreement among the public that that's the message that we wanna send. The idea that Gainesville has the capacity to absorb everybody, whether they are a refugee from a hurricane, or a refugee from someplace else, or they just wanna move here. Refugee from climate change, they just wanna move here. The idea that an unlimited number of people can is preposterous for many of the reasons that have already been cited. Now, the fascinating thing to me is, I think Desmond's gonna vote against this. I think Harvey's gonna vote against it. I think Cynthia is. But where's David gonna go? Because David is a build, build, build guy, but he also got the Sierra Club endorsement. And the Sierra Club endorsement doesn't want this. So ma'am, Commissioner Ariola, the eyes are on you as to whether or not this is gonna go four-three one way or four-three another way. And you're gonna have to do some pretty cool tap dancing if you wanna override the Sierra Club, which you praised during the entire campaign, in order to go with this cockeyed plan that will clearly degrade the environment. If you really believe in environmental protection, which I know that three of you don't, then you need to oppose this. And this needs to go down four to three. And that's what I'm asking to happen. Please, some wisdom for a change. Thank you.
Stacy, followed by Terry Hardwick.
Stacy Waldrop? Okay. Um, so, thank you for all the highly educated people that have come before me to explain what I can't do. Because they, uh, made their great points. Uh, I wanted to share that I speak to people literally all day, every day. And there's two things that Gainesvillians, newer Gainesvillians and older Gainesvillians hate about Gainesville. One is GRU, and the other is growth. The, the fast growth that I'm talking about, not regular growth. I mean, it's just been going very fast. Two things they love is the small-town feel and the green spaces. And we have to have a green, green buffer. Um, my son and I, we save turtles probably once a month, help them across the street. Uh, I don't know, there's eagles, there's coyotes, there's so many different. And, oh, I'm talking a bald eagle I saw the other day. I don't know where he's nesting, but it's gotta be close. And I think those are protected. But these are wetlands, and the maps do not show. You can't map and say, oh, this is a wetland, this is not. Because I'm telling you, I'm underwater, literally half of my property is underwater for three months, uh, out of the year. We don't care because we love it out there. There's literally been fish in my yard, which sustains the gray heron that we get to, to see. And I feel very blessed to be out there. But these are wetlands, and there are so much, once you destroy that, there's no coming back from that. Um, we do need that water filtration that goes into the springs. Um, I have pictures of my yard, I could show you. But we literally have had fish. And with all the earnestness, I ask you, and I hope that you hear the words environmentally sensitive. Because there's no replacing this. And, um, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I don't know, um, about these other people. But I know that when I get flooded out, I'm going to be coming and saying, hey, we told you. We tried to show you that these map lines on these papers don't make sense when you cannot go out there and visually stomp around with your mud boots on. I mean, and the traffic issues are just as described previously. And, um, at any rate, I ask with all the earnestness of my command to please vote this down. Because this is not the area. This is wetlands, and they should be protected. And Ian did show us that we have to start thinking better for our environment.
Thank you.
Terry Hardwick, followed by Alan John, or John Allen.
Hi, thank you for listening. My name is Terry Hardwick, and most of you, I hope, received my email today. And I'll just, I'm just piggybacking on what a lot of people have said. Unless you know the community, you'll know that it's, it's, all we have out there is beautiful. My house actually sits on one twenty-one, so my front yard will have all these homes. And I moved out there for a reason, for peace and quintility and think, the wildlife is amazing. The bald eagle that she spoke of is in my yard. He has a home there. And a lot of other things. We have gophers, I have deer that I watch, wild turkeys. And not just the, not just the area and ecosystem, but what about, what are you gonna do about schools? Every school in this county has at least five portables on their property, at least. That's, you're, I mean, I didn't know, I don't know how many houses this equals up to be because there's a lot of people that's done a lot more research than I have. But it's, I just don't know where these kids are gonna go to school. What are you doing to our wetlands? I mean, how are you gonna get there to build on these places? You have to go through the wetland to get there, unless you bring the houses in through helicopter. I don't know, but this is, it's wonderful land out there. It, it is wet, very wet. And, um, I have went through several pair of rain boots. But it's beautiful, and it's, please don't destroy our land. I mean, that's, it, it just doesn't make sense. It's, it's home for a lot of wildlife. And not to mention the wetlands are protected. So I'm very unsure of how y'all can even consider this. But anyway, um, but thank you for your time, and you have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Alan John, followed by Dave Wilson.
Commissioners, sixty-nine-year, city of Gainesville, Alachua County resident. I grew up in the Duck Pond area. Not houses from you, Miss Chestnut. I watched Gainesville just turn into what we've got now. Tireing buildings that, I, I pedaled a bicycle over square inches. And even rode bicycles out in the Nunez Lake for it. After I got a belly full of the, 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 all the Gainesville hype, I moved in the country thinking this is my last move after purchasing four or five houses in Gainesville. Everything's expensive here in the county. Out there's beautiful. Seed nineteen-twenty deer every evening going home at night, you see them. The next day you come back and you see them dead on the side of the road. Or their little ones are looking for their mothers dead on the side of the road. I walk regularly out there in the woods. Arrowheads looking for this, that, and the other. And I've even found, and I wore it tonight, just in case any of you ever seen one of these, the shark steve out there in the creek, in the woods. Imagine that. It's wet, but I walk in rubber boots. I've walked out there daily looking at stuff. There's no place, bring your boots with me, I'll take you on a tour. There's no place you can't walk. You can't walk in the culvert, the ditch, to look at the little red sign or purple sign or yellow signs that they've been put out for us to take notice to. Because we don't know those signs are there. Most people are either waiting in traffic or nothing. Look at the little signs that indicate different days of the meetings or different things being built here or put there or whatnot. But I, the, the rest does need to be informed. If everyone out there was informed, uh, I'm sure you wouldn't have enough chairs in you. You'd have to build another building to house the people that come. Because there's a lot of people out there go on this hustle bustle of Gainesville. I would really wish y'all would take in consideration, uh, at, come out there and visit me. I'll take you on a tour, like I said. But bring your rubber boots. I walk out there with my dog and a, and a stick. I, I see more animals than you can, than you can imagine. Uh, it's beautiful out there. Uh, there, there is not ever, hardly ever a time, and I can't walk somewhere on my property, which is adjacent to, and the Monioka area, which is absolutely gorgeous out there. Uh, the Robinson Ranch, there is twelve hundred acres. We got about eleven or twenty cow over there. They walk in water all the time because there's no place that's not wet. All, all drains into the different creeks, Rocky Creek, the, uh, little Monioka Creek. Uh, and several others, I don't know the names of. Uh, all that's wet, all, all the sweat. The hunters out there don't have to go far to hunt because of deer coming out of the woods because there's so much water. And, and I'm opposed to that, though. I, you know, I, I don't believe in that. But, uh, I really wish y'all would take in consideration. Again, contact me, I'll take you with a tour. I'll take you to a forward-drive truck, anywhere you wanna go back there, bring your rubber boots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dave Wilson, followed by Michelle Rutledge. You don't wanna speak?
Hello, I'm Dave Wilson. I've been a resident of Gainesville for fifty years. And I have really enjoyed the rivers, uh, the Santa Fe and Itchitackney rivers. I wanna begin by thanking Commissioner Ward for his excellent statement that put the issue right there on the plate. Um, I also would like to comment that no one has mentioned staff, or the applicant, or whoever, that the vote at the Plan Board meeting was three to one against all three of these, um, uh, changes. And, um, there was a lot of discussion. And I think that's an important vote. It's, it seems to be, have been dismissed. The other thing is, this Plum Creek thing has been around for a decade. And I was involved with Sierra Club ten years ago. We battled for five years at least to stop the Plum Creek development east of, on the eastern edge of, uh, Alachua County. And there the complaint was thirty to fifty thousand people in a community were gonna be moved into that area, which was all wetlands. What were the issues then? It was sprawl, and it was ditch and drain. And it was the impact to outstanding Florida water, in particular, La Clusa Lake. La Clusa Creek, um, drains directly from where they wanted to build their mini-city into La Clusa Lake. And there's, the idea is no degradation. So now, the degradation of the water is not the issue, but the amount. So I think the sprawl and the, uh, ditch and drain issues are right here in front of us. The neighbors have been talking about how, how the water right now is deep. Um, and that was the issue before, and why the county commission turned it down, was because you could go out Hawthorne Road, get out of your car, look back in the woods, and it was glistened with water, even when it hadn't been raining much. So ditch and draining is coming. The traffic issue, if you drive back from High Springs in the afternoon, you already have, see the traffic jam going back the other way towards, um, towards High Springs. They're gonna have to, you're gonna, well, someone's gonna have to four-lane, um, one twenty-one. It's coming. Because the traffic jam already at the intersection of one twenty-one and four forty-one is intolerable. And I think the photograph that the neighbor back here indicated is, uh, just what's to come. And so there'll be a lot of pressure to, uh, four-lane that road, plus the infrastructure, houses, schools, churches. But anyway, thank you very much. Please vote against this.
Thank you.
Robert Davis.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, uh, speak to you and express my concerns. Uh, I was at the Planning Board meeting last week. And of course, your recommendation was to turn it down. Thing that upsets me, they told us that they would let us know when this meeting is. And it did not happen. The postings was maybe thirty-four days. It was definitely less than a week. And I appreciate all the input from, from people here that all live out here. They've expressed their concerns about the traffic. One of the big ones, the, the, uh, water management. And I was at, I think I've been at all of them, but I was at the two thousand nineteen meeting. Is that correct? I think it was. And this, your group, our commissioners, ended that by telling this group, these issues that everybody's already expressed, come back when you have a way to address these, a recommendation to address these. I have not heard one recommendation to address these issues. Same issues as here was back then, and nothing's changed, nothing's changed. I have lived in this area, you might have seen on, on their maps, the 121 development. There's a group of us lives in the, basically in, almost in the middle of this. And I would recommend that we get a, a better layout of what's gonna happen. And the reason I say that is when I look at the map, I can relate to this spot and that spot. One map tells me that the development is gonna be in conservation area that's adjacent to my place. The next slide tells me it's gonna be developed in that same, same place, so to me, it's a little too general. You would like, I think if you was far enough along here, you could lay out where it's gonna be and what it's gonna be in, and they shouldn't contradict one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us, I do appreciate that. We'll go back to the commission. Um, since I reserved my thoughts earlier on to wait for folks from the public, I'll go ahead and share them now. First thing, I wanna go back to, um, the beginning. I, I feel like that's always a good place to start. And so, the, the, the primary reason we're here is that we're legally obligated to, uh, zone this property. We don't have the option to do nothing. And so, uh, we, we then need to ask ourselves, alright, what is the appropriate zoning that will achieve the basic goals that we have as a city that are laid out in our comprehensive plan, that address environmental issues, transportation issues, housing issues, and all the other plethora of issues that we are obligated to, to, uh, you know, consider when we're, when we're considering zoning. So, the original proposal by the applicant was inadequate. It was sprawl. It, they were, uh, large lots with single homes that were going to, um, add little value, and, and for that reason, this commission rejected it and asked them to go back and work with our staff to bring us back something more appropriate. So that's where we find ourselves today. The fact that more than two-thirds of this property is being set in conservation, and I wanted to ask one quick question. Has it been determined that, that the, this development will be, um, on GRU services? Water, wastewater, and electric? Okay, so I, I didn't wanna address that because, uh, A, that is a much better environmental situation than having them on septic, and the water withdrawals are covered by our consumptive use permit that have already, that are, that are already existing, um, uh, for GRU. In other words, if those houses were to be built anywhere else in Gainesville, that would be the same consumptive use permit. It's not additional withdrawals, it's something that we're already, um, that we're already, uh, that we've already committed to uh, through our, uh, GRU consumptive use permit, and I think that goes through, um, it's an, it's at least another ten years, I forget the, the termination date. Mr. Persons?
I just wanted to add that because of the length of this project being essentially sort of on the books and slated for development for, for over the past decade, GRU has worked this property into its water supply planning. So it's, it's always been assumed that this is going to be developed at some point, and so it's, it's actually in GRU's water supply.
Yeah, thank you for that, that, that additional context. And so, um, I, I just wanted to, you know, frame that, that, that because this development will be, first of all, it's in the city. Um, it's bordered on both sides basically by industrial property, and then on the other side of 441 by large commercial, large, uh, public services. You've got, uh, a park, you've got a senior sitter, you've got the, um, farmer's market and, and, uh, and, uh, and a rescue station. But what, what we asked to bring back was something that was going to be, um, more compact and more likely to be served by transit options. The, the previous iteration would absolutely be car-dependent. There would have been no option for transit out there. This iteration makes it much more likely that it will be served by transit, because you're gonna have much more compact development, and it's gonna be of the density that will allow for that type of transit, uh, to, to occur. And, and we've actually seen that, um, in the west of, of the unincorporated county, when they've built their newer, uh, transit-oriented development, uh, you do see transit serving those newer denser developments. I, I, I think Commissioner Santos started off by saying doing nothing was not an option. It's not, it's not, it's simply not, we, we have a legal obligation to, tonight, unless we wanna go through litigation, um, and, and then lose, because we do have this responsibility to, to zone the property, that this get, this helps us achieve many more of our goals than the previous plan or any future plan that I can imagine. We, we now have a, a affordable housing element in perpetuity that did not exist before. We now have a permanent, uh, a permanent conservation management plan that we did not have before. We, we have the access to city services, uh, that will protect our water supply and that will ensure that folks aren't withdrawing, uh, from, from well sources that are unaccounted for uh, and, and, and potentially damaging. You know, this, um, all of that traffic that people talk about today is because of the sprawl that has already happened in High Springs, in Alachua, north. It's that, that, that sprawl has created all of that traffic coming in, um, from, uh, you know, the, the sort of, uh, Alachua, High Springs, and, and, uh, over to the other, uh, Newberry corridors. I also, I understand the sort of natural fear of immediately imagining eighteen thousand homes being built tomorrow. Those will not be built in my lifetime. I mean, there, there is just simply, um, not an economic scenario that would allow that to happen. It will be slowly built out over time. The, you know, I think, um, the, the area right adjacent to 121 will be, uh, the most likely to be developed first. And then, what we see in every development, um, anywhere, uh, is that it gets built in small phases, and once one phase is done, and, and folks move in, then it moves on to the next phase. And so this will be a gradual, um, sort of increase into the northern, uh, sort of boundary of our city, that is adjacent to, to city services that already exist, uh, and, um, is, is absolutely a better alternative than all of those folks. If that's the new U.S. president, I wanna talk to him, but, but I can wait till tomorrow. So, um, you know, I, 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 I understand the, the sentiment and the ethos that, that, um, folks would like to just keep it the way it is and, and not allow anything, that's not one of our options. And, and in addition, if we don't allow folks to live in Gainesville, they're gonna live somewhere else. And, and I, I have to disagree, uh, with my neighbor that I do wanna be a welcoming city. I think that anybody that does want to move to Gainesville should be welcomed and should be encouraged, that the more folks and the more diverse folks we have, the better off we are. We didn't, um, you know, sort of throw up the gate and, and throw away the key when all of us came, and I don't want that to be the case for anybody, any future generations that wanna come here either. And so, um, you know, I, for all those reasons, I do think that this is, uh, represents a lot of difficult compromise and work, uh, and, you know, ultimately, over the next generation, um, will end up being a, uh, positive addition to our community. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everyone, uh, speaking today and then sharing concerns. I do, the, someone brought up the Sidens Chemical Plant, that's out by the airport, um, like eight miles from this property, and it's not related to this, uh, development. Also, one other thing I have to mention, this is inside their urban boundary lines that the, both county and city residents voted on, and where like this is supposed to be the city, and north of this is, is not, it's supposed to be left unbuilt. That's what, um, our voters, uh, voted on. I'd like to move ordinance two-one-one-four-five-nine and related petitions with two modifications, that we allow to sixty dwelling units per acre in the mixed-use central district, um, the residential district stays at twenty units an acre, and that we, uh, set the max, max building height should be set by feet, not stories, as outlined in the, uh, the PD document.
Second?
Okay, motion in second to adopt the proposed ordinance with two modifications. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there, there are a few things that, that I wanted to address, and, and first, let me say, there are multiple places people are coming from on this. And, and I understand where everybody's coming from. Some of us up here and, and on staff fully realize that, that people are gonna move to Gainesville. They've been moving to Gainesville all my life, they're gonna keep moving to Gainesville. We have a land development code that, that is very generous if, if we, i- if, if we will stand by it, as opposed to saying, yeah, we got this, but we recognize that you own some land in this other place, so we'll help you do that. We did it a couple of weeks ago, we're doing it again tonight. Let, I, I would prefer that we, that we help folks build in the places that we've already said were the right places to build. But that's not what we're doing tonight, and, and that's okay. I, I, I know that, that we are very concerned, I am very concerned, about having places for people to live. So, so I, I get that, I really do. I get the folks who are here, who, who are literal next-door neighbors to, to this. I get your fears. I, I, I think we articulated it pretty well. The traffic alone is, is something you just can't get around. There's no changing the realities of that, because another artery or two are not going to be built to, to move traffic. Y'all know I'm a transit guy, I love transit. But it's not like everybody who moves out here is going to use transit. That's just, I mean, in the best possible case, maybe fifteen or twenty percent would, and that ain't even gonna happen. So the, the transportation element alone makes this extremely difficult to work. The, the water elements, the various water elements make it extremely difficult. I know several of you have probably walked Turkey Creek Forest, and then the flooding that goes on there, essentially across the street. Same with Northwood, if it weren't for those big, deep ditches that were dug throughout Northwood in, in the fifties and sixties, mostly sixties, I guess, it wouldn't be habitable. And that's essentially right next door as well. The transportation issue, the water issue, these are things that are really hard to get around. The other point of view in the room, the, the folks representing ownership, I, I get where you're coming from too. You own this piece of land. You wanna maximize the, the potential there, I understand that, I, I empathize with it. But it's in a really tough spot, which is why we're going through all this, because it's a really tough spot. If it were a great place to build, it would already been built. So we're, we're all, I, I, I understand where we're all trying to get to, where we're all coming from, but that transportation and the water are two things I cannot get past. Couple more things need to be pointed out. I understand that, that every lawyer in the room is confident in their ability to prevail. City staff, city lawyers have already prevailed, so let, let's not forget that. I also understand that from a staff perspective, from a legal perspective, there's a point at which you just get tired of fighting about it. I understand that as well, and this goes back a long way, I get it, we wanna just do something. I hear that. But if to do something, I, I've never subscribed to, to the, the idea, do something even if it's wrong. I know a lot of people say that, but I, I don't buy it, 'cause you can't go back on this. You know, w- w- once we do this, we, we can't walk it back. The other issue here that's important to, to remember, and this is not a slight at anybody, but it's a reality that, generally speaking, wirehouses not a developer. The landowner in this case is not a developer. The things that they talk about building are good ideas, but they're not all things they can be held to, because they're not the ones who are gonna build it. Sooner or later, if we do this tonight, they'll sell it to somebody else who will, will build. And they will have some different ideas, and they will ask for different things from future commissions. That's how it's gonna work. As the mayor pointed out, none of this is gonna happen quickly. You know, under the fastest possible case, you know, our, our kids, our grandkids might watch this get built out, might. But that's generally not how it happens. We're looking at, you know, thousands of people living in that space where currently very few people live. Nearly everybody who lives there is here tonight, right? Not everybody, but nearly. I hope that you will all consider the, the various places we're coming from, and not do it just because we feel like we have to do something, we gotta quit fighting and move on. I don't think we're in that position right now. I know there's always legal pressure, I get it. But I don't think we have to do this, what's being asked of us tonight. I don't think it's evil, I'm not, not in that position. I just think that, that the, the transportation and water aspects of this alone make it unworkable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, we call for a real call vote.
Commissioner Duncan Walker? No. Commissioner Ariola?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
And Mayor Poe?
Alright, that motion passes four-three with Duncan Walker, Ward, and Chestnut in dissent. With that, I'm gonna take a brief recess, Madam Clerk, just let us stretch our legs a little bit. Okay, we're gonna come back to order. Thank you all for indulging us to stretch our limbs and, uh, get, get a little refreshment. Madam Clerk, if you could read the next item into the record, please.
Absolutely. Z three quasi-judicial rezoning of the property located north of US 441 and east and west of State Road 121. Ordinance number two-one-one-four-six-zero-eight. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, admitting the zoning map atlas by rezoning certain property generally located north of US 441, and both east and west of, of State Road 121 is more specifically described in this ordinance from Alachua County Agriculture District to City of Gainesville Plan Development District, adopting a PD report with the land development regulations, providing directions to the city manager, a separability clause or appealing clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Edelson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I do not have a separate, whole, put-together
Uh, presentation for the zoning here, but I do think that it'll be helpful for me to go back to this table, uh, for the discussion. But of course, we all have gone over a fair amount of this so far, so if there are any, any further details you all would like from me, or, uh, questions that you have for me, I'm happy to go through them. And I'm not sure which one would be easier, this.
I think that one would be great to leave.
Okay.
Yeah, if anybody wants to say anything else, they certainly can. Anybody have any questions at this time? Okay, then we'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My presentation, the first time around, walked through the land use and zoning applications from our perspective. So I do not have an additional presentation, but if there's any of that material you want to go back over with me or have questions, of course, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Rugg.
Thank you.
Okay, then go back to the commission. Commissioner Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Corresponding to some of the changes being the land use, I have a few different things I think we should amend in the, in the PD that are outlined in the, in the paper. The first one is the 60 units per acre in the mixed-use central district. The residential district stays at 20 units per acre. Second, currently the mixed residential district, which is the more lower district, 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 does not have a maximum block perimeter. I believe that we should put in a block perimeter so that we have a more integrated grid. And we also don't have, it makes it more pedestrian friendly. 2,600 feet is what we use for a lot of our block perimeters in our, in our code. And I think we should use that one. Third, corresponding with the land use change, but the building heights would be set by feet, not stories, as outlined in the PD. Four, pedestrian lighting. Just to clarify, because it's not, it's in there somewhat, but I think we, we should clarify more that all areas in the PD and the development should follow at minimum the city regulations for pedestrian lighting. We're also updating that ordinance coming soon too. Five, bike infrastructure. For all areas in the PD, the development should follow at minimum the city regulations for bike infrastructure as regulated in the City of Gainesville Engineering Design Instruction Manual or other city bike infrastructure regulations. We just updated that and made some significant changes there. Six, in the transportation mobility section, in addition to the already mandated multi-use trails that are in the PD, we add additional multi-use trail that should be designed for all ages and abilities and shall, shall be built to the western portion of the development and then connects to the central core district in the east. And then also multi-use trail south to 441 on the western portion of the development should also be built. These multi-use trails should interconnect inside development and connect to the city's urban trial, trail network. And I guess that would be the, the motion, that we adopt those amendments with ordinance 211460A and related petitions on, first reading by title only.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in second to adopt the ordinance with six modifications. Seeing no further lights, Madam Clerk, turn it over to you.
Okay, out of an abundance of caution, I will call the names because several people signed up to speak to both items. Robert Knight, Tim Martin, Aaron Adams, Ann Adams, Dave Hill, Jane Lice, Michael Stevens, Darla Walker, T. Spurley Wood.
Hi.
Good evening, again, Commissioner Mayor. I just want to make sure we all understand some of the things. And one of the things that was asked was, has GRU been involved? GRU only has water and sewer in this area. Electric is not provided by GRU territory. This is not a GRU territory, this is clay electric. So I didn't know if everybody was aware of that. And the stormwater, how's that going to be taken care of? And I just wanted to go on again a little bit about the sheet flow moving through this area. How is that going to be addressed? Are they going to make some way where when the water backs up, which it does in this area? Because I, I've lived it regular. The, the culverts under 121 are not enough capacity from the, the west side of 121 to go to the east side of 121. The county dump that's there has had a foot of water running across it when the water's coming through. So all the water that's coming off the west side, moving over to the east side, they need more culverts under there, they need better canal systems. And when they're going to elevate the land for the new housing, which they're going to have to because it's in a flood plain, where is all that water runoff? How is that going to really be addressed? I have been in areas where, like I said, the new development, they build higher and higher and everybody else that's around in the lower areas all get flooded out. So I know right onto the north side of this piece, the county has an area that they bought, I think 60 acres, that there's talk of putting a soccer field there. If they put a soccer field in there and the water is all running that way, you'll have an underwater soccer field. So did you go, I don't know if you guys know that you own that piece right on the north side of the block there across from the dump. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew of those things. And I guess that's it. And I do not understand in their presentation what the phase line means. They keep referring to this phase line, like this is phase one, and they're going to do something else in phase two. And so for clarity, I'd like to know what that actually means for the future. Thank you.
Sure, we'll get that answered. And, and I can tell you, stormwater mitigation is addressed during the development review process. So they, they, before the developments get a final approval, they have to show their stormwater mitigation plan. And the phase, I, I, I don't want to answer for you guys, but just tell me if I'm incorrect, that, that really is just saying that this is, the, the southern, the bottom part of that phase is what we're approving tonight. At some later date, the top part of that, you'll come back with a separate application, right? Yeah, that's, that's the line of demarcation. Uh, Madam Clerk, sorry, go ahead.
Deborah Stuckey, Carrie Gordon.
I'm still Carrie Gordon. Not looking to change anybody's minds, that's not going to happen. So just wanted to make two comments. The one gentleman who spoke earlier invited you to go out with him to actually go through the property. I don't know how many of you have done that, especially those of you who are in favor of this. When I was co-chair of the city's water management committee, back when Georgia Pacific wanted to peat mine in the northeast area, far northeast, we went out there with Georgia Pacific people. We put on hip boots and we waited through the muck. And it was real clear to us that this was a no brainer. We weren't going to endorse this at all. And the city commission turned it down. The, the other thing I wanted to suggest to you is the mayor mentioned in his closing remarks before the last vote that the single family zoning that is currently there has little value. When you measure the single family zoning against the amount of traffic that will be produced and the amount of environmental degradation that will take place if you allow a mini-city up there, then low and behold, the single family zoning actually has value. I believe it has more value than the degradation and the traffic and the associated degradation from the traffic that will occur if you approve this. Now, you're going to approve it anyway, I understand that. But I wanted to get that on the record because we're going to look back on this as the gang of fours folly. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Stacy Waldrop, Terry Hardwick, Alan John, Dave Wilson, and Robert Davis.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, anyone here in the room or, or watching from home, keep in mind that this is the first reading of these ordinances and that there is a, a second part of this, just heads up.
Okay, we'll move back to the commission for a roll call vote. Just a reminder, the motion is to approve the ordinance and the related petitions with six modifications.
Commissioner Chestnut? Commissioner Hey Santos?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Areola? Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Duncan Walker?
No.
And Mayor Poe?
All right, that motion passes four three with Chestnut, Ward, and Duncan Walker in dissent. Okay, we are now to commission comment. Any further commission comment? All right, well, we want everybody to have a very happy homecoming, be safe out there. Hopefully folks have a day off to enjoy. There is an alternate parade route. If you're an old schooler like me and you've been going to the same spot for the last 40 years, don't. It starts at Norman Hall and heads up 13th Street and then goes east on University and ends at Bo Diddley Plaza. See, I'm, you're just learning about this, aren't you? So, so pick your shady spot accordingly. With that, we are adjourned, go Gators.